Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 28 to order. Rule calm.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here. And item three, we have for a moment of inspiration, we have a young man, John Corka. Where's John? Oh, I'm coming up to the... John, you know, is a... he has two commands. The Naval Base Ventura County, Port Wineemi. He's commander of the 31st CB readiness group, commander of the naval facilities and logistics center. And he... Captain Corka was born in Rata, Spain, and has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the old Dominion University. He's a graduate National University, Defense University Industrial College of the Armed Forces, and on, and on, and on, and on. So, and I got about three pages of this: decorations, a legion of merit, bronze star, eritorial service medal, four, joint service combination, naval combination medal, the army combination. And he should be, you know... What is the highest rank in the... That's probably what you had now.
It's called a wife, Mr. Chairman.
You're a good man. So, we're very honored and privileged to have you here today to share a couple of words of inspiration. And after you've finished then, you can lead us in the pledge to our flag. Welcome, Mr. Captain.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Would it be okay if I sort of walked around, so I always... My neck hairs stick up, I know, if I want to have people behind me. If I can stand here, sir, if that's okay?
First and foremost, I would actually like to thank all the forces of the record.
But, Captain, can I... I'm not sure... Do we need him on the mic? Or do we have a mic here that... Okay, okay. You set mine. Thank you so much.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, anyway, I first of all, I'd like to thank everyone here for the support that you give our military. And I will tell you, it's from Ventura County as a whole. It doesn't matter what district that you're in, but it's very rewarding for me to see the thankfulness that the community gives to our service members. And so, from me and all the service members in Naval Base Ventura County, I want to thank you. I was asked today to sort of give a little inspiration speech, I guess, a moment of inspiration. And what came to mind, someone said, hey, why don't you talk to what the military's doing? And actually, I think it would be better, you can, if you really want to know what the military's doing, you can read it in the newspapers or online. What I would like to do is sort of tell you a little bit about our military service members, okay? Because to me, that is the inspiration. I actually graduated from the War College in 2004 in Washington, DC. And the War College, you always get a little opportunity to go do a little exercise. So, I remember in May, I actually went down and I ran on the mall. And it was actually a nice little run, and you may not know this, but there is something called humidity on the East Coast. And it was pretty hot in May in Washington, DC. And in 2004 May, some of you may or may not know this, but that was actually the day that they were going to open the World War II Memorial. The World War II Memorial was going to be dedicated in late May to all our veterans of the Greatest Generation. So, I happened to be running down the mall, and it was actually an eye-watering moment. I saw these great veterans, very impressive veterans with their ball caps that said World War II, Korea. Some of them were in wheelchairs, some of them were with crutches, some of them had oxygen masks, some of them with canes. But they were in the mall, 100-plus degrees, and they were walking around. As I was running, as I was running, I saw one gentleman who happened to be sitting on a bench. And he had his little cap, Knights States Marine Corps, World War II. So, I actually said, hey, I was actually a little tired at the time, so I said, let me sit down next to this gentleman. And I had a few moments with him. And he actually went to Pelul, fought in the Battle of Pelul, which is one of the Micronesian islands in the Pacific Ocean. And he sort of conveyed to me that this was sort of his moment. This was his moment in time, that it was sort of nice to have it come to an end, and that he was ready to pass the torch and pass the baton to the next generation. And I actually sat down, I'm like, well, I don't know really what he meant by passing the torch or passing the baton, but I think he was referring to the new service members. Now, if you recall, the Greatest Generation, these are the people that grew up during the Depression, right? These are the people that actually turned their caps and gowns into bullets and bayonets. They went off and fought the war. They came back and sort of built our country, right? That's a pretty inspirational group of people. And it was a... They were coming here, joining together to sort of say, hey, our turn, time is now, to sort of turn it over. I think that's what he was trying to tell me. This is 2004. I graduated from the War College the following month and actually came here to Port Wineemi. I came to serve in a unit here in Port Wineemi. In fact, you were the CO of MBBC at the time. And my unit shortly deployed to Afghanistan, or excuse me, to Iraq, Fallujah, in August. And we were actually preparing, okay, to seize the city of Fallujah in the Sunni Triangle. And so, a lot of preparations. We worked with the Marines. Now, these are naval mobile construction units, so we build. We actually, we build and we fight, but we don't do aggressive operations, you know? We sort of build and support. Well, anyway, in preparation of this battle, they... We were receiving a lot of indirect fire. And then on September 4th, you know, we actually took a hit and lost someone in our unit, and we had suffered a few casualties, okay? Three casualties. These three casualties had to get medevac immediately, right? So, they go to a BAS, which is a small hospital, okay, basic aid site. And so, one of the individuals that had to be medevaced wanted to re-enlist. He wanted to re-enlist, and he wanted to do it in Iraq. Truth be told, I think that he wanted to re-enlist because he got extra pay and was tax-free had he done it in Iraq. And he had the present mind knewing that he was flying to Germany. So, you have to admire someone that despite being injured in a war zone, you know, had the sense of, to say, hey, I think I know what to do. But anyway, so he... I didn't know if he was in a shape to be, to re-enlist, you know? He had just been suffered severely. And so, we set up a re-enlistment. And this happened all within a course of six, eight hours. But what was sort of inspiring about that moment was that the two other service members who were injured with him, they were bedridden, and they had IVs in them, and somehow they had the strength to come out outside and stand in attention for this re-enlistment, okay? And so, I was actually all struck. I'm like, wow, I mean, these individuals came just to do this re-enlistment. And I asked the individual, I said, why are you doing this? And he said, sir, this is about brotherhood. This is a brotherhood. Well, you know what strikes me about this? I go back to that moment that I was at Washington, DC, and the individual talked about passing the torch, okay? Well, this is who the torch was passed to, individuals like this. You know, we have been at war for the last 10-plus years. And the service members come from all walks of life, all parts of the country, joined together by one common cause and one purpose. And that is the love of their country and the respect for one another. These people are serving in your communities. They probably attend church, your churches. You see them in the grocery stores. You run into them in the movie theaters, okay? They're all over. But I will tell you that you should have a sense of pride, because what I just told you, those are the people that are serving in our country. They are capable, and they are doing a phenomenal job. And their only thankfulness is knowing that they've done a good job and that our security of our nation is safe, that our freedom is being preserved. So, the next time you see one of these service members, the only thing that I would ask you is to say thank you, okay? Because they are truly serving with honor. And that is my small token of worth of inspiration. I thank you for allowing me to have the time to address you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you.
Captain, Captain, I want to thank you too, and I want to share with you that my family have served, you know, starting the Second World War. My dad was Second World War. We had family members in Korea and Vietnam and Iraq and Afghanistan. So, we've been serving with, and I respect you tremendously for serving the community. And thank Paul, your boss right behind, your ex-boss. But I want to thank you again for the excellent, excellent presentation, and I appreciate that tremendously.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Captain, let me just say that the words you said are so true. You can go read about the war, everything else going on in the paper, but what you said about our men and women who lay their life down, who care about this country so much that we can, you know, let's say, as they say, sleep in our beds, safe at night, and not think about it. We just appreciate, you know, what they do. And we could never understand what they go through and what they bring back. But you brought it real true, and that Greatest Generation who said, we were willing to sacrifice, will you sacrifice and do it for this country again? And I think our generation now is doing that same thing. And so, thank you for your service. Thank you for what you brought, the words you brought.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank your community for your support of them, because it does go a very, very, very long way.
And we're going to be heading to DC here next month for Regional Defense Plan to bring more work to our bases. So, can you help us with the pledge to?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands this, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the minutes. What's the pleasure of the point? Got a motion to approve the minutes. Second? Okay, that's approved. And then we have agenda review. Michael?
Thank you, Chair. Zaragoza. Just a few items. We request that time certain item 34 and regular item 49 be heard together at 10:30. It's 34 and 49.
Forty-nine.
Likewise, we request that item 35 and item 51 be heard together at 11:15. Thirty-five and 51. Request that time, well, time certain agenda, item 41 requests continuance to a future date. And then finally, on item 42, there's a letter submitted by the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. And that's it.
Any other changes by board members? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Okay, so we got a first and second. It's a vote. Okay, that is approved. Now, item seven, we have consent items 10 to 30.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that item 10 be polled just for some discussion.
Okay. Any other items? So, do we have a motion on that, other than item 10?
Yeah, that'll be my motion to move on the rest of the consent agenda, pulling item 10 for some brief discussion.
Okay, that's approved. Now, item 10, Supervisor?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to ask Victoria Jump to please come up. I know the board, we get this, these reports periodically from the AAA agency, and it gives us kind of a assessment of how are we doing, what the challenges are with our senior community, what the good work that's being done by a small but mighty few with AAA, and certainly Victoria's work. As I reviewed this on the constraints and challenges, I was just struck by the constraints and challenges, which is in page four of the report. And what I'd like to ask today is that we just hear some of this and act on it, moving it forward, because as I understand from this jump, there, she's actually in the middle now of updating the new strategic plan, which will be available. And I would hope when that is available, to come to us in whatever timeline, April or whatever it is, that we would set aside more time to fully look at it and discuss it, because I think we're seeing a, as we know, a growing population of seniors in this county. And the projections are that we, that will continue to be a stronger percentage of our overall population, well over 25% will be in that category. And what we're seeing in this report, because of multiple things, the economy, reduction in funds from the federal government, is a poverty of seniors, seniors in poverty in this county. And I would just like to have a more thorough discussion about that. And Victoria, when you're talking about, again, constraints and challenges under the adult daycare centers and multipurpose centers, and of course, we know what's going on within home, just, I didn't mean to tell the story. I really would like you to just give us a snapshot of this and what we can look forward for a more lengthy discussion.
Okay, sure. For adult day healthcare, when this plan was written, what you see is a plan from last October. So, things have changed somewhat with the adult day healthcare centers. The state has, had eliminated that as a benefit. They've brought it back as what they're calling SEBAS, Community-Based Adult Services. They've extended, when adult day healthcare is ending to now to the end of March, SEBAS is supposed to start in April. We still haven't gotten the definite word on what those services that they are going to provide under that. The state has done a lot of assessing of people that are in the program to see if they qualify for the new program, or they're supposed to provide case management if they don't. We are still concerned in that a lot of what people were getting was, at those centers, were comprehensive services. You were getting the occupational, the physical therapy, those kinds of restorative services. And if the new program becomes just an adult daycare center, and if they're not getting those, are they really going to go on, you know, their own time to see the doctor if they have transportation challenges? I mean, this is a group of people that are in those centers for a reason. They cannot be left home alone. They need this extra service. So, our concern has always been, if it's not very similar to what it is now, you're going to have people that are at risk still, even if they have some kind of benefit.
And as you see in the report, it creates a domino effect on other services.
It does. And what we've seen over the past three years is, you know, the state very slowly chipping away at the safety net for seniors. And now, you're left with, you know, not a safety net. If you don't qualify for one of these programs, if you're lucky, you qualify. If you don't, then you've kind of fallen to this abyss. And we hope that there's enough, you know, awareness in the community of limited resources that perhaps we could connect you with something. For our MSSP program, that program has also been cut over the past couple of years. It's a favorite target for elimination every year. Thankfully, they haven't eliminated that. And that's the only long-term case management program in the county that provides services for those that could go into a nursing home today. They meet that criteria. We're finding that with that population, they're becoming older, and their needs are more complex than in years past. We have a lot of seniors in that program now with mental health needs, and we didn't have that. And I think it's, you know, just a symptom of people living longer. There's more seniors now than there were in the past. Between, you know, 2000 and 2010, we've had a 44% increase in the number of seniors, and our county population only increased 13% overall. We're slated to have another 41% increase in the senior population in the next 10 years. So, there's more people to provide care for. People are living longer. People are outliving the income that they thought they would have. We've had a fairly stable population of people that we, you know, classify as being in the lower economic class. But we're finding that the people that are in the middle class are now, because they don't have that income that they thought that they would have, the retirement money, that those people are now what we also consider poor. And that's somewhat frightening for us as an agency, because income-wise, they don't meet the qualifications for a lot of public assistance programs, but they can't afford to live here.
When you look at the footnote on page four, 175 to 225 beds available in skilled nursing facilities, and most are available for private-paid clients and not Medi-Cal clients. And as we know, women are outliving their spouses. If they have a spouse, they've outlived perhaps what they thought they had in the way of funds to take care of them in their golden years. And we don't have, and this isn't just our county, it's obviously a national policy discussion to be had, but I think that we have to, when we, when we look at, on other items on our agenda today, and we talk about what needs there are and what pressures we're going to feel with the state budget and economy and budgets, we know we have populations in this county that we serve, and we serve well. And this is one, I think, we cannot just let them go silently in the night and not see what we can do at a local level. So, and you did, it's a very good report, talking about the trigger cuts in the state budget and how that's going to have even more of an impact on the services and the frail. So, but in our earlier discussion, you said this needs to move forward today, and you're working on the next plan, and it should be ready.
It will go for public hearing in mid-April, and so you'll have a plan for, that covers 2012 through 2016 before you at the end of April.
And so, I would ask that the CEO schedule at least a half hour for us to really have time to look at that plan and go through it.
Mr. Chair? Let me add, I'm going to add a little bit to what the supervisor was talking about. Also, you know, the, you're saying that the seniors are living longer and require more services. You know, that senior summit we had in Ochschar, Ochschar College was very informative for our seniors. It included, you know, their rights and social security, understanding of security, understanding of legal rights, understanding Medi-Cal and so forth. In addition to all the good things that you're doing, I think that's important that we educate our seniors too, and continue that education process too. And you're doing a good job on that too, Victoria.
No, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Supervisor Long for calling this out, and of course, thank Victoria for the, for the great work. I just think it is, it is a sad comment on where we are as a society, that we have growing income inequality, growing percentage of people that are living much more comfortably than they've ever lived. At the same time, we're unraveling the safety net, as you talked about. I mean, the safety net is, the thinner it gets, the bigger the holes are, you know, between, in the webbing, and the more people are going to drop through that. And I think that's, at our level, the Board of Supervisors level, that's something that we have to pay careful attention to. So, I appreciate you calling that out. I'm glad we're going to have more conversation. And I will appreciate you letting us know as that safety net, as each strand gets pulled out of that safety net, so we're at least aware of that. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, also, if I might, thank you Supervisor Long for bringing this forward, bringing this to our attention, and seeing that we will have a more in-depth discussion on it. And one of the statistics when you were talking about are the lack of residential facilities, nursing facilities in Ventura County. But I think we also need to work at changing the paradigm, that people can age in place and be able to bring those services to homes, because that is a lot less expensive overall. And, you know, what we can do, put our emphasis towards that at the county level, I think, can help those numbers.
Thank you, Victoria.
So, I'd move the recommended action to move it forward, and appreciate coming in, and look forward to further discussion.
Thank you for the report. First and a second, so we'll vote on that. Thank you, Supervisor Long. Okay, that's approved. And our next item is public comments. And I have one card. And I have one card from Jay Whitney from the grand jury. Jay Whitney, welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jay Whitney, and I'm here in behalf of all 19 members of the grand jury 2011-2012, extending all residents of the county to our open house, which is next Thursday, March 8th, from 11:00 to 1:00, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And for the first time, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for people who can't tear themselves away from their schedules.
Oh, good.
We'll be set up to answer questions, how we investigate, how we handle public complaints, how we handle accusations, and how we publish reports every year. And what we take most seriously is the replacing ourselves, because there's a constitutional requirement, as you know, that there always, it's a sitting grand jury. And on April 13th is the close date for members of the new 2012-2013 jury. So, we'd like to see people who are interested in becoming a member of the grand jury, as well as people who are just looking for information, but we hope we'll get new people to replace ourselves. And we look forward to seeing a representative from the Board of Supervisors as well.
Mr. Whitney, what is the age, you know, for the grand jury?
Eighteen years old.
Eighteen, and any other prequalifications?
That they can read and write English and have ordinary intelligence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ordinary. So, at least quite a few of us, huh? Thank you. Okay, next item is board comments, and we'll start with Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. I don't know about that ordinary intelligence.
Do you have any ordinary?
I don't know if we can make it up here. Anyway, I'm sorry. Speak for myself. All right. Also, just real quick, I wanted to recognize the passing of a longtime Moore Park resident, Louis Miller, considered one of the city's founding fathers. Matter of fact, he was 90 years old, had a long life as a county resident. He was also voted May Park's honorary mayor when they weren't even incorporated in 1969. And they've honored him with the Miller Parkway and all that, but he'll be dismissed, a guy who just did a lot for the city. And also want to congratulate 23-year-old Kayla Bailey, Moore Park, of being crowned Mrs. Ventura County. She's going to go on to California pageant in June, so hopefully, things will go well with her. Also, talking about funds and everything else, I think we just saw the survey that came out yesterday or something from the state that we think Brown thinks will be $6 billion short or something. So, I just think we have to be prepared for all the stuff that's coming down. It's not going to get any better. And I think it's the federal money they talked about, it probably isn't going to show up. So, I think we are all smart enough to know that. I think they were optimistic in Sacramento. So, it's important that we continue to look forward to constraints in what we do and be as wise. And I appreciate the CEO's office working as hard as they are, and all the staff members everywhere throughout the county to save every nickel and penny and dime we can. So, it's very important, as we see, it's getting harder to provide the services that people are looking for, so, and become accustomed to, in a sense. So, anyway, my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you, and good morning. I'll submit the list to adjourn in memory first, and just to call out Camero resident Frederick Stolker. He served in the Army Air Corps in 1944, and his contribution to the Air Force and advancement of flight testing engineering, he received the Kelly Johnson Award, which is displayed in the Smithsonian Museum. And his last many years, he's served as a gleaner for food share and a board member and the Strategic Planning Committee. So, as our generation of World War II veterans continue to pass on, they've come back to our communities in many ways and have given back, and Mr. Stolker was certainly one of them, and will be missed. Had the opportunity, I know some of the board members, to attend the retirement of Captain McHugh and the change of command out at the base, and a very cold and windy change of command. But it was, as always, very, yeah, very cold, enjoyable, I think, to welcome our new Captain Vasquez, who will be serving, and we've had the chance to meet him, and to celebrate, again, the retirement and the welcome. So, it was nice ceremony. Yeah, very good. And speaking to that, hot off the press, we have, we being RDP 21, have updated our brochure that we use when we travel back to DC, and actually, when we take it as we visit many decision-makers who support the mission and purpose of the MBVC. And the brochure tells the story, and I think tells it very well. It has lots of good information for you to use as you're out in your community and speaking. And it speaks to both the economic engine of the MBVC, the strategic military mission of the base and its operations, and the community value as you look at the many community members who serve on RDP 21 with us, and the many fortunate for us folks who serve on this wonderful base and fall in love with us and stick around. So, I'm looking at Mr. Fleisch out there, and many others, certainly Paul Grossgold and others. So, there are those benefits that we don't always count in dollars, but certainly count to the quality of our community with the base and the support we get from the community for that base. And I'd like to, speaking about our seniors, I was very pleased to see that the Camero Police Department, on the 10th of March, from 9:00 to 12:00, they're going to hold a CarFit program. It's a first program for older adults to check how their personal cars fit them. And that really is to look at, we have trained, there'll be trained CalFit technicians, will lead older drivers through a 12-point checklist with their vehicle, recommend adjustments, adaptations, or other things that they could do to make their car fit them so that they are safe. And this is really targeted for people over 65, which is the fastest-growing population in the United States. And this is an opportunity to really help, again, that population in our community be safer, drive safer, and make sure that they're comfortable when they're behind the wheel. So, I appreciate the Captain Cesari and his team putting this together, the Community Resource Unit and others, and it'll be a good added benefit for the community. And I think that's it, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I would also ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list and just a couple of events that I was able to attend. It was a cold day out at the naval base, but a very warm ceremony. I liked the way that, after all the pomp and circumstance, it ended with him bending down and kissing his wife, and it was just very sweet, too. So, it was nice to see, and he's a...
The highest command.
That's right, the highest command, as we heard at our public comments. So, that was nice to be able to attend that, as well as attend the firefighters' annual awards that were given, not only to the great firefighters that we have, but also to some citizens that stepped up and going into a burning building, pulling someone out and saving lives, pulling someone out from, a child from the bottom of a pool, and now seeing that child and visiting them, and just saving lives out there and citizens stepping up. So, that was really nice to hear, very inspiring. And then, we also, almost all of us, attended the Fainer Awards, too, and were able to see some of our heroes in the healthcare profession be honored. That was nice to be able to attend. Out in my area, I was also able to attend the Community Conscience Under One Roof Ball, where we have a Mardi Gras and celebrate the people who have done such great work in the social services out in the Caneo Valley, for the most part, and honoring Linda Miller as their queen, and John Rich, Dr. Rich, as their king, and just seeing these people also really stepping up to the plate. It's one of the nice things you have able to do in our position, is you get to go and help celebrate some of the great achievements of people who give to our community. One of the other things I was able to do, Westminster Free Clinic had a celebration honoring the volunteers of Westminster Free Clinic. And what we're talking about here are doctors and nurses giving their free time, and dentists who help people and provide them basically free medical care, who couldn't otherwise get it. And then, also, it actually helps our county in terms of helping that safety net that Supervisor Bennett was talking about, to make sure that people can get healthcare who desperately need it. Additionally, able to attend the Elks out in Thousand Oaks, had a ceremony honoring firefighters, the firefighter of the year, and the deputy of the year, firefighter Gifford Sears, and Deputy Sheriff Corey Nicholas, and just hearing their stories and why they were selected, including, you know, having someone take a shot at you, and being able to protect yourself and protect the public. And you realize these people are out there every day and don't always get that acknowledgement. So, it's nice to see that the Elks do, gives us that opportunity to thank them for the good work they do. And then, also, Supervisor Long and I were able to attend the Casa Pacifica Ball, and another opportunity to hear some very inspiring stories about, from both the youth and then also families that have been served by being able to have their, you know, being able to have Casa Pacifica there, from people with, youngsters with mental illness that were able to be helped, to obviously, children who have been abused and neglected, that they have a home. And that also was very inspiring to be able to attend. Also, the agricultural summit that we had Supervisor Long, and it's been two weeks, that's why it seems like a lot of things, but that was also really good, looking at making connections and how our local food movement can really be supported in Ventura County, and how important it is to be able to buy local, to be able to use the produce that's grown here in our fields locally, and how that's good for the environment, it's good for our health, it's good for the markets and our economy. So, that was really nice to see a lot of different people from different sectors slightly involved, and some very involved in agriculture come together in that support. So, I was glad to see that. And then, also, finally, we had a presentation by Dave Fleisch on cellular tower guidelines that we want to look at. And he provided a couple of photos, and one, which I described as sticking out as a sore thumb, was one in Oak Park. And I'm happy to say that Verizon did come, and they are talking with us, and we're looking to see if we can find a better location for that, and getting the community involved, which is really what the guidelines need to present to. For example, the head, Dr. Knight, who's the head of the Oak Park Unified School District, wants to have his say in it. We don't want these too close to schools, if we can avoid them. The municipal advisory council there, the Oak Park MAC, wants to be able to have comment on it, too, because you can locate these, they're just going in the right of way on light poles, you can locate them in probably the best location you can, and that takes the input from the community. So, glad to be able to see their cooperation. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Zergos. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And I, too, had the pleasure, the Fainer Awards are certainly, just, they're a great annual reminder of this remarkable healthcare system that we have here, and how fortunate people are in Ventura County to have that safety net, where the threads are still pretty tight together, and the webbing is still pretty tight. So, my compliments to all of those award winners and everybody associated with that. I had the pleasure of attending the Turning Point Community Building Breakfast that they've had, and they've done a very nice job in the last five years of building the organization at Turning Point, financially making it stronger, and certainly more community support from where they were before they started this community building breakfast. And they're doing great work for us, and they certainly supplement our safety net when it comes to mental health services. And then, while two of you attended the Casa Pacifica Ball, that was the same night as Ventura's Festival of Talent at Ventura High School that I attended, and just remarkable to see what our school district is doing in terms of honoring the talent of the youth in the school district, and letting them get up there and perform, and gain that self-confidence, and some very young people doing some really incredible things. So, I want to congratulate the school district for that also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. I also like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd like to call out Dorothy Marin. Dorothy Marin was a council member for the city of Ochsard, and she was a council member when I was in charge of the refuse department for the city of Ochsard. And she was also a member of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. And I always remember that Dorothy used to really fight for our refuse department, and she, in fact, she used to call herself the trash queen, you know, with VRSD, her and a couple of other individuals. She was a real fighter, a really fighter that fought for the poor, and we're going to miss her. So, I had the opportunity to attend her funeral the other day, so we're going to miss Dorothy Marin. So, I'd like to, yes. Also, in addition, and I attended the firefighter awards over in Thousand Oaks, and this event is always a big highlight for me, and this event had, was shared, was done over in Thousand Oaks, and I just want to thank all the firefighters for all their fine work that they do for our county, and the families, and the families, absolutely, and my family, too. They protected my family, so I want to thank you for that. We also, my staff and I, attended two neighborhood council meetings over at Bartola Square, in North Bartola Square in Ochsard, also the Channel Islands Beach Harbor Association Neighborhood Meeting over at the beach. My staff and I also attended the Maritime Museum Dinner at the Huayl Estel, and saw the plans for that space. And it's going to be really, really nice, you know, it's going well, and in fact, they changed the name now to Channel Islands Maritime Museum. It used to be just Maritime, so there's probably 100-plus people there. And also additionally, I, this last Saturday, this weekend, I went and presented two resolutions to Eagle Scouts, Nathan Harry from Ochsard High School, and also to Jose Escudero from Pacifica High School. I have normally go in there, make the presentation, and then kind of leave, because I normally have other appointments or to go to, but I stayed for the one over at Pacifica High School, and the ceremony that they put together is just unbelievable, you know, the things they do, and the badges that they earn, it's just great, you know. So, it was just outstanding ceremonies for our youth. And so, we're in good hands once you see those Eagle Scouts do what they do. In addition to, you know, I'd like to call Reddy Pacala and his people right up to the podium, because I, we attended the National Engineers Week Award Dinner at the Reagan Library, and we were given the Project of the Year for the Public Works. We were named the recipients of this great award regarding our job that we did over at the conversion that we did from septic to sewer, from the Al Rio area into the sewer system of the city of Ochsard. So, I just, I want to thank Reddy, Jeff, I'm not sure if Jeff is here, Seth Emunoz, Anne, Margaret Lopez, and all the Al Rio residents for all the good work. And maybe Mr. Pacala can share a couple of words, and we'd like to present, you know, that award to Mr. Pacala at this time. Ludus, can you bring it up? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Zargosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation for the Public Works Agency. I want to thank your board for recognizing this project, and this is really teamwork, I should say. And what I have with me are our project managers who have worked on this project, but what I'd like to share with you is when Regional Water Quality Control Board adopted this septic tank prohibition in 1999, your board asked Public Works Agency to find a way to help these property owners to comply with the septic tank prohibition. That's when we started working on this project, and I want to thank CEO's office, Kristi Madden, who helped us with CDBG grant funding. Madden, who helped us with CDBG grant funding, Susan Hughes, who helped us with lobbying in Sacramento and in Washington DC with the Proposition 50 grant funding. And I would like to thank a lot of agencies who have helped us with this project, Fox Can Groundwater Management Agency, who have helped us with funding, with United Water Conservation District, who helped us with funding, Watership Prediction District, who helped us with funding. And of course, County of Ventura, we had support all along for the last more than 10 years. And as I reported to you at one time, I came in front of your board more than 45 times to present this project to you. The other thing that really helped us with this project is the public outreach. We have made presentations to the community more than 35 times. And RMA, Building and Safety, Mr. McDonald's and his staff and especially Trini Mendoza, who was out there at the night meetings, they were helping us with the public outreach. And Mr. Mendoza was telling the property owners how to connect the sewer lateral to the public sewer system so that property owners could save money by doing the work themselves. This may be the first time that Building and Safety has come out in the field and issued the permits, people going out to the field and issuing the permits, Building and Safety permits.
And the cold nights.
And the cold nights. And I just want to say specifically Seth Munoz, who was the project manager for nine of the 10 phases, he came to us in 2006 and he managed nine of the 10 phases of the project with less than 1% construction change orders and the projects were within the budget, no construction claims, no construction disputes. Especially this is a very difficult project, digging 20 feet deep trenches in a neighborhood with families and homes. He did a great job and I just want to congratulate him and staff who worked with him as Marcos Segai and Steve Jackson, other inspectors. This project has, we've worked on it for more than 10 years and four of our project managers and staff have retired, John Crowley, Satya Kara, Mitri Munna and Roger Lang. They retired and they did a great work. And lastly, the organization that helped us, City of Oxnard, when Supervisor Zaragoza was in the council, they helped us with agreement where we froze the sewer connection fee. That was great help. And again, I want to thank your board and Dana, who helped us with the grants, she works in the Moore Park office, they would look for the grants, research for the grants, apply for the grants. We will bring the recommendation to your board after your board authorizes to apply for the grant, accept the grants. Then Margaret Lopez and her staff really are the one who make sure that we comply with the grant requirements and they are the one who get the reimbursement from the state agencies, federal agencies. They are the one who worked with more than 1,300 property owners to make sure that they pay the fees and that's a great job. And we have had supervisors come to the meetings, Supervisor Zaragoza and his wife were at the El Rio community meetings from the beginning to the end of these meetings. And not last but least, El Rio MAC was very instrumental in listening to us and helping us with the process. So I just want to tell you, this was a team effort. With your board support, we were able to accomplish this. It's a great project for the property owners because they're able to comply with the septic tank prohibition, improve the water quality for this Oxnard plan, which is a great water resource for County of Ventura. Thank you very much Supervisor Zaragoza and board members.
I'd like to read this and it says, 2012 National Weeks, Senator Barrow, Ventura County, American Public Works Association, Ventura County Chapter, Project of the Year Award, presented, it says my name, but it, we're going to change your name, the El Rio Four Bay Groundwater Contamination Elimination Project, Ventura County, February 23rd, 2012. This took a lot, a lot of work and it really saved us, saved our water, groundwater program, but I want to thank you and especially my staff, you know, Tracy and Lourdes and all the, my staff that went every single night to help you out and in Spanish and English and hot weather, cold weather and so forth, but we did it, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very important. What's wrong with me? But I just, I'm sorry, that was not on the agenda, but I just wanted to share that because that is so important.
Yeah, that was.
And now we're going over to a regular agenda item number 48. We, I want to take, we have somebody that's here that needs to, has another appointment, so let's go to a regular agenda item number 48 and then we'll go back to.
Yes, good morning. My name is Kristi Madden with the county executive office. Thank you for taking this item out of order so these gentlemen can get on their way. Item 48 is a request to reappoint Mr. Terry Wall to the Area Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. The Area Housing Authority is a joint powers authority governed by a 15-member board, two members from each of the jurisdictions within their service area. Mr. Wall was first appointed in October of 2008 following an open recruitment for that seat. He's currently vice chair and he desires, he desires to serve another term and staff supports his reappointment. Both Mr. Wall and Douglas Taffking, their executive director, are here. If you have any questions, concludes my presentation.
Is there any questions?
I have no questions, so I'd be happy to make the motion and we got a second.
Appreciate the service, yeah.
And then you'll move up to chair too.
Appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much.
Some more.
Okay, then let me go to item 44, or 43. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Lynn Krueger from the Harbor Department. Yes, finally, huh? Speaking of long-term projects, we have benches of those too.
We need an award for that too.
Yeah, the rule of order. This is the second piece, second and final piece, the construction piece of the grant for the public launch ramp in the harbor. We have already received $430,000 for the design and permitting part of the process, which is complete. And we're just asking for authorization today for the chair to sign the resolution and for me to be able to sign the agreement with the state and we will get out to bid this summer to start construction right after Labor Day.
And Lynn, I want to thank you so much for outstanding work and you've really worked really hard to get this project going and it's finally after how many years?
I don't know on this one, I lose track. 10 probably.
10 years.
More than five.
Yeah, more than five.
But thank you so much for the good.
Yeah, well, we have good help. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
And going after the grant dollars.
That's right. You know, Lynn, when Reddy comes up, we call him Mr., you know, 20%, whatever for his rate increases, but we're just going to call you Miss Patience because you're just so patient to get that bank.
That's a bit of a pigheaded, which is what my husband sometimes does.
Okay, we got a first and a second, thank you. Thank you and that's approved and we got item 44, the healthcare agency.
Good morning Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, CEO Powers. Thank you. What you have in front of you is a request to actually appoint three members of the Ventura County Standing Committee, Dr. Lefkowitz, Juan Mendoza and Catherine Seda, to terms. They actually have been members of our standing committee as have Chair Bennett and Mr. Powers. I would like to thank both of you for your ongoing and continued presence at our standing committee and for the Board of Supervisors for all your support. This committee, as you all know, was created in response to a regulatory requirement from the Department of Managed Care now, it's DMHC, because of the Knox Keen regulations with, which regulate healthcare plans. So this committee meets on a quarterly basis, reviews all the quality programs, utilization programs and other works that are done by the healthcare plan.
You had to tell us how they were doing on that board.
They come to every meeting.
Any questions? What's the pleasure of the board? You got a first, second?
I had the pleasure of sitting next to Dr. Lefkowitz at the Fainer Awards and hearing about the history with Dr. Pierre, with Pierre Durand and quite a history we've had there, you know, that could make a book.
It's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item is item 45. Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. Board members, I brought this forward to you because it is required under the Road Commission section, blah, blah, blah. And what it is is to, and I, Mr. Fleisch, if you'd step forward just in case there are questions, but in Piru, there'd been some requests to have in the vicinity of the post office an ability for disabled clients to be able to access the post office more comfortably. And so taking a look at this, we realized that somehow, sometime, somebody installed some unapproved spots, parking, disabled parking spots. I have suspicion it must have been a moving, a movie company or something, but regardless of that, when Mr. Fleisch took a look at it, he said that his authority requires that the board take action to do something like this and so in the process, we'll have to make corrections on those unwarranted ones and install one that is as close proximity to the post office as possible and also in an area where you have curbs designed for access. And I'll tell you right now, in case you have the question, the reason it's not right in front of the post office is that that main street is going to be at some point improved and widened. And when talking to the post office personnel, they said that they, one, they said that they don't, they don't take positions on whether or not there should be such an installation, but they also made that comment. So anything else to add there Dave, as far as the legal authority of the Road Commission or you? So.
Any questions, David?
There any questions? I put forward the motion to move ahead and take care of this.
Okay, we got a first, second.
Install a parking stall.
And vote.
Appreciate the support, thank you, thank you. Thank you for the work, Mr. Fleisch. Appreciate you.
Thank you, David.
I thought you were.
Let my wife say. Okay, item 46 Supervisor Long and Supervisor Bennett.
Oh, okay. All right, let me pull this one up. This is one that the board is familiar with, the rapid rehousing, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing grant. And bringing this forward to the board, one, there was some very good work done by Kristi Madden and also some discussions with our advocates, homeless and housing advocates, and looking at the success of the rapid rehousing program grants and that we still know that there is a great need and in fact probably weekly calls about, from folks asking for assistance and how these funds have been successfully used and the imminent or ongoing homelessness.
There's no question, oh, thank you, sorry, that we're still have a population in this county that has needs. And this, again, this program has had remarkable success, has helped to retain tenants and avoid having folks finding themselves without a roof over their head. One of the things that we, in just policy, know that you have greater success with homelessness if you prevent them from being homeless. And so that clearly is what this has done all along. And to be able to give them that immediate stabilization and then certainly help them in connecting with other services that might be available to them for the long-term sustainability of keeping that roof over their homes. And as you can see that the board approved an initial allocation in April of 2010, some of those funds have been used, but what remains is $2 million that have been set aside. And we actually, you know, made that available for the cities and there just hasn't been a great call for the use of these funds, but we feel that if we can get them back out there again and continue to do the outreach with the cities we know where they have the homeless population, they'll be put to good use.
Thank you Supervisor Long for partnering on this. We came forward with the emergency shelter construction grant at first and there still are funds that remain in there and we, we want to make sure that cities are aware of that. You know, if you look at this from the big picture standpoint, the emergency shelter is sort of at one end, you know, the people are out and now you have to, have to shelter them. Or you can try to work out at the other end and try to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. Both of them are necessary and needed. A few things I'd like to point out that are important. One, it's very cost-effective to prevent homelessness in the first place, before people develop all of the auxiliary problems that are associated with being homeless. And so I certainly am proud that we are presenting this, but I want to point out, this is one time, you know, we have to think about, about this program being so effective that we find some more permanent ongoing source of funding for this program. Because I think we do have to keep the incentive out there for cities to step forward for the emergency shelter part of it, which as we look at our 10-year plan for homelessness is, is an area where we, the county is certainly weak and many cities are, the county overall, that we don't have those. There are great statistics on this, over 80% of the people, six months later when they go and check, they're still housed, they have not lost their homes. You know, we've been able to save over 600 people from, that's families, that's 1,700 individuals, 600 families from homelessness as a result of this program. But when we talk about what our needs are, this is, this is an example of a safety net program that is extremely important for us. And so I encourage the board to do this, I'm glad we're doing this, but I'm concerned about this program in the long run in terms of what we're going to be able to do with this program. And hope that the CEO will keep, trying to keep this program as, as one of the things we try to find that funding for and hope the CEO's office keeps looking for those grants and keep this program alive. So thank you very much.
We have a national policy that strongly supports keeping folks housed first.
Right, yeah. And we have a homeless prevention fund that people can donate to. I'll tell you what I hope to see as a growing trend during the holiday time, instead of giving somebody a gift, as you give, you make a donation to the homeless prevention fund and you send them a card that a donation to homeless prevention fund is made in their name. But the problem is this population has been growing the last few years, not decreasing the last few years. And that's a comment on our economy and a comment on our society at this point in time.
So we also have identified, in working, Ms. Madden, with the auditor controller to identify the accounting transactions that need to take place for this.
Would you like me to read those in?
Sure.
Okay. Authorize the auditor controller's office to process the accounting transactions necessary to establish appropriations as follows, and this will require a foreface vote. General fund assigned fund balance homeless decreased by $96,520, increased human services agency budget unit 5,300, org 5,330, services and support. agency budget unit 5,300, org 5,330 services and supplies by $96,520. Thank you.
If I make that, might include that as part of the motion? I'll make the motion for this. I'll second the motion.
Just a, for a second. Michael?
Quick comment, that's okay. And just in addition to Christie's great work on this, HSA, Barry Zimmerman, Melissa and Carol Shulkin, everybody really done a great job putting this program together. And they thought it'd be effective, it's just more effective than they even imagined. And so, I appreciate your board's support in continuing it, because they get 50 calls a week, we understand, right now for this service. HSA has told us that if we get $1 million, we can keep it going for about two years. So, the idea is that your county, your board, will put up the 750, and then now we've asked the cities and others to help with the remaining 250 as we go forward. And we have, you know, another year or two to collect that. The other piece that's real important to this is the case management piece. And I want to make sure I emphasize that, because HSA's folks really do a great job of working with these people to keep them housed, but also to keep them with jobs and job training and other services that they need, and that's made a big, big difference. So, I appreciate the support.
It is a successful piece of it, that they're able to identify, then, how to link them and who needs.
Right. And this data that we're collecting and going to collect will help us, I think, as we seek more permanent funding for this as well. So, that, we will take that direction and move forward.
Anything else to add there? Nope? Okay.
Okay, so, let's vote.
I appreciate their reaching out to the cities also, because it is, it takes a lot of us to put this together and all the citizens benefit.
Thank you. Okay, it's four to one, and that motion passes. Our next item is item forty-seven, Supervisor Foye.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to bring this. As, I think a lot of you have heard me talk on this over the years, and I thought I'd bring this up, as we continue to have to look at finding ways to find money to help support the services that we provide to the community, one of the things I want to do is taking a look at our own personal budgets and being part of the team that is doing everything we can to make this work, which is try to find ways to reduce costs. And over the years, we have done a good job in these budgets to return money back to the county, back to the general fund. And what I, as looking at this over the years, we have probably almost an average of 10% being returned back to the county, and there's, you're being handed, over the last three years, what it is. And you can put that PowerPoint up here, right. And you can see that over the last three years, an average, you know, 8% and 7%, 14% last year, that we returned back in our budgets. But with that returning, that goes into, you know, our reserves, our fund balance. But as the CEO, and they're trying to find different ways to find more money, what I'd rather do is say, let us commit that we've been doing this, let us commit and say this money is coming out of our budgets now, and that we are going to let the CEO find other ways to use this money, guaranteed that it's coming. Because if we don't do this, we have the savings, but it doesn't have a guarantee, he can't move it around, the CEO's office can't move it and say, this is where we need it to go, because we're not sure what our budget's going to end up being, just like everybody else. So, everybody's making a commitment. And part of my goal was, how do we help fund public safety? How do we help fund, you know, the different agencies that need that money? So, this is what I'm asking us, is if we could say that during, that we would put a permanent reduction of 10% in our budgets. Now, when I say permanent, it could be for a three-year period of time, come back and look at this, hopefully the economy gets better and there'll be some needs, but you and every one of you have done a tremendous job, as you can see, returning this money on a regular basis. So, if we make this commitment, we have an opportunity, as the rest of the different departments have had to do, find ways to reduce what we use and make that commitment. You're already doing this. This is not something like, well, you're asking me to cut my budget, because you're already doing this work. You've already returned this money on an annual basis every year. And so, what I'm saying now again is, let's make it a permanent cut, let the CEO and his office use this additional funds to help balance the budget that we've all looked so hard to do on a regular basis. So, that's what I'm asking. I'll take any questions on this.
Yeah, I'd just like to share, you know, that one of my top priorities is public safety. And I believe that the board has shown that, that the board has supported public safety. In fact, in the last couple of years, we've had some tight budgets, and we've allocated monies to the public safety programs, such as Assures, the DAs, Channel Protective Services, AAA.
Right, right, very good.
And I support the concept of saving dollars to support public safety. But I also want to share that our CEO and his staff has done an excellent job in managing their budgets and bringing information and recommendations to the board. So, I would like to ask, you know, that our CEO continue to determine, to look at our budgets, our specific budgets, and put those budgets, using county policies, to recommend any changes, to determine the size of cuts, you know, that he sees appropriate, and then we can discuss it with our specific departments and our own budgets. So, I believe that the CEO is doing a good job, and his staff is doing a good job in budgeting and determining what cuts, if any, or reductions, if any, should be done, and then we can look at it and determine what route to go. I don't believe that we ought to do it permanently, I think we ought to do it on a yearly basis, because I see a budget as a roadmap. And when you take this roadmap, there's obstacles that might come along and you have to adjust accordingly. And to say that we're going to cut X amount of dollars, I don't believe is a good way to make a budget. So, I'd like to make a motion right now at this time, that we ask our CEO, or to recommend to CEO, that they look at the size of the reduction in the board of supervisors' budget. And in any allocation of those funds, he makes his budget recommendations, and to bring that to the board during our spring budget. In other words, go and look at our budgets, if there's any recommendations that you believe that we should look at, bring it to us, and let us look at it, and then we can go from there, just like any other department or division. But to have a specific number.
Well, I think we've done, I think we've done specific numbers. We asked the GSA to cut, you know, find 3% in their budgets, we've done, we've already done that. And so, I think you're making it, it's hard to confuse in what you're asking there, because what does the CEO know what to do?
But the CEO looks at our budget, and I think he can make recommendations, if we have any savings in our budget, as to what we should reduce, any. And to make a permanent reduction, 10%, I don't think it's as good planning, and I think that we need to look at a yearly budget to make sure that we're in line, and if we have any savings, then we look at that savings accordingly. So, I would like to make a motion that, to ask the CEO to recommend the size of reductions in the board of supervisors' budget and in allocation of those funds, when he makes his budget recommendations during the board's spring budget. That would be my motion at this time.
I'm going to second that, and here's the clarifying point. I believe the clarifying point is that this recommendation, and I think you've been very fair in saying that the board offices have been, we watch our budgets closely, we have had every year savings. So, the point is, it really should go through the CEO during the normal budgeting process. And for the CEO to, when we get to that point that he says to us as a board, okay, board, you, and historically, I believe those savings or those efficiencies have been rolled into reserve.
Right, exactly.
That's not a bad policy.
No, it's not been good, good.
But I think it's also fair to say that, at the time we're in our budget discussions, we should, the CEO should be able to come to us and say, you know, here's what I'm seeing in your savings and efficiencies, and here's areas of need, and you, the board, then decide, you know, whether to direct them into ABC. Because there might be years, you know, I could see, depending on, here's a supervisor who has four cities in her district, and constituent work, and focuses, and looking at, you know, issues that might come about that would generate a need for additional revenues to be used out of my budget to conduct whatever community forums, et cetera. So, you may not have, I may not have a 10% savings next year, I may have an 8% savings. So, to put a hard number out there of a 10%, I think is, isn't consistent with what historically has occurred either. So, I think it's, all of this should just go through the budget, during the budget process, budget time, that we are able to look at that and have the discussion.
Well, I appreciate those comments, but I don't know what's any different than any other agency that would have different ups and downs in their budget, and they have to figure out how to make it work within the realm. And then if they have something special, they probably come back to CEO's office, their analysts, and say, I'm going to have some one-time special thing I need to do. I guess, my only concern with, I know where you're going, because you don't really, we don't give the CEO a lot of opportunity to say, okay, there really is three or four or $500,000 here, that I'm going to squeeze this, but I really have this four or 500, but I'm not sure where it's going to go. If I got the supervisor said, yes, that here it is a reduction, I could use it here, instead of cutting something back or making it extra difficult in this other situation, you know, because you're talking about, there's going to be a lot of different things. We know we've got, this power's what, eight or nine million dollars that we're going to pay additional pension costs this year, right? And so, you know, the idea is that somebody's going to get squeezed on that somewhere, we've got to come up with eight or nine million dollars. And the idea that we have three or 400 or $500,000 that will roll into reserves, which has been tremendous for us, you know, I think it's one of the things that we've done, this board has done a tremendous job balancing its budget. And what I'm saying is that we would have that opportunity where he would say, okay, Sheriff, I need you to squeeze one more officer, DA, or this, or, you know, somebody. I'd rather say, no, I have this money, it's not going to roll into reserves, but I have that opportunity to save that sheriff's office space, or whatever it's going to be. That's what I'm saying. We do it the other way, the CEO doesn't really have the guarantee that he's going to have that money. That's my only concern.
My concern is that, and I don't want to micromanage.
Yeah, and I don't either, that's right.
I don't want to micromanage. I believe that the CEO and the staff, Paul had done an excellent job in the budget and recommending whether we have a reduction or we tighten our belts. And I think that if he gives us a recommendation, looks at our budget and gives us a recommendation that we can work with him, we can probably reduce that. I want to support public safety, I want to support other departments and other agencies, but I think we need the latitude to keep it open so we can adjust accordingly and then work in the future. And I think that our staff is doing an excellent job, and I think they can make those recommendations accordingly.
So, you're asking, then the CEO's going to come back, I need, I'd like to see you guys reduce your budget, 10%, 7%, 8%? Is that what you're asking?
If he says, has recommendation that we should, then we look at it and...
Okay, well, I think you're putting a lot of pressure on the CEO.
Well, you know, he's, our budgeting, you know, we, I think they're the experts, that's why we have individuals like Paul and the rest of the team to work for us and to determine what is the best budget for our agencies and including our departments for that.
I struggle with that, I'd rather not put him under that kind of pressure, we could say, here's our money, here, take it.
No, I'm not passing the buck here at all. I'm saying that, for example, in the fifth district, I have a tremendous amount of work in, that we do, and meet with our constituencies, meet with agencies, and meet with neighborhoods, and it takes, it takes a lot of time. So, I'm going back to my motion, you know, that, and we got a second, so...
Okay, well, that's fine, I just believe that we should be stepping up, making decisions ourselves, we're the board, we don't ask the CEO to do that piece for us and do that.
Well, and Supervisor, I see that when it comes, again, this should go through the regular budget process and discussions. So, when we get, as we get our regular reports, we see where we have savings and efficiencies. The CEO certainly gets the big picture report of all five offices, then those cumulative dollars are sitting there in a pot, and we say, during the budget process, we, as a board, agree that these dollars should go X, Y, Z.
And I want to add to that, we did reports, so we look at them, and I'll share with my staff, why we, what's happening here in this one particular, let's cut here and let's cut there, and we manage that budget accordingly throughout the year.
Okay. Well, that's fine, I just, I just believe that...
But I want to thank you for that.
No, I appreciate your comments, and I just can't belong where you're going, but I would, you've made it up pretty clear that, okay, now the CEO has the power to come in and say, you guys have been saving three or 400,000, I'm going to cut that three or 400,000 if I need it someplace else. I mean, you're putting him under a lot of pressure.
I don't think it's a matter of power, I think it's a matter of recommendation.
Well, okay, but either way.
A recommendation to us, you know. And that's the way I see it, because it's, I see a budget as a vehicle that takes you from point A to point B, and you can adjust accordingly.
Yeah, you can adjust it, and we could come back a year from now, or two years from now, adjust it if we see it's a burden, but I...
And that's right, and the money, as Supervisor mentioned, goes to the general fund.
It goes in reserves, which is good, but...
Which is a plan.
So, I think with this discussion, what we're saying is, it doesn't automatically go into reserves, it comes back to this board for discussion, during the normal budget process.
I'm not sure it comes, okay.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Okay, let's vote.
I think it's a mistake to ask the CEO to be in that position, so...
Where's the big boy?
I know that a few years back, I had like $100,000 just in my office budget, going back to the reserves, and I was thinking, I'd like to have that allocated, at that time I was helping with Santa Rosa Park, and, but understood that we couldn't designate where we want our office budgets to go. And I look at some, you know, if I had that choice, you know, I think about, not just government, but if you look at the farmers and their need to lower water rates, you know, look at long-term embusmen and how we need to get more people out there to our convalescent homes, and, you know, so there's all different places where this fund can go, if it all of a sudden is up in the air for that. So, I don't know if your motion, or your, the motion that you would have liked to have made, to specifically give it to specific departments.
I wasn't giving it specific, I just made it general, because public safety is our biggest piece.
Right, but there are other things, there are things that could help stimulate our economy, you know, and it doesn't just have to go to government, for example, if we want to call those...
Well, it's government money, though.
It is government money, I understand that, but we do allocate funds to other than just our agencies in the county, for example, long-term.
And that's why I'm saying we can give recommendations from...
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't want to be growing government at this time, what I'm trying to tell you is, taxpayers give us so much money, let's reduce if we have it, we've done a good job, we're going to continue, hopefully, to put money in reserves, because all the departments do a tremendous job, like we did this last year, $7 million through the CEO's office and their hard work, we had money going into that.
And also, I'm saying is, you know, that if we have that discretion, and I think that's what I heard from my fellow board members, is what are our options? You're saying public safety, I kind of like the idea, you know, how can we help the farming community, or how can we help long-term embusmen, just a couple that come to mind.
Well, I agree with you, I understand where you're coming, I would not want to take any authority away from the CEO's office, who knows running this and sort of dictating money, obviously, more the general picture of it, because they have done a tremendous job trying to balance the needs, and we don't always have as much input as they do in seeing exactly where the needs are, trying to, what is exactly the need.
Well, and that's kind of our role, though, you know, we do look at and prioritize where the money should go, so I do think that is appropriate for us to discuss. And also, you know, permanently, forever and ever, a 10% cut, I could see, let's try for a year and see how that works, and then come back again.
Okay, well, a year would be great, see if we can make it work, I would go for a year, too, just the opportunity that we're going to be under the gun for $9 million more, we've been returning this three or $400,000. My goal was, let's us, this board, be another active member trying to say, here's the opportunity for three or $400,000 to help the CEO find that way to balance through all this, going to have $9 million.
And I agree, because that's exactly what I'm saying, that if we have savings, we will have recommendations from our CEO's office and the budgeting team, and if we have any savings, we can, we can...
There's no savings if it's not, if it's not reduced, because the budget is the budget, it's not a guaranteed savings until after the year's over, so that's the problem.
So, we have a motion and a...
But again, you're talking about taking funds from one pot and putting them in another pot.
I'm just putting it in the whole pot.
Right.
And the CEO's going to have to, he's going to, what he's going to do is, the CEO's office is going to come up and say, we're $9 million short. I'm going to ask all the different departments to reduce what they've got to make up this $9 million, so we can balance our budget. All I'm saying is, we are already, every year, putting this money into our reserves, maybe we can say, here's a reduction of 300, it's not much out of 9 million, but it's sure an opportunity to save one job, this job, so we can provide service to the public. That's my thing. And that's where I'm coming from, I'm not asking to put it in anything, my thing was...
I thought you had said public safety.
No, public safety's the largest piece, it's an opportunity, because that's where most of the dollars are required to go.
So, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, if I could, now, based on that comment, I just want to try to make sure we look at the whole picture. We haven't, we haven't carved out the board of supervisors' budget before like this, and I think that we kind of have to ask ourselves sort of why and all of that at this point in time. But we take your example that you just said, you said, if we have a $9 million deficit and we have to do cuts... deficit and we have to do cuts," the board of supervisors has always taken the same cuts as every other department has taken. When we say, "Hey, we're gonna do three percent," we've done three percent. So, we've, we've, we've sort of non-politicized the board of-
Well, I don't know if it's politicized, because ever since I've been here, the same budget, the same, same level's been for six years I've been here.
So, my point is, we've, we've taken, we've taken, we, we do what the other, you know, if he's got a problem and we have to, we have to squeeze it down, we squeezed everybody down, including the board of supervisors' budget. So, uh, the, the other thing I, the other thing I wanna correct you on is that on the ISF funds, um, that was a recommendation from the CEO, that there be a three percent cut. Again, it wasn't the board of supervisors recommending an amount. So, the idea of having the CEO look at our budget and look at everybody else's budgets, and try to say, you know, "What should we do? And, you know, if, if we're having problems, do we wanna change our policy with regards to, uh, putting that money in reserves?" Because I think it's been a very sound policy for us to say, to take those savings and use them for reserves, because they, we, we, we are not at the level of reserves that we're supposed to be at yet. And so, um, so I think that the motion says, yes, take a look at the budget and recommend the amount of, of reduction that the CEO recommends, looking at all of the things that have, have to be looked at right there. But I just wanna, I just wanted to correct those two things. It's the CEO that recommended the, the, the amount of the ISF cuts, you know, and-
And I, I, I don't see it as passing the buck, I think it's-
No, no, but I, the, the board during the two thousand, when things got tight, they, what, how many, some of you were here, they cut the number of staff, they did everything else. We didn't do that during this last, this last time. All I'm saying is that we have the opportunity to do, uh, what some of the other, other agencies have had to do, is cut staff, had to, we didn't, we didn't do that. We didn't do that even though things were tight. We were pretty much, pretty level over the last years I've been here. And all I'm saying is, during those times, I think there was a reduction of how many staff you could have in your office. They all, as a team, came together and did that. So, that, that's my goal, is that us, it's not politicizing, it's just the idea that we've asked these agencies the last two or three years, things got tight, 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 it's gonna get tougher to find every nickel and every penny and every dollar. I'm just saying, if we're already doing this every single year, here's an opportunity to hopefully save a job or two out there, that's, that's my goal.
And I believe it, too, I think that we can, we can assist, we can do it, too.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping then the CEO, then will come back and recommend some type of reduction in this, this thing, if that's, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and vote.
We'll have our options available at that time.
I hope so.
Thank you anyway for the, for the discussion, thank you.
Okay, and let's approve, uh, four to one, and we're gonna take a five-minute, we have a ten, a ten o'clock time, but we're gonna take five minutes, a break. I'm gonna resume our, um, our board of supervisors' meeting for, uh, February twenty-eighth, and we have item number thirty-one, and that item number thirty-one is a public hearing regarding adoption of a resolution approving water rate adjustments and provisions, two rules and regulations for Ventura County Water Works District, number sixteen.
Good morning again, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Rudy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. As Chair mentioned, this is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase for Ventura County Water Work District, number sixteen. District provides sanitation service to the community of Piru and water supply to properties along Pacific Avenue and State Route one-twenty-six. District purchases entire water supply from Waring Water Company and sells it to our customers. Waring has increased their water rates in July, and we are recommending that district water rates be increased by four point seven-five percent to offset the increased water supply costs. A forty-five-day notice of the proposed water rate increase was mailed to all of the property owners who receive our monthly water bills to the same address we mailed these properties, these notices. Clerk of the board did not receive any protest letters, and we are recommending that your board, uh, approve recommendations in our staff report. That concludes my verbal presentation, I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rudy. Is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Pacala.
Yes.
Thank you. Would you explain why there are only ten properties in this, um, particular area that's being asked to pay? Waring serves the majority of Piru, this is an unusual, I think it's unusual, but years ago, they had to comply with some conditions, water quality conditions, and that, then, so-
Sure. Prior to nineteen ninety-four, Risman Mutual Water Company used to provide water supply to these ten properties along Pacific Avenue and State Route one-twenty-six. At that time, their water supply had bacterial, bacteriological contamination, and State Health Department wanted to shut down the water system. State called county offices and asked, "What can county do to help improve this water quality in this area?" At that time, we have had discussions with Waring Water Company, asking if they would provide water supply to these properties. Waring's position was they do not have funds to invest in extending these water lines to provide water supply to these properties. That's when we came to your board and recommended that we go and seek some grant funding to construct the water system and improve the water quality to comply with the Title XXII requirements. Your board authorized us to secure a grant, and we were able to secure three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Water Resources, and we used that grant to construct this water system, and since that time, we have been providing water supply to this area. Since this is a grant, this water system may not be transferred to a private water company, uh, working for, making profit. However, there's a provision in the grant agreement, after twenty years, which would be sometime end of two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, we could work with the state and the Waring Water Company to see whether they want to assume the ownership of this. At that time, your board could make a decision of how we want to deal with it at that time.
Right. Thank you. I wanted to just explain why we're talking about so few properties here, and what the issue was, the background issue on it.
Any additional questions? No, this is a public hearing, I don't have any cards for public speakers, but is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Remove the recommended action.
We got a first and a, and a second. Okay, let's vote.
No, we don't have Steve. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is, um, a, um, resolution for Haas Automation, and I'd like to invite, Joanne Haas over to the podium, and also Tim Blaylock from the Boys and Girls Club, and also, um, Dick Zaga, and also, um, Joanne. And this is a resolution from the board of supervisors, the County Ventura, honoring Jean Haas Foundation on the occasion of a corporate philanthropy day, in the support of a Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Oxnard and Port Wayne Eme and the community, whereas Jean Haas Foundation was created in nineteen ninety-nine to support local community organizations and deserving charities. It is focused on children's charities and organizations that feed the poor in Ventura County and has donated a total of eleven million dollars in grants since its inception. Whereas the Jean Foundation has, Jean Haas Foundation has demonstrated as step in support for youth of this community by supporting the Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard, Greater Oxnard and Port Wayne Eme throughout the years with generous funds totaling a million dollars, to help children be great, to help them graduate from high school, and to help them achieve their dreams as goods and caring adults. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Oxnard, Port Wayne Eme serves nearly nine thousand students and youth in their community, and with the Jean Haas Foundation's supports, have been able to renovate and reopen the original Semin Street clubhouse for the benefit of all the community and its youth. Whereas the Jean Foundation, Jean Haas Foundation has donated more than, to more than eight hundred organizations to help strengthen the community, including the recent donations to the Ventura College, uh, College Foundation and to Our Lady of Guadalupe in Oxnard. Now, therefore, that has been resolved, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Jean Haas Foundation on the occasion of a corporate philanthropy day and its ongoing support of the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Oxnard, Port Wayne Eme, and looks forward to many, many more years of continued strong partnerships on behalf of the community. And this is presented to all of you on the twenty, twenty-eighth day of February twenty-twelve. You wanna share some words, then I'll go down and give you this.
Hi, I'm Joanne Haas, I'm Jean Haas's sister. I'm basically representing the Jean Haas Foundation for Jean Haas, Bob Murray, Peter Zierhut, right now could not, were unable to attend, and, um, just wanna say thank you, and, um, they are very happy to help. Jean's a very generous man, I know him personally, so, I know he's very, very generous and gives from the heart, so, just wanna say thank you for your hard work, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My name is Richard Elzinga, I'm the president of the board of Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard, Port Wayne Eme, and I would like to thank you and applaud the supervisors for this recognition. Without the Haas Foundation, we could not provide the services we do to over nine thousand children in Oxnard, Port Wayne Eme, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, you know, that, that number, nine thousand children, that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot of kids. Sharing with the, the, our folks here and, and Haas and Blaylock and, and the, and the chairman of the, of the Boys and Girls Club, that I was a member two hundred years ago, over at, uh, of the one and seventh street, when I was just a little kid, you know, and, and I wanna thank you again for an excellent job, and thank you for your contribution on behalf of the board of supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
And supervisor Long's gonna help us with the next accommodation.
Thank you. And thank you. It is my pleasure to, uh, present, um, the Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. It wasn't Teen Dating Awareness Month, it's Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. And invite up to the podium Carolyn Sutton, and I didn't, Prisitelle, is that close?
Yes.
Coalition for Family Harmony. Rachel Park, Coalition for Family Harmony, Eric Sternat, who, well, I'm Mel from Interface Children Family Services, Nicole Gonzalez-Sight, Interface Family Services, please come up to receive this, and it's my pleasure to present this, to talk about, um, I think something that, um, isn't always talked about, nor are people aware of what is a, unfortunately, a increase that we're seeing with our adolescents who report verbal, physical, emotional, and sexual abuse from a dating partner. Uh, that's one out of four adolescents who report that. We're talking ages here between sixteen to twenty-four, and they're most vulnerable to experiencing abuse at a rate that has triple the national average for this age range, and it's, again, that dating violence that occurs during a dating relationship. High school students experience the physical violence in a dating relationship, that means they're also more likely to use drugs and alcohol, greater risk of suicide, and more likely to carry patterns of abuse in the future relationships. Young people victimized by dating partner are likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors and disrupt normal development of their self-esteem. Half of the teens who experience dating violence report that it took place in school buildings or on school grounds. This is one of those, unfortunately, one of those social experiences that there are solutions to, there are ways that we need to be reaching out to help these young teens. Thirty-three percent of teens who are in abusive relationship rarely tell people about that. Eighty-one percent of parents surveyed will say they, they don't think there's a problem, they didn't know there was a problem, they don't admit that there was a problem. Young people, um, who are in healthy relationships and, and, um, understand that they can raise their voice and speak up on this, can help all of us in preventing what is, again, a growing social concern. Community awareness, providing training for teachers, counselors, and school staff to recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating are some of the steps that can be taken. And by recognizing Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, we are able to do that and to get the word out and, and, and create the community dialogue, and invite the community dialogue, and encourage our teens to step forward and feel comfortable to talk, and make sure that the parents feel that they, too, can talk both to the professionals, but also to help them to reach out to their youth and talk to them. Everyone has a right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. So, by bringing this forward, we're really asking, urging all of our citizens to work towards ending teen dating violence, to empower our youth to develop healthier relationships, to assist victims in accessing the information and the supportive services they need, to look at effective intervention and prevention policies, and again, to raise that community dot, that community dialogue, so that this quiet epidemic, and it is a quiet epidemic of teen dating violence, um, that we can move, move the meter on that to change the results and to, again, support a very, um, part of, a very, part of our, our youth who have a lot of pressures on them and a lot of, of challenges to get through being a teenage, those teenage years and those young adult years. So, I'm very pleased to bring this down and present this to you, ask you to certainly speak to the item, and the chair of the board's going to join me.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you very much for, um, giving us this opportunity to, to highlight what is a really important issue. We really appreciate the, the work of Chairman Zaragoza and, and the board and, and Mr. Powers for allowing us to, to really help get this message out. When we have so many challenges like we do these days, a prevention effort like this can be very difficult to sustain, but it's something that the, that Interface is committed to, the Coalition is committed to. We, we do wanna recognize the Verizon Foundation for stepping forward and helping us at Interface to, to develop a, or bring a proven practice to our own county here in terms of proven approaches with, with, um, prevention for teens. So, um, you know, we know that this is a big issue in our county. By the numbers, we, we have the second highest per capita rate of domestic violence in the state, something we really need to work on. So, uh, our approach of getting to teens in the ninth grade, in their health classes, it's a perfect, a perfect moment for them, they're starting to experiment with relationships, and, and so it's so critical that we can get to them ahead of time and really start to, to move the needle on, on those violent incidents, both for teens and also as they get older, as, as adults. So, we really appreciate you helping us to really get the word out and, and move parents to really understand that this is an- to really understand that this is an issue that needs dialogue at home and, and careful attention for their teens. So we, we definitely appreciate it.
I second everything that he said. And I also think that one of the ways the Coalition works is that we work to give the children and the teens the tools to kind of spread throughout their friends and their family and start changing their systems. Because I'm just one person, but if I can get the voice out to the kids, the teens that I work with and they can be empowered to really get their voice out there, then we've created movement, which is really what I think needs to happen now. So, thank you.
And I just want to thank you for, for this acknowledgement. What we've provided to you in these folders here is, is a brief description of our Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program. And one of the things that I wanted to pay note to is this past several months, we've been working with youth councils in the city of Oxnard and Santa Paula to develop posters, posters that highlight the warning signs of an abusive relationship, but also the healthy signs of a relationship and what teens really should expect. And it's all about respect. And so these are posters that we're distributing to ninth grade health classes and that'll be posted and it's a constant reminder of this issue. And the more we can spread the news and, and get this, get the word out, hopefully we'll be good to prevent this and prevent the continuation of the cycle of violence.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Oh, just thank you very much for, for your support. Not only is the prevention effort starting within the county, the community, the schools, but it is our hope that throughout the year, we can work on this in the educational institutions, that this needs to be a part of our education now as teen dating violence is on the rise, even starting with ages as young as 11. And going to Sacramento, speaking with the Department of Education, we have found that this is a subject that really is on the rise and that needs to be looked at, not only within our agencies, within our communities, but educators need to be discussing this as well. And so we hope that this year is the year that we can really bring this to light. So thank you very much for your support.
Okay. We're going to take item 52 next, a little out of order here, but to assist our, our staff here, item 52.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. The item before you is a lease of excess property around the Todd Road Jail. When the county purchased this property in 1991, there was excess lemon orchards for the past almost 20 some years. They've been managed through a contract with a private farm management company. My understanding from Sheriff's Department personnel is they've learned more than they ever want to know about farming and they'd like to get out of the business. We posted the availability of the property at the Ed Commissioner's Office. I made calls to members of the farming community that I worked with previously. The Sheriff's Department, I think, also reached out to members of the farming community. We got eight calls expressing interest in the property. Five people actually visited. We got two different bids. We then did a little mini auction between the two high bidders because they were so close and we ended up with a lease, proposed lease with Greg Underwood. Mr. Underwood has leased property from the county before, excess property in front of the Moore Park wastewater treatment plant. We believe he's a responsible farmer and was a good tenant and we had asked if you would approve the lease. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No? Move approval?
Couldn't find any job training opportunities, Erhutts.
We're working.
Sure.
Mr. Powers, members of the Board, I got to say, this is the second project Keith and the real estate people have done for us this year. The first one was Camrio where we're going to save a couple hundred thousand dollars. He did an outstanding job. We're going to double our revenue with guaranteed coming in. And Mr. Underwood, who most of you know, is a great partner already. He's, we're working on a warehouse with the CEO to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars over years and he's going to knock down Trees Forest. We're working on a solar project. He's going to knock down the Trees Forest. So it's already a great partnership and sharing things, but Keith has done an outstanding job in representing the county and generating revenue and saving us all money. So it's, it's been a great partnership.
Thank you for that information, Chair. Thank you and good job. Okay. So that's approved for and one abstention.
The abstention is because Mr. Underwood is supporting my campaign.
Okay, so noted. The next item that we have is item 34, and that's combined with 49. 34 and 49. This is receiving file, a presentation on the proposed.
Good morning, Board Members. Paul Dersi from the County Executive Office. Our plan of attack this morning is to have GSA present their rates, fees, then ITSD report on their rates and fees, and then our office on our Internal Service Fund rates and fees. And then we'll roll into item 49, which is the Budget Development Manual.
So without any more, we'll let the GSA take it over with Dersi. Okay, Paul? Paul's the star today, huh?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Paul Grossgold, General Services Agency Director, here this morning to brief you on our 2012-13 proposed ISF rates and ask you to approve those rates. I will begin by giving you a snapshot and a background on the current year, 11-12, as we take those numbers into the, the coming year of 12-13. And then I will describe some of the cost drivers and conditions under which we developed our rates and then open for questions. For 2011-12, so current year, I would just like to point out that at this time last year, we briefed your Board and were approved for our BDM estimates of $50,644,902. Those rates were approved. Subsequently, our then new CEO came to us and asked for a, that we scrub our numbers and look for a 3% increased savings based on some challenges that the, our, the county family was facing at that time. So we went back and did that. I'm happy to report that we met and in fact, exceeded that goal. Right now, we are projecting that by the end of the fiscal year, our costs will be 48,945,402 for a reduction of nearly 1.7 below our estimates of last year. I've already briefed your Board on the next item, that $470,000, which is the program management fees, which affect the, those agencies that do projects from GSA upgrade projects, that type of thing. So those were our FY 11 and 12 numbers. So if you look at 48,945,402, that's the number that goes forward. Speaking of forward, I'm trying to get this, and it's not moving. Okay. Oh, it went and I didn't even know it. Okay. 48,945 then becomes the baseline number to go into 12-13. The next group of numbers are a set of numbers that we know are, we will experience some increases as we go forward into next year. So staffing costs, some software that we have to purchase, some contract colas that are going into effect, projected utility rates, rate increases, postage rate increases, fuel, and I'm really concerned about fuel right now with what's, what's happening. It's just something we're going to have to watch. So that takes the last year's number based on what we know we will face in increased costs to 50,058,402. And then we're going to reduce that.
Paul, on the, on the fuel, do we get a special rate as a?
We do. We're traditionally 20 to 25%. The, the fuel that we pump is below commercial gas station rates. It's still, it's still going to be expensive.
And rich in what, five bucks now a gallon?
Right. So, so that's, it's a concern. We're going to have to watch that. That's a pass-through expense that agencies pay as they drive. And so it's just something that we, we're all going to have to watch. So with that baseline of 50,058,402, we also applied additional reductions that we are looking at providing for next year of nearly another million dollars to come up with our proposed 12-13 BDM estimate of 49,078,418. So that's our number that we're putting before you today. By far, our biggest, the biggest element of that, and of course, our costs then roll down into our rates and square footage rates by far are the, the most, the, the largest chunk of that. And so you can see here, and for, for the sake of clarity, we only put in the last three years, but if you went back five years, you would see that we have really held our rates, our square footage rates, pretty flat for the last five years, even though we have incurred additional costs. And, and I think that's a testament to the, to the staff, to the Service Excellence Program and some of the savings we've been able to, to derive. And so you see what our rates are there for, for some of our bigger facilities. And you can see some reductions in pre-trial and Todd Road Jail in particular. Going to the next slide, this is just a, a quick benchmark slide of what square footage rates are for facilities. So for example, pre-trial and then a similar facility locally on Telephone Road lease. So we can see that our costs, our, our square footage rates are significantly lower than prevailing lease rates in the local area. And as close as we can make it, those are apples-to-apples comparisons, full service gross leases. So it includes, it includes all of those elements that you see there, utilities, maintenance, housekeeping, grounds and depreciation. It does not include security, which is a separate, separate rate. We can go, some of our, our cost drivers, we can look at our project rates. We mentioned that before. We were able to go because of increased volume, as I briefed you before, we were able to go from 12 and a half to 9.9 for a 21% reduction on our PM fee rate. And I just wanted to point out a couple of others. A project manager rate, interiors management and interiors labor rates have also declined nicely based on that same phenomenon of, of increased volume of work and our ability to spread our costs over additional projects. Similarly, in our purchasing department, we've seen, we've been able to derive some declining rates there between this year and next year. Some of that is due to our inability to, for decreased copier costs and also our, just looking at our workload and being, spreading our costs out. And I just wanted to take this opportunity, because I mentioned our facilities, maintenance folks and our purchasing department, to shamelessly display the perennial receipt of the Excellence in Maintenance Award for our maintenance department and the much, the much more unwieldy purchasing department that they've won, I don't know, for about 150 years or whatever, or maybe a little less. But I think it's important to continue to win those awards because it just shows that we're doing things right. This is a, a slide I'm particularly proud of and it's our, the results of contract and RFP negotiations that our staff has been able to derive. The first is, and we've, again, we have briefed your Board on this in the past, but our job order contract rates were reduced from 70% to 55% of book price, saving our, our county customers, project customers, almost $2.6 million. Our JOC administration-related, but a different contract, you can see the savings there. Our copier rates, we've been able to hold those down and, and the rest of them up there. So I, I think that's an impressive slide and, and.
So the reductions came through the RFP process?
Yes, the RFP and also negotiations with existing contracts.
With existing contractors. And this is the time of the?
And they, and, and these contractors understand our issues and we have to understand theirs. They have to do business and make money.
That's quite a savings. That's a tremendous amount of savings. Yeah, it's something to be proud of, and you're right. It's great.
Energy savings, that's part of the mix in, in our rates. Our utilities bills are, are things we have to pay every month. And so the savings we've been able to derive from the, the energy projects has been ongoing. And I, for several years, we've told your Board that, you know, we're picking the low-hanging fruit and at some ti, at some point, the, the savings get harder to get when you, you get the easy ones or the, the low-hanging fruit. When you try to get the, you get more, it takes a little bit more to get. So we're continuing along that, that trajectory and did want to point out the, the savings in our energy bill, uh, usage. Now here, independent of cost, you can see what our, our electricity usage has been doing as a result of those projects. So even though rates can and do go up, the fact that we're using less is still helping keep the costs down over time. This was an opportunity, we, we had recently, an inquiry came in from a, a tire dealer out in town, came through Supervisor Foye's office, gave us an opportunity to benchmark our, our tire pricing. The contention was by this vendor that he could save us money on our tires. Well, we actually use a state contract to buy our tires. So this pricing that you see on five of our top tires, and this, this one is the Patrol Cars on our Crown Victorias, and, and this is not list price. These black lines are locally available or online pricing of those tires. So available retail and that next to the pricing we get on those tires. So it's just an, an opportunity for your Board to see the, some of the pricing we are able to get through our, our partnerships and, and available vehicles for that.
Hey Paul, I appreciate you letting me have your staff to go through that and look at that.
Sure. It was a good opportunity for us. Just to show that no stone gets unturned, the mail services, we try very hard, our business support group works very hard at working with the, the postal service and with our customers to get the best pricing available on mail. And we do that through automation and making sure that the right envelope is used for the right application and we're keeping track of those savings and year to date, we're up over 160,000, so we'll, we'll continue to do that. Although I mentioned earlier, postal rates are going up, but we'll still work to.
They have gone up.
They have. That's correct. Custodial supplies, we've been able to get a 10% reduction over the last couple of years and that's just by being careful about what we buy and how much we buy and we'll, we'll continue to look at that. And that's really, that's really it for today. I will be happy to answer any other questions. I wanted to provide a couple of highlights for the year ahead. I think the sheriff talked about solar over Todd Road Jail. We're working toward that. Facilities Management Systems is a computer-aided software package that we have purchased and we are bringing online and that's going to be able to give us. Although I mentioned earlier, postal rates are going up.
That's right.
But we'll still work to.
They have gone up.
They have. That's correct. Custodial supplies, we've been able to get a 10 percent reduction over the last couple of years. And that's just by being careful about what we buy and how much we buy. And we'll, we'll continue to look at that. And that's really, that's really it for today. I will be happy to answer any other questions. I wanted to provide a couple of highlights for the year ahead. I think the sheriff talked about solar over Todd Road Jail. We're working toward that. Facilities Management Systems is a computer-aided software package that we have purchased and we are bringing online. And that's going to be able to give us really, for the first time, the ability to manage at a ver, at a very fine granularity, the usage and utilization of our facilities. And obviously, facilities is a very large percentage of our costs. Asset Works is a fleet software. It's, it's time, we have an old system, it's time to upgrade that. And I might add that Asset Works is the same company that the fire district uses. Fleet utilization, as I briefed your board before, is something we, that we have and we will continue to look at to bring, bring our fleet to, to as small a level as we can, make sure we, we have no more vehicles than we absolutely need. Those are expensive assets. And finally, utility management automation. This is a way that we're going to be able to bring under one roof, all of the utility bill payment and management, not just for GSA facilities, but for all county facilities. And this will save, save money over what GSA is currently spending just for GSA. And every one of these items links directly to a strategic plan, item in our, in our new strategic plan.
Let me ask a quick question. I was over at Pacifica High School Saturday, given out a Eagle Scout resolution, and I noticed that the high school district and Ochsart Elementary School district are now doing quite a few, quite a bit of the solar paneling, you know, throughout their, their schools. Can we partner with them on, on what they're doing to save some dollars?
It's, it's something we, we have thought about. We have not gone out and partnered with, we have partnered with.
Other agencies?
With a, with a company under a power purchase agreement. But partnering with the, with other governmental agencies in the community is something we definitely want to look at in the future. We have not done that so far.
So I've noticed that they're doing, over at Frank Junior High School, at Pacifica, at Ochsart, you know, and the panels are just going up left and right. And they're using them underneath the, the, like carports and also patios, you know, for.
And we're, and we're looking at those same, same types of projects here.
Fantastic. Good job. Any other questions, sir?
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
Just to really appreciate Paul's work and his team with Greg and Meta and the whole GSA department really for helping us get to this point. They're doing it through cost reductions, as you can see, but also building business, generating revenue, like with their project management and their job order contracts. And I just, so you're coming at it a lot of different ways and it's having a great effect. And I know the healthcare agency really appreciates it. They've had three or four million dollars' worth of, of job order contract work going there. The quality is excellent and, and the timeliness really. So I mean, you're, you're really making it happen. And it's happening at a time we wonder how the county is sustaining services during these tough times, that this is one of the key ways that it's happening. So appreciate the, the hard work. Thank you.
Good job, Paul.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor. If I could, I, I just wanted to also compliment Paul and compliment the CEO. You know, you, you believe there were some savings there. You, you work with GSA. GSA was able to make that happen. I think it, it had a significant impact in terms of the county family relationships and, and helping the sheriff move forward. So I just want to compliment everybody. That's the, that's the kind of, of thing that keeps Ventura County, you know, really a special place for, for everybody and, and a place that I think makes us all feel proud to work here.
There's partnerships, yes. So more savings. Okay, good.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, CEO Powers, for the record, Mike Pettit, IT Services. I'm here with you today to share our accomplishments in the fiscal area, both this year and, and the year ahead. Have some exciting news to tell. Before I jump into the fiscal accomplishments, I wanted to highlight a few of the key technology projects this year to give you an idea of what all that technology money that you're spending is accomplishing and achieving, both for the businesses that our county supports, but our citizens. First of all, your board knows the VCHRP upgrade we accomplished this year, and that was significantly under budget by over a half million dollars, actually, figures closer to 700,000. The radio simulcast upgrade, that was a large project, over $15 million for a number of years to increase the radio coverage in the county for public safety. The, the success story there is that at the beginning of the project, all public safety sat down with a map of the county and identified all the areas that they wanted to have radio coverage in the county. And at the end of the project, they went out and validated that coverage in the areas that they identified. And over 90 percent of the areas they have identified now have radio coverage. That is significant in providing public safety services to our citizens here in Ventura County. ECM, we've talked a lot at, at your board regarding ECM implementations this year. I just wanted to highlight the HSA project that we've spoken about here. Mr. Zimmerman has presented some of the successes there, has been nominated for a Digital Communities Award. And that's a tremendous recognition. And, and we'll find out in May whether we won, we've won that award. But it is a few and an elite set of counties to be nominated for that award. So we're proud of that accomplishment. This year, we also accomplished a GIS infrastructure replacement. Our GIS infrastructure was about seven years old. So we have gotten a lot of value out of the infrastructure, but we also implemented state-of-the-art infrastructure now that's scalable, supports our GIS business here at the county and also costs a little bit less than what we were spending before. Another, albeit small project, but a significant one, is an electronic search warrant project that was just accomplished in January of this year. And the reason I wanted to highlight this, this project is because it's another testimony of how well our Ventura County agencies partner together. Our district attorney sponsored a modification to the California Penal Code to support electronic search warrants. And that means submission of electronic warrants and also approval of those warrants by the court. And Ventura County was instrumental in getting that legislation passed at the state level. Well, in keeping with our commitment, our county was also the first county in the state to process an electronic search warrant. We developed that system here in Ventura County. So a pretty exciting accomplishment. Not only we stand behind our legislation, but we see it through to completion. This is going to save many, many, many hours for both our judges and our law enforcement in the field in carrying out the administration of justice. Also, we've completed a number of voice, VOIP, it's voice-over IP. We've talked about our converged voice infrastructure here at the county. That's resulting in some significant savings. I made a presentation a little over six weeks ago about some of those savings, over $600,000 in savings in this area. So we're excited about that as well. Moving into the current fiscal year accomplishments, as of our APO six projections, we originally started out the fiscal year 11-12 budget year with a projected budget allocation of $38 million. That's the net cost to the general fund. That's the cost that each of our customers, the sum total of that represents to the impact on the general fund. Our CEO requested us to look at our, our budgets and reduce them by 3 percent. And so we're happy to report that we, we're going to achieve that this year and we're going to go further to a total reduction of about 7.3 percent for fiscal year 11-12. And that includes several rates that we've reduced. Your board has set through some of those presentations already, so I won't talk about them again, but we're proud of that accomplishment. But we're not resting on our laurels. Next fiscal year, we started out with our projected ending budget this fiscal year of 35 million. There are some economic stressors to that budget. We've got pension increases, some existing unanticipated maintenance expense, and an increase in some of our third-party contracts of about $650,000. So our effective beginning point for a budget is at 35.9 million dollars roughly. Well, we've got plans to reduce that. And so we're projecting a budget of 33.9, almost 34 million dollars next year, which is an additional 5.39 percent over what our effective beginning point would be. Some of the key, some of the key containment drivers for reducing those costs, Mr. Grossbold is up here. We've partnered with, with GSA. We had some very large Xerox printing, printers in our data center. Well, in partnering with GSA, we've been able to leverage their graphic shop. They're going to take on that responsibility, lower that cost to the county and reduce some of our costs by $264,000. We're also reducing some of our service contracts through contract negotiations. So we project an additional savings of $718,000 in that area. The decreased depreciation expense, I'd like to take credit for that, but that's really just a fiscal opportunity. We've seen some capital projects and some of the depreciation.
It's part of the budget, so you've got to take credit for it.
That's right.
So what are you doing? You're just, you're just lengthening the depreciation schedule?
Actually, what's happened is some of the capital investments that we've made and then depreciated, those, those depreciation schedules are expiring. They're fully depreciated. So we get the benefit of, of that in our, in our budget.
Great man.
That helps.
Yeah, exactly. So we planned that five years ago, that these would expire during a recession and, and the upside of that is that next year we have some significant capital projects planned. So we don't see an increase in depreciation next year, but the following year in 13-14, that cost will likely go up a little bit.
With the new, with the new products and?
With new capital projects. That's correct. We've also seen a decrease in some of our projects' time materials costs because the simulcast project has come to an end. Also, some of our larger voice-over IP build-outs have completed, so some of those costs are coming down as well. And through some miscellaneous cost containment initiatives, an additional $62,000. So our total reductions planned in fiscal year 12-13 are approaching $2 million. Wanted to highlight some of our rates and the changes there. The, the indicator to the left just indicates whether the rate is neutral or, or going down. As you can see, most of our key rates are all going down next year. So that reflects in a direct savings to agencies and departments that utilize our services.
I don't understand your, your arrow there, voice network rate device. It says neutral, but it's going.
Well, we, we reduced that rate this fiscal year in 11-12 to 2675, and it's staying flat next year.
Okay, got it.
Highlighting some of our, our platform rates, because we have two kinds of rates, some of them that are quantity-driven, like network access phones, things like that. And then other rates that are platform-driven for key applications that we support, the financial system, the property tax application, et cetera. So I wanted to highlight some of those rates. For the most part, those are coming down. In the vicarious area, we've had a slight increase there, resulting from some of our software maintenance contracts with vendors and then also in the pension area because of the labor associated with that. Every year, we like to present to your board at this time, a competitive analysis of how our rates compare with, with other counties. Well, this year, in addition, we wanted to present to you how our rates compare with, with private industry. So regarding the public sector comparison, we surveyed rates at six other counties. Among them are Sacramento, Contra Costa, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Orange County Riverside, and San Diego County. And when you look at their rates, we're competitive. We, in the phone area, we come in at 2675, public sector average is $28. In network access, we're, we're lower than public sector. We're competitive in the private sector area. And I'll go into a little bit more in the private sector. I'd like to just run through the, the public sector first. The project manager, systems analyst and programmer analyst rates, we're all, all of our rates are lower than our counterparts at those, on average, at those six to seven counties. In the desktop support area, we're also lower than our counterparts in comparison to the private sector. We're a little higher, so that's an area that we're going to look at. Regarding the private sector, the private sector comparison was based on actual quotes or actual invoices from private sector vendors. In the phone area, this was actually, is a comparison to phone providers like Verizon, AT&amp;T, et cetera. In the network access area, the information that we gathered there was from a Gartner research study that they did across all industries for network access and the, the cost for network access per business. In the other areas, project manager, systems analyst, and the labor areas, we contacted a number of the vendors that we currently use here at the county and surveyed their rates for those positions. So it's good news to tell that we're, we're competitive, both against our counterpart counties and also against the private sector. And I think that's also supports why Ventura County is weathering the fiscal storm fairly well, because.
Quick question. I mean, these are, this is great, great stuff. But why are we, if I'm reading that right, on the desktop, why are we 30 percent higher?
Than private?
Yeah.
Well, there's other factors to take into consideration there in that rate. For example, what types of locations, how many different disparate locations that, that labor is spread across? Is the desktop support all in one location? Do you have a common desktop image? So in other words, here at the county, we have 27 different agencies. They all have different configurations. When you can standardize some of those things, you can really drive those rates down. Perhaps some of the costs of licensing of software, so if you can standardize a desktop and you can leverage some of the costs of software and support, some of those things can be reduced. That's an area that we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, I should talk about that because I met with a guy, not on very recent, except I was at a Super Bowl party. And he was there and he manages everything for Warner Communications and all this stuff, you know, and, and all this. And they have 18 or something thousand desktops. And it was interesting how he talked about that, that support. And I was asking him averages and all this stuff, but there is some of that. And he said, in a county, you probably can bring down some of your averages, but you are going to have some. Sheriff has a different requirement, you know, DA's, and it's a little bit more difficult. So you have some of that. It's a little bit more difficult that you, you do have than some of the same, somebody having 4,000 people that use exactly the same thing. And so, but I, I'm sure, like you said, you probably take a look at it and find ways to try to get some training, do it, work it out, so.
Absolutely. My goal is to come back to your board next year at this time with a, a lower rate in that area, so.
He goes, I'm no fun at a party. Trying to save a buck here, what can I say? I don't blame him.
You're talking computer.
David, he always tells me I'm off the listening.
That's the last Super Bowl party you're going to get invited to. That's okay, March Madness is coming up, so.
Back to the budget.
So in, getting ready to wrap up here, I wanted to identify some of our cost-saving initiatives in the years ahead. And so this is over and above the, the initiatives that I've already presented for 12-13. The cloud computing area, you've heard a lot about that, I'm sure. We see some opportunity there to lower some of our hardware costs and our data center housing costs. We're taking a visit, a site visit actually to a data center in March to look at some energy savings opportunities and some best practices in that area. We've already raised the temperature in our data center. It maybe isn't commonly known, but the equipment they're making now can withstand higher temperatures. So we've been slowly ratcheting up our temperature in the data center, lowering our cooling costs and our energy costs, which is also a fairly green initiative, and we've, we've seen some success in that area. So we're able to save some money in that area. In talking with GSA, we're doing some air handling outside, using outside air to cool the data center versus having to condition all of the air. So that's another opportunity. We've talked about the network convergence area. We're going to continue our efforts in that area and in building out some of our wireless access. Mobility, that's the trend of enabling our, our field-based workers with mobile access to data and, and county applications so that they don't spend time traveling back and forth to the office. They can provide services in the field and really empowering them. We've seen some successes in HSA and some preliminary pilots there. We're working with probation on another pilot in that area right now. So we're excited about the potential that, that that offers. Email and calendaring replacement, there are great opportunities here in the hosting of email and some opportunities for us to drive down our costs in that area. So we are going to be engaging in a project to replace that next fiscal year. And then increased adoption of ECM. We've already seen success in this area. We want to continue to build on that. And then, as I mentioned, some of our optimizing our data center housing, lowering our costs of supporting equipment in the environments. We have some meetings actually planned with HCA to talk about some of their data center initiatives as part of the projects going on there as well. So I'm excited about the opportunities in that area. So in closing, just want to leave you with the, the net impact. Fiscal year 11-12, our original budget was 38 million. Our proposed 12-13 budget was almost 34 million, representing a total two-year reduction of $4 million, over about a 10.6 percent reduction.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just have a comment. I appreciate you willing to go through it and, and Mr. Grossbold in his part. But you know what, it just shows, as we've always heard out there, that, you know, that the public sector doesn't care, doesn't want to do it. And you know, and as you can tell by some of your other counterparts in the public sector, their rates are way real high. And why are they? Because a lot of them don't care. But I just got to comment, commend you for doing the work. Commend the CEO's office who's really taken a hard look at this, saying, we can provide quality service at a better price. Because you're not saying you're cutting any services, are you?
Only where it makes sense to do so.
Exactly. I mean, not for the quality of people. Paul wasn't quitting. The same thing. We're just out there saying, we're going to get a better price. We're going to look at this like it's our own money, and we're going to get a better price for this and do exactly the same thing. And it goes back, the idea is that we know things are tough. We know costs are going up. Paul can't help what gas prices are. You can't, but we're going to still provide the service at a better price. And this is why. And this is what, the taxpayers love to hear this kind of stuff. And I mean, I think I heard one of the presidential candidates said, "The federal government did this. This is worth $500 billion a year." You know, and when you're talking about $4 million, what you're talking about there. This is an opportunity for us to tout the good work that's being done by you people. And Mike, I want to commend your office for keeping the pressure on, and Catherine, and the whole team that's out there pushing all this stuff. This is great stuff. This really is precious, precious dollars that we're looking for. And if you take a look at every little thing, even though it's not your money, it really is, because you're still a taxpayer like everybody else, every one of these people are.
That's right.
So thank you so much.
Thank you for making that point. And I think a couple of things are key to that. One, that these general internal service agencies are ISF, so we have to operate very much like a business. Cost drives everything that we do. Lowering those costs keeps staying competitive. And also, by accomplishing these savings, just like your board was discussing earlier, that puts more money back into these agencies and departments to have additional staffing to deliver the core services that they deliver. We don't want technology or facilities or things like that to hamper the business that they're able to provide, the services.
Michael wants to share a couple of words, but I want to share with you that governmental agencies are not the same as private agencies, but the competitive mode that you have is great, because you are competing and providing that service that our constituencies need and our residents. So I want to commend you for that. But Michael wants to, or if I could, if I could, I really appreciate these savings also, as has been mentioned. And the fact that we're willing to continue this, and I want to make sure that we put this in perspective. I mean, this goes back to, Matt Carroll started pushing with, you know, the whole idea that we're going to keep every year trying to get more efficient and more efficient, has been part of the culture here in Ventura County for a long time. And so it creates the environment that allows a CEO to say, "We're squeezing again, and we're going to, we're looking for 3%." And so for everybody involved in that, because I know when we first started, and I'm drawing a blank on it, the Kaizens and all of that, what's the name of the program?
Lean Six Sigma.
Yeah, Lean Six Sigma. I know when we started that, some eyeballs rolled. Here we go, another, you know, another program, right? You know, and department heads went, "Huh, we've got to go through this and stuff." But part of starting that was to establish that as the culture, and it was emphasized that we at the board had to really say, "We want this," and we had to keep asking for it year after year after year. So from Lean Six Sigma to everybody who said, "You know, I'm not going to roll my eyes at this. I'm going to actually get involved in this." I just want to say, it makes people proud to be part of Ventura County government, that we have a reputation for this efficiency that's gone on for many years, and it needs to continue to go on for us to keep that credibility high. Classic thing that we've identified as one of our things was public credibility. Well, that public credibility, you know, you can do all of these things. It's the 1% where you blow it, but if you're not doing these 99% of the things, you know, you really don't have that credibility. And I think we're earning it the hard way, day by day and, you know, piece by piece. But I think we're truly earning that credibility, and my compliments to everybody for doing that. Thank you.
Many times, they don't give us credit for the 99%. Only the 1% is going away.
That's right.
Michael had more.
I would just also comment, you know, thank you for that continual effort, and it is wonderful that that is, we strive for it each year, and it's an excellent model for our government. I also just want to note how there is this multiplier effect, particularly with your department, and the ISF cost, too, that once you can reduce costs, it helps all the other departments in the county, and that then allows us to stretch our tax dollars further. So thank you very much for your effort.
And just one last thing, just real quick, because it is about reducing costs as best we can, but it's also about sustaining programs, you know, really looking at the strengths of what you provide and GSA provides, and building on those, and building your service, and increasing your revenue, and that lowers your cost per unit, and it makes the programs more sustainable long-term and with great customer service. And that's the other thing that you're doing that I think is so important, and appreciate Mike's work, as well as Mike Reed and Dean Curtis and your whole team. And in addition to Paul Dursey's usual great review of all this process, I also want to recognize Catherine Rodriguez and Jeff Berg. I was going to get him anyway. Those two really have worked very hard with the departments to help facilitate and support their efforts in these areas, so great work all.
Thank you.
You stole my thunder. I was going to plug my team there.
Okay.
I'm now thinking I should have gone first. Workers' compensation, I'm just going to break right into workers' compensation rates. We are expecting an increase in workers' comp rates for next fiscal year in the tune of 7.5%. And that is, and workers' comp is an unusual situation in a lot of regards, because our number of claims are actually down from previous years. We're under 1,000 claims. A couple of years in a row, it's down over prior years, and we still have the same number of employees, but the claims are down, the perclaim cost is up. We see an increase a little bit in medical rates as industry-wide, they see medical rates. We haven't seen that significantly over the last couple of years, but we're seeing an increase in those medical rates now in this current year especially, and in the out year. And the other unique aspect about workers' comp is that, let me just go right to the next slide. The actuarial cost for workers' comp is about $23 million. The actuary does a calculation based on history and based on claims. They do an actuarial study, 22, almost $24 million, $23 million for the actuarial cost. Third-party administrator costs, that's for our outside contract to administer all of our claims, that they do that. It's about $2 million. Total of $25 million. You see the departmental budgeted charges, about $24.6 million, which is less than those two charges. And the reason is, and goes back to, even we go back, this one, it's $24.6 million in recoverable costs for next year. And the reason we have that is because interest earnings from the fund offsets a lot of the other costs, interest earnings in that fund. We have, right now, we have about $120 million of cash in the workers' comp fund. So if we're earning 1%, that's 1.2 million, I'm making it easy on myself, 1.2 million for offset costs. Several years ago, we had over $4 million in interest earnings, at a lower dollar amount, at, let's say, about probably $80 million of cash. Now we have $120 million. We're still earning less in interest than we were several years ago. So it has a significant impact relative to the rates also. So we have, since we aren't recovering those interest costs, that we have to push those interest costs, interest earnings, loss of interest earnings onto the departments.
That's why it's going up.
That's one, a significant reason in that regard into that increase, because the number, like I said, the number of claims are still down. We are doing a lot of efforts with the departments relative to controlling costs. It's clearly controlling costs to begin with is the best way. And these claims are only one part of what we see out there relative to workers' compensation. We see lost time. We see, we have to backfill a lot of the public safety people. We have to backfill them with additional overtime, those types of things. And eventually, workers, the retirement, if they retire on disability retirement, it increases our retirement rate. So there are a lot of other aspects to controlling these costs, and I think overall, the departments, these numbers have been relatively flat, you know, overall from an actuarial standpoint, but we're losing some money on the investment side. So it's increased our costs a little bit.
When you talk about less claims, is the severity of the claim up higher, too?
The severity isn't, the claim itself, yes. The severity will be a little bit higher, because the cost we see in perclaim costs a little bit higher.
Some things are happening out there are different. Was there any trends that we're looking at?
We are looking at it. I don't have any specifics. We can get you that information.
Yeah, I'm sure you're looking at it, and controlling some of this stuff.
Yeah, and it really comes back onto the departments, because the way we bill out, it's about 30% just based on, you know, number of employees you have, and then the other 70% is really based on actual claims experience for the departments.
You know, I mean, some of the things that we've seen that if we should have dropped in some of these claims, when tasers went in for the sheriffs, a lot of those kind of things, a lot of those claims aren't going to be there as much. And I think maybe we've already come down on some of that.
That's correct. And we saw those reductions initially, and they're still there. The savings are still out there. It's just that they're not as, they don't have a significant impact, because they haven't carried forward for a couple of years.
Correct.
A little bit better news story is our general liability insurance, and those numbers are remaining flat again for this year. About $12.2 million in recoverable costs, and $12.274 that we're charging this year, same number from last year. And last year was actually a reduction from the prior year. So general liability insurance is a pretty good story from our standpoint. The reserves have been stable over the last four years, slight reduction in the last couple of years on the premium rates. We actually had an increase in lawsuits filed last year. We have, county council has taken on a bigger role relative to taking on some of those claims, so that's actually saved us some money also, relative to outside counsel versus internal counsel. And we do have a subrogation program that goes out and actively tries to get back money from the insured payees that brought in about $80,000 last year, which is, again, worth going after as a part-time, a little part-time, part-time part of an employee's job. So the good news is the rates are stable in the general liability insurance area. Again, the same information, actuarial self, this is the actuarial cost based on the actuary, about $8.3 million. Insurance policy costs, we actually do go out and buy insurance beyond $500,000. We self-retain insurance up to 500, and beyond that, we purchase insurance. It's about $4.5 million. So even the departmental budget charges in this department are a little bit less than we have in actual, those two area costs. So in that regard, we are maintaining the costs at a level, and some of this is because of, we do have some retained earnings in this particular ISF that we can apply to make sure that we stabilize those for a number, our plan is to stabilize these over a number of years. Bottom line is, all of these insurance, our ISF, our insurance ISFs are 100%, you know, overall 100% funded, and have about a $9 million excess net asset. So, and we're talking about $150 million between these.
Is that what you, you said you had about 120 in your workers' comp, and you have how much in this?
About 30 million in this one.
About 30 million, 150. It's interesting you talk like that, because a lot of people say, "What do you have in reserves?" We have our regular reserves. And then you've got another $150 million over here, where a lot of other counties have sucked all that money up.
A lot of other counties are not even reserved at all. They're pay-go, so we're 100% funded.
And that's how they're funding their, balancing their budgets, is sucking all these funds up.
That's correct.
So this is just a separate liability.
Yeah, so you look at what we have in our regular reserve, the L's reserves together, quarter billion dollars' worth of money or more. That's correct. And actually, the insurance ISFs are a really nice backstop for cash flow in needed time during the year.
And I think this also, when you go back to New York and you tell people, "I want to borrow money," we already have all the cash we need to ever pay back anything we can borrow.
Paul, that helps us in our ratings, right?
Absolutely, and we do tell, we absolutely tell the people in New York, you know, worst-case scenario, which we don't, would never expect, but we do have these cash reserves available to borrow. That's really the extent of my presentation, and so if there's any question, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions, any additional questions?
I just want to just thank you for you guys working to make sure that it is stable, because this is something that we've seen a lot, like I said, a lot of places don't have the stability, and to help offset those rates, you know, even though there's no interest, you get a little bit of interest, you know, to help offset some of those rates, and that's great, and the hard work they're doing on workers' comp, because workers' comp is a controllable issue if you take a hard look at it and work through it. Otherwise, we could be spending twice as much.
Right, and we're constantly working with departments.
And for the public's sake, too, you know, when we went back to New York and met with Standard and Poor's and those folks, this kind of information was really worth our time and gave us those low interest rates, saved us a lot of money.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree with that, because of the fact that not only are we 100% funded in those regards, we're 100% funded at a fairly conservative actuarial rate, because we have an 80% confidence level in the workers' comp area, and so we're, that's a pretty high level of confidence relative to what the actuarial dollars.
And in fact, some of the things that they mentioned was, they wish the state of California would budget the way we do.
I was just going to echo that. In terms of the rates, it'd be very tempting to lower them or even keep them flat, but in order to keep those funds fully funded.
That's right.
Really, a lot of foresight goes into setting the rates to where they are, increasing the amounts to keep those funds stable like they are, so good work.
Thank you, Paul. Let me ask Leroy, this is tied to 34, 34 is tied to 49. Do we vote on 34 and then go to 49, or?
34 is really just the presentation, so 49 is the budget development, and there's three recommendations there, which I think Paul will go through.
So we receive and file on 34?
Receive and file would be great.
Right.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Paul, go on, 49.
49, Paul. Thank you. Item 49 is our request to your board to accept the Budget Development Manual for next fiscal year, which does have the internal rates and charges and fees and all the retirement contributions, et cetera, that we have going forward to set up for, it's our little cookbook for, this is our cookbook right here, to develop next year's budget. And I really do want to thank K-Man and Judy Dance in our office who have put this together, and it's, they're the Julia Childs of the Budget Development Manual, let's put it that way. That's right. That's correct. We have three recommendations. I just want to highlight a couple items relative to the Budget Development Manual. Secured property taxes, at this point in time, we're estimating about a 1.5% increase in secured property taxes, and that is maybe a little aggressive, you know, talking to the assessor, but we're pretty comfortable at this time. We did have a 2% CPI adjustment on the base roll, which we're actually offsetting by about a half percent for what we think are going to be devaluations in other areas of the project. So right now, it's about 1.5% on the secured. There's no news to anybody, hopefully, on the retirement contribution rates increase, workers' comp increase rates. I think the other item that is somewhat significant relative to the general fund, good news for non-general fund departments, not so good for some general fund departments, is that's the cost allocation plan charges decreased. So that's basically for overhead charges to the non-general fund departments. For example, county councils' costs are going down by, I think, about, I want to say $200,000 in county council. Their revenue is going down because of prior year adjustments to the cost plan charges that went through the system. Our general purpose revenue is down about $2 million just from this one item, which is good, like I said, from other departments, because those are basically charged, those are overhead charges to other departments going throughout the county. So you see in HCA, VCMC will see a decrease in their charges for these rates. The fire district, you know, all the non-general fund departments, even the ISFs will see a reduction in these, in general fund. But from the general fund standpoint, it's a $2.5 million decrease in overall revenue for the general fund. So we're going to have to work through that aspect relative to next year's budget. As we've noted before, this.
Paul, do that for him again. It's going to be a decrease in the general fund.
Yes.
By $2 million, but it's also going to be a decrease in expenditure by $2 million.
On, yes, on the non-general fund department, that's correct.
Enterprise fund.
For example.
So why does that cause a general fund?
Well, general fund, for example, we bill the fire district $100,000 for overhead services, for the order controller's office, for our office, for a piece of your office, those types of things, and they get billed $100,000. Well, that rate went down by $2.5 million next year, and so now, the fire district is saving that $100,000, but we're not receiving that revenue.
But that's throughout the enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds, non-general fund, all of the, all non-general funds.
Internal funds.
Correct. So incorporated in our Budget Development Manual are, you know, again, as we go through the baby steps to get full performance measures and program-level budgeting, we're incorporating that into this year's budget, into this year's Budget Development Manual to get full implementations of performance measures at the departmental suborganization and program-level budgeting. And so, and not only that, we are incorporating the overall countywide strategic plan into that, into that aspect also. So we want to make sure that our performance measures from a departmental organization, program standpoint tie back into the overall strategic plan. So I will just ask your board to approve the recommended actions, which is accept the Budget Development Manual for working purposes. As, as always, it's subject to change and the, accept the internal rates and charges that we have in here that we've discussed. And again, subject to change as we go forward. And then they process the calendar, authorize the calendar as, as we've stated here in the, in the Budget Development Manual and our board letter.
Thank you, Paul. And we got a first and a second on that?
Yeah. And I didn't see it, but you did state it, that we are going to be folding in the strategic plan into this.
Yes, yes, we are.
Yes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see what.
You've had a successful recipe. We'll see if this one will.
In the cookbook. One more. Okay, that's approved unanimously. And item 35. Is that, let's see, who's that? Paul? Item 35 is tied to 51.
That's correct. We're, we're going to combine 35 and 51. I think we're receiving file oral presentation from our board mid-year, mid-year, we'll start with that one first. If we could. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. The second quarter for this fiscal year, this is our update. As we went to your board, you know, at the end of the first quarter, we gave you a fairly detailed update. This update is going to be relatively short. Thank goodness, nothing that exciting has happened over the last three or four months. So this is somewhat a repeat of where we are at the first quarter. I think we do have some additional information as we go forward through the year. I think the bottom line is that what we're looking at for this, this particular fiscal year is that we're looking again at a, at a break-even scenario. I think what we did last year at this time, we expected about a break-even, we ended about $7 million above. And some of those $7 million items, we've actually adjusted into this current year's budget. So we would not expect to see those $7 million, those same things repeat again. So I think that, for example, last year, we were projecting at this time to spend full, full budget on our buy downs. And we were about a million, $1.4 million less we actually used in buy-down appropriations last year. So we reduced that this year and spread those appropriations elsewhere. Well, we're, so we've, we've incorporated that $1.4 million savings into this year's budget already. So we would not expect to see that at the end of this year. I think if anything, we would see, right now, we have about $1.3 million left in our contingency, assuming that your board adopts item number 51. But what we'll do is if all, if we don't spend that contingency, we would generally expect about a $1.3 million ending fund balance. As we go through the year, we have a lot of pluses and minuses. We have stresses, stressors positive, stressors negative. I think some of the items that we are looking at from a, from an overall standpoint are the general purpose revenues about a little bit down for this year than what we projected by a million dollars. Actually, what we're projecting for this year end is, I think, equivalent to like 2008 budget year. So during those five years, our four-year period, we've got about $313 million in general purpose revenues. So it's, it went up and then it came back down again. So we're about $313 million, which is the same as we had in.
And so you got to tell us later what, what accounts for the $1 million drop in general purpose revenue?
Not specifically, yes, we can get into that. It's primarily interest earnings. I think we, our interest earnings assumption was way, way too high. The, as we go through this long, this is a rehash, not a rehash, but a reminder, long-term sustainability of budgets, long-term planning, national and local economies, impact on our, on our budgets, obviously. Seen a lot of activity lately. The economy, the economists are seeing a little bit brighter future, maybe not this year, but certainly the subsequent years. But our problem is that we tend to, tend to trail those, tend to trend, tend to trail the, the overall economy by, by at least a year. So we wouldn't see any significant increases in ours for, in the out years. Retirement contributions, state issues are always the, the huge, huge amount, huge gorilla that could be in the room. This is a recap of where, what our budget, adopted budget is $872 million in revenue. And we had a net cost of $200,000 and that was to fund a, the homeless, the mental health homeless program. So the adjusted budget's $884 million. And most of those, it's $11.7 million. And a lot of that difference is incumbents rollovers. If you see the incumbents rollovers, is $11, $1 million. An incumbents rollover is our prior year's, basically purchase orders that, that reserve the fund balance at the end of the year and then they roll in and automatically give a department appropriations at the beginning of the next year. So the difference between the adjusted budget, adopted budget here is 872 and the 896 is the difference really is the 11.7 million as far as the difference in the net cost. The net cost is 11.7 million versus our adopted at 200,000. And that 11.7 is comprised of these three items. We made a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund out of fund balance, if you, if you recall, the $11 million of incumbents rollovers and the $200,000, which is this $200,000. That gives us the $11.76 million net cost that we're expecting for this fiscal year. And the, our year-end projection at this time are these numbers here. This is the adjusted budget. You see both numbers, both the revenue is well under the adjusted budget and it's almost about, it's about a half a million dollar overall. It's about a half a million dollars less than what we adopted. But, and our year-end projection for appropriations slash expenditures is about 883 million. So it's the same number as our adjusted budget. So therefore, we say we have a balanced budget relative to our ending fund balance. We expect our ending fund balance to be about break-even at this point in time. Current stressors, we have assessor's revenue is about a million dollars under what we, what we anticipated initially. We have, and that's, that's for supplemental, basically supplemental property tax charges. And those supplemental property tax charges are way down and therefore their revenue is way down. So, so it's a, it's a situation where, where they're going to have to, we're going to have to work closely with the assessor on how to mitigate.
And this is after you already made some additional adjustments at the end before too, right? So the, we thought we were going to be, we made some adjustments at budget, now it's?
That's correct. It's even lower.
It's still struggling to come down.
That's right, it is. It's, and the secured, there's a good news aspect to the, to the supplemental role. And that is that there's like $11 billion, which is over 10% of our, our role, which has been adjusted downward for the Prop 8. So if the economy came back gangbusters, theoretically, we could have a 10% increase in our, in our assessed valuation like that overnight. And, and so that's the good news. The bad news is the economy isn't coming back like that. So we would expect that $11 billion to eventually be made up over, over the next several years, but we would, but the supplemental role is really not, not increasing. Noted at the bottom, the current year contingency balance is about $1.3 million that's, that's left over. We also have elections revenues down by about $400,000. And that is really due to the, to the Prop, to the SB 90 claim and the, the state has stopped paying for mail-in elections. So that's going to be, that's going to really have to be a policy issue relative to, you know, are we going to stop doing mail-in voting? That's a difficult one. But anyway, it's $400,000 worth, worth of revenue coming in that's, that's gone. So this is kind of, it's for this year and it's also for next year also. So I mean, these are, these are items that, that are impacting this current fiscal year, but they also have an impact on next year. Our trial court funding revenue is down by 3/4 of the million, or the revenue in the trial court funding area is down by 3/4. Trial court funding is our support of the, of the trial court and it's a minimum level of funding that we have to have and it's based on how much revenues are collected and how much expenses they have. So we have, we have a payment and the revenues are down a little bit this year. We don't know if they're going to go back up, but if they, if they don't, it's about 3/4 of a million dollars. And then the direct aid is about a million dollars more than what we initially anticipated in this fiscal year. So there's pluses and minuses. I just point out mostly the minuses. The pluses are the departments are still out there not hiring robustly. They're hiring as needed and they're really scrimping. So we would see salary savings and other savings relative to those departmental expenses that will offset some of these revenue, some of these revenue decreases. This is our world-famous designation for subsequent year financing, I think based on new accounting information, new GASB pronouncements. We probably have to change this to unreserve fund balance or something like that. I forget the title. I'll look it up and before I come next time and give you a new chart. But we're still, the, the bottom line is we're about 10%, which is relatively good overall. We haven't been dipping into it. And we are, over the last 10 years or so, we've been working our way toward that 15% goal. And I think that's very commendable in this, in this environment. I think it's not, I don't think that we're trying to specifically save, you see we had a little dip prior year, we're not specifically trying to save this, you know, not, not do things so we can put money into this account. But I think it just ends up that departments are very, very conservative as far as expenditures and sometimes we do get some, some one-time money coming back in. That helps out. Prop 172 revenue, here's, I can claim almost victory, not yet, but so far this year, we're looking at, we're going to make budget.
Are you?
We're going to make it. 54 million. 54 million, that's right. Yes. The blue line on the right, the far-right blue line is the current year. And so we're, the white-blue line is the budget, you know, our, our analysis, our, our allocation of the budget for the year. And we're a little above budget. So we're right at, if we had, if everything went perfect for the rest of the year, we'd be about 50, 54.5 million roughly. So, so that's good. So that gives us a little bit. And we did incorporate our actual proportional share on a statewide basis went down a little bit. That cost us about a half a million dollars because our proportional share, I don't know if you recall it, but Prop 172 is based on prior year's actual collections in, in your county. And then they update it every, every year. So that's, once the state gets their, they use the 2000, I think it's 2010 actual numbers now, not 2011, but 2010 actual numbers. So it's updates based on what our, what our history was from 2010. So our number is, it went down a little bit, about 2 point, I think it's about 2.14% of the statewide total is our share. Last year was 2.16% of the statewide share. That point, whatever, point, whatever the percentage is, costs us about a half a million dollars.
And specifically, the Prop 172 is the public safety funds.
That's correct. That is correct.
Last year's.
So that's good news. And we are actually, from what we've seen from the state so far, they're projecting about a 7% increase on sales tax for next year. So we're not, we're not quite that aggressive at this point in time.
No, if gas stays up, I think last time the gas went up, it's, state made about $2 billion in sales tax on this.
Could be.
Could be, yeah.
At 5 bucks a gallon. But from our standpoint, we're not expecting that. We're, we're closer to the, a little over 4% is, is what our projection at this point in time for next year. But I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself as, as far as next year. These are some of the budget-related issues. Our tobacco settlement revenue is decreasing and has decreased for a number of years. And we'll be back to your board relative to that tobacco settlement issues, the trial court funding, I mentioned on that. In-home support services requirements are increasing. Mail-in voting, I mentioned the mail-in voting reimbursement has been suspended. Public safety realignment, that's kind of a wild card. We're, that's going to take quite a bit of the rest of this year to analyze. It's a very complicated cash flow and accounting issue that we're going to have to track closely. We're working with the public safety departments and the order controller to try to determine how all those monies are distributed and how they come in. Because even you go back to 1990, the 1991 original realignment, we have, part of that is no longer a part, it's integrated with this 2011, 2012 realignment with the replacement of Cowworks with the mental health portion of those. So it's, the state never does anything very straightforward, let's put it that way, from a, from an accounting and, and allocation standpoint. So public safety realignment is, is an issue that we're going to have to track very closely. VCMC cash flow is an issue. I know with the, with the new COES plan out there, the Gold Coast Healthcare Plan, they've had issues trying to getting VCMC their cash. And of course, the state is having cash flow issues also, so they're holding back on cash. So VCMC cash flow is, is an issue. From a financial standpoint, VCMC's doing okay. But from a cash flow standpoint, they're significantly behind what they, what they would have expected at this point in time.
Just receiving the money then.
Right. Yeah, exactly. And making sure we do receive the money.
And this is part of the state's deal, as things get tight, we just slow everybody up?
Yeah, they actually had a plan and, and we haven't seen it significantly in the general fund because they're, they have a plan also within, within the state of how they're going to be postponing their payments for certain, for certain programs, including Human Services Agency and all the, all the Health and Human Services programs. And general purpose revenues, I'm sorry, Mike.
Just going to say real quick on, on the cash flow. At least the state is consistent, number one. They're being slow paid, so it allows us to plan for that. And our projection there is to have that cash flow loan paid off by the end of this fiscal year. So it's on track to do that.
And I, like I said earlier, the general purpose revenues remain relatively flat. In 2007, 2008, we had an actual general purpose revenue in the number of $313 million. And that's really what we're projecting for this year end, $313 million for general purpose revenue. So it went up a little bit and then it's come back down. Summary, I think, I am not the first to tell you, the management team is managing the budget and continuing cost-reduction efforts. I think you saw some of those with our internal service funds and they aren't, the internal service funds aren't exclusive in their, in their reducing costs. So the management team, we see under-expending and over, over-producing. So a general fund added to reserves in the current fiscal year. State budget is a concern, that's a pretty, that's an understatement, let's put it that way.
And a follow, what do you mean by that? General, general fund added to the reserve designation?
For this fiscal year, the $7 million we referred to.
Of course.
Yeah, just the current fiscal year. Next, I guess it should be, we added to it the end of last year, but kind of the transactions take place in this year. So we added to it last year. So we're growing a little bit. We would expect this current year to be pretty flat. But over, in general, overall, we are adding to it. So the state budget concern and then the realignment 2011, 12 is, is a moving target that we just have to work closely with our various departments to try to, try to pin down. That's my presentation this morning.
Okay. Any questions?
Go ahead, Peter.
Supervisor.
Have you just, like you said, we talked about this morning, you know, the 6.5 billion, if Facebook goes, you know, makes all the work, anyway, we're still going to be short all this money. What, is anything, are you hearing anything more? What's, what's going to come? I mean, all the things that are supposed to happen and the delay and, I mean, this is going to happen, there's just no money. We know that. So are we, do we have anything specific yet?
We don't, no, we do not have anything specific. We obviously have the governor's budget that he presented, but there's a lot that, you know, when you get to the, the governor, Department of Finance and the Legislative Analyst Office, there's a differential on the, on the revenue side that's significant between those two, those two offices. The governor does tend to be a little more rosy in their revenue projections and that does help them relative to having a cut. But we don't have any, we have not had anything more specific in that regard.
Of what the cuts will be. I mean, it's not going to come in, there're going to be cuts. Most of what you're hearing is this delay in payment kind of stuff.
Yeah, right now, it's delay in payments and that's for the current fiscal year. And, and I think that in, the cuts will come in the human, Health and Human Services area as they always do, because that's the major, you know, that and schools are the, are the two major expenses for the state. And then the corrections and they're always going to hit, they'll always hit the corrections also. So yes, and, and part of the corrections issue, they push down to the county through the realignment.
That's going to be pushed, we're going to, we are going to see that come to us, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Well, what, what can you tell us about, you know, the November ballot measure and, I mean, what, what are we projecting right now? Do we think that, if that passes, it changes things a lot for us or that's going to mostly just affect the schools? How are we going to handle that in our budget building?
I think, yeah, I think right now, what, what, what we will do is we will go with what the state budget says relative to our programs that we run for the state. So if they're assuming that that'll pass, then we'll, at this point in time, we'll assume that it'll pass relative to anything, any impact relative to us. A lot of those, a lot of the November is really, would theoretically impact the schools. So I think they're assuming the $5 billion or whatever that dollars was, is going to schools. And if it doesn't pass, then there will be cuts relative to schools, whether it all be, all those dollars would be to schools, probably not. So we would probably see additional cuts at that point in time. But going forward, our plan is to go with what.
But it's not a measure that has by itself a significant impact on health and human services or county funding. It's a measure that's going to focus almost exclusively on school funding.
Generally, yes, generally on schools. It would have a side impact, clearly.
Well, yeah, I think it would have a side impact, because if the schools are underfunded, now they've got to look other places for funds, and they're going to pull funds from other departments that affect the county. So if it's helping the schools, it's helping our budget as well, I would say.
One more, just a quick comment, and just to echo a bit of what Paul said, there's the conservative revenue projections that your board adopted at the beginning of the year, I think you can see have made a big difference. And I'm sure it was, it's hard to do that, but by doing that, that fiscal discipline has really kept us on good track, as it seems to me that's about right where we are with the revenue projections for this year at midway, so.
A balanced budget.
That's right, that's right. And then also with the labor costs in terms of the county workforce, helping with the employees picking up most or all, in some cases, of their portion of the retiree contribution, that's helping a lot too, as well as with our costs. So it's a team effort out there.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are you done?
Yeah, unless there's more questions.
Okay, that's approved, now we go to 51.
51 is our mid-year budget cleanup board letter. There's 20, I think 29 pages of fund here for your board. A lot of it is, a lot of it frankly is nickel and dime perfunctory things, moving a couple positions here and there, moving additional appropriations, some of them that are just required because of the departments are small, or required because we need to extend positions and move some positions from one department to another. There are two, I think, I need to point out one minor adjustment also on page 28 to 29, there's an incorrect fund number, it says 3280, it should be 1730. So that's a public works fund. So if we could make that correction, that'd be great. But most of these are, like I said, relatively routine transactions, but there are two items that are hitting our contingency, an amount of about $800,000 that we are requesting your board to appropriate those contingency dollars. The first one is for the mental health, Hillmont House paying back the HUD funds for the Hillmont House. I think we've been to your board a number of times, including about a year ago, relative to this item, we knew that it was going to be an issue. We had initially thought it was going to be about $750,000 overall, but we were also expecting the federal government, we were following their lead, expecting them to allow us to prorate the use, the years of use of that facility over the HUD housing allocation. So, but they reevaluated, let's say, and told us otherwise, so we owe about $1.2 million. About half of that is going to be, we have to pay out of contingency because a mental health program does not have enough within their budget to pay for it. So we're going to, about half, about $609,000 out of contingency to pay for that. The good news is that that $1.2 million will go back into the HUD program. So I think that's a good thing. It doesn't necessarily go back to the federal government, but I think it gets reinvested locally. So the other item is $200,000 to make sure we completely clean up, and that is recommendation 19, and that is to clean up completely the, what we call the old Pyru burn dump. So we've been working closely with Public Works and the Watershed Protection District to make sure that that is safely and environmentally contained. And so we expect about $200,000 more dollars to complete that project. So we're requesting that $200,000 out of contingency. Other than that, I said, if there's any question, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Move approval? Thank you, Paul, and thank you for a comprehensive report. It's approved, and our next item is item 50. What, that CEO's office? Kelly?
I was going to say, good morning, but it's now afternoon.
It's one minute over.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza. I said morning, anyway. Members of the board, Mr. Powers, Kelly Schert, County Executive Office, Human Resources. I'm handing out a correction, it was a typographical error in Exhibit A, Exhibit, or page one of three. It's the number three area, has a period where it shouldn't be, and a word that's missing out of that sentence. So this is correcting that for the contract. Today before you is the board letter to award temporary employment services to Core Staff Services and ratified contract extensions with Core Staff. In July of last year, GSA put out an RFP for temporary staffing services. By the end of August, we had received nine proposals from vendors, and an evaluation committee was created that, from four different agencies that evaluated the proposals. And based on those evaluations, we would like to grant the award to Core Staff Services. Recommendations one and two seek approval to award the new contract to a three-year term with an annual contract limit of $2 million, and up to two additional one-year periods provided the total increase is not more than 10% per option year. Recommendation number three is a request to ratify and approve the attached extensions, contract extensions with Core Staff through February 28th of this year. Representatives from GSA are also here to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions? What's the pleasure of the board? Okay, we've got a first and a second. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to recognize Kelly Schert for her work, as well as Rosa Sinoceros in protesting. Great job.
Our next item is item 53. PW, item 53. There we go.
Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, the item before you is a extension of an existing lease for the behavioral health headquarters building in 1911 Williams Drive. We are pleased to present this item. I'd like to thank my staff members, John Wheel, Pam Landryell, for working on this, and behavioral health staff, particularly Carolyn Briggs. We were approached by the landlord for an extension of our existing lease. What we've negotiated is a reduction in what we're currently obligated to pay over the next three years, an amount exceeding just over $966,000. We reduced the rate, we got 10 months of half rent. It will extend the term, but we believe at the end of the term, the rate will still be competitive.
And we've got a reduction of 12 and a half cents per square foot, or 12 cents, I think.
Correct. You don't have to stay for two years.
It's great work, over the first three years, almost a million-dollar savings in an existing lease.
Good job.
I agree, I think it's an opportunity for us, if we're going to look at being in some of these buildings long-term, to come back and renew some early rents, I noticed that, I know a lot of people right now are doing that in the private sector, saying, if you want my business, give me some stuff and get some savings going. It's an opportunity, so I appreciate you trying to find in this stuff.
And the timing is perfect. Thank you so much. One more. Let's see. And that's passed. Item 54.
Good afternoon, Chair Zaragoza, board members, Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Gerhard Hubner, Deputy Director with the Watershed Protection District. I'm here before you today for the district, requesting approval for two applications to the California Department of Water Resources for Prop 84 Planning Grant Program for a total of $514,000 in funding. If you recall, in November 2006, California voters approved Prop 84. In September of 2010, the County of Ventura, on behalf of the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County, requested and subsequently received $486,000 in Prop 84 Round 1 Planning Grant funding. Today, two projects are being recommended for application to DWR for Prop 84 Round 2. They include the development of a salt and nutrient management plan for the lower Santa Clara River groundwater basins, that would be the Mound, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Pyru basins. The project requests funding in the amount of $397,000. The project total is approximately $500,000 for development of the plan to address salt nutrient issues, as well as meet the requirements of the State Water Resource Control Board for water recycling, and also to promote water recycling in those areas. Our project partners include the cities of Ventura, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and the community of Pyru, represented by Waterworks District. The other application requests $117,000 in grant funding, $200,000 approximately in project costs, to identify the most cost-effective infrastructure needed to develop the shallow groundwater resource in the Los Poses basins. The project will identify a network of shallow aquifer groundwater monitoring wells, as well as water delivery, needed for the ongoing basin management within those basins, and looking at future projects that would result from the study. The projects for that study will include the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, as well as Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. It's worth noting that both projects received support as top-ranked projects at the Cuyahoga Creek and Santa Clara River Watershed Committees. And at the Watershed Coalition meeting in December, the two projects were selected as the top candidates for the funding. This year, the district took the leadership role in doing the grant application and being before you today because of our unique ability to do both joint applications, as well as a regional provider of services. So in summary, we're recommending that your board today authorize the director of the Ventura County Watershed Protection District submit this Prop 84 Round 2 Planning Grant to DWR, as stated in the board letter before you today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? We've got a motion and a second.
Just a comment, one, thank you. A lot of work goes into this, and Sue Hughes, and Norma, everyone, thank you. And the coalition work is just, I think, been such an excellent process, to be able to have projects stand up under the scrutiny and the competition and the willingness to have that regional cooperation for the best projects to move forward. And as always, there's more need than there are resources, but they came out, this is a significant project for us, for us, the Watershed Protection District, to be able to move ahead with, so excellent work.
Thank you. Supervisor?
Yep, I wanted to say, you know, some time ago, when we changed from Flood Protection District to Watershed Protection District, a lot of people thought we were pan-lip service to the issue of Watershed Protection District, that we're just a fancy, you know, feel-good, you know, name change. But I think the facts really, really demonstrate, we have gotten involved in these grants, and we've gotten involved in these watersheds much more significantly than people anticipated. And the one thing I want to emphasize is, we have played that role of helping create the kinds of plans that allow grant dollars to come. People applying on their own wouldn't qualify for these projects. And so wherever we can, I think it's been to the interest of the citizens of Ventura County for us to try to play this role. And I know it's a lot more work. It's more work on staff, it'd be easy to back off of this stuff, but I just, I want to encourage us to keep stepping up. And I'll tell you, the other thing is, it's not very appreciated oftentimes, right? You know, somehow you, you know, you take this role of coordinator, and then all the individuals, you know, they, you know, but that's just the heat that we need to be willing to take for good government. And then we have to explain ourselves to those people, look at it. If we hadn't stepped up and done this, you would have no funding. So yes, there's some frustrations with all grant funding, and deadlines, and timelines, and things that those local agencies have to do. So you're not going to get too many thanks, so you ought to get one now, all right?
Thank you.
Because you literally won't, from all of the agencies, water districts, cities that benefit from you coordinating, I dare say you haven't gotten too many letters of appreciation recently. Everybody, a lot of citizens really are better off in Ventura County because it's a thanks a lot.
Michael?
I just want to say thank you. Now you have two.
Appreciate it very much.
And that's approved unanimously. Thank you. And we've got item 55, supervisor.
This is a request to do two things. One is to form a new MAC, and the other one is to appoint its members. And this would be the SOMAS MAC, something that the community has been desirous for a while. And I had a lot of people interview for it, so it was nice to see that there was that kind of participation. And any of them would make fine MAC members, Municipal Advisory Council members. But I wanted to get a good cross-section of the community, both geographically, and then also, we have a large farm community around there. So two of the people that I asked that we appoint are both Craig Underwood and Jay David Borcherd, both who are part of the farming community out there, as well as Pat Richards, who was with our planning department at one time, and for probably most of his career. And then Bob Folkerson, who owns the hardware store out there, and Pat Arken, who's been involved in that community for quite some time. And then this would also meet once every other month, and I think it's also a wise move to put an alternate there in case someone can't make it, so we could always have a quorum. And so with that, I would make the motion, if I can, and to go ahead and form the SOMAS MAC, and appoint the members, as I indicated.
The first and the second, as well. That's your fourth MAC now, right?
That's my fourth MAC.
Good job.
I really like the, you know, bottoms-up government. They give us a lot of good input, and we're able to do more for their community.
Okay, that passes four to one. Okay, item 56 correspondence. Move approval. The second. And now, we're going into close session, and do we have any announcements underway?
I do not anticipate any announcements.
Okay, we'll be back after close session about 1:30. Good afternoon. We're going to start our afternoon meeting. We just got out of closed session. We don't have anything to report. So this is item 41. And before we do that, let me share something too, is that if there's anybody who wants to turn in the card to speak, you've got five minutes to do so. And if you don't, then we will not be able to speak. And then also turn off all the cell phones. And then I have a young man that wanted to speak earlier, and I'd like to invite him to speak now, and that's an item 41 that was already approved. But he wanted to share a couple of words on this. Joseph Vella?
Vaca.
Vella?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Vaca from the city of Barbour.
Oh, Vaca. It looked like an L, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no problem. I just want to take a moment of your time to thank your planning staff and thank Mr. Barber on the commitment to work with our city to address the concerns related to lighting. So that's all I have for you this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In fact, Mike, thank you for coming to thank us for working on the lighting range. You know, it seems to me that it shows that this CUP wasn't going to expire for many years into the future, but because we're looking at it now, we have an opportunity to make the area better. So I appreciate that everyone's working towards that. It's an idea that maybe CUPs shouldn't be that long when technology fixes are available to you.
Well, we appreciate those comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, have a good afternoon.
Okay, then we're going to start with item 41. Michael?
Thank you, Chair. Roberta has clarified, 42?
Forty-two.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Zaragoza. I'm going to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Jeff Pratt, who's been leading negotiations for the county. Mr. Pratt?
Good afternoon, Chair Zaragoza, board members. Mr. Powers, for the record, my name is Jeff Pratt. I'm with the Public Works Agency. I'm joined today, as you can see, by many friends, colleagues, acquaintances. Probably too many to name, but I should name at least some of the groups they represent. And I will recognize a couple of staff members who'll be helping me answer questions. First, I'm sure there are a number of people here from Tri-County Building Trades Council who were at the table during the negotiations. There are also a number of people here from the Southern California Regional Council of Carpenters, the Ventura County Contractors Association. All three of the design-build teams, the pre-qualified design-build teams are represented here today. And the two people I'd like to recognize are a person from the Construction Industry Advisory Group, some help we brought in because of the tight timeframe we were up against after the last board meeting on this issue. And that's Bob Norling sitting here, who may help answer some questions. And then Phil Nelson, staff with Engineering Services Department, who was also part of the negotiations. Of course, the purpose of our report back to you today is per your direction during January 24th, the January 24th meeting on PLAs and local labor. I'm going to start with a little background, just to get everybody back up to speed. On the 24th, your board met and directed us with some constraints to come back with the PLA. The constraints were that there were to be no double pay. The agreement would be a single agreement, not multiple agreements. Hasn't been discussed at that meeting. We would abide by a county council's opinion and definition of core workforce and core workforce limitations, which in that case is no limitation of core workforce. We would include all stakeholders, and that was those stakeholders I just mentioned. And we were to report back to you in four weeks. The process we followed was to immediately enter into a contract with some help outside expertise. We chose the Construction Industry Advisory Group because of their large reference library of project labor agreements. They have, Bob Norling in particular has about 25 years' experience working with project labor agreements. It was very short notice. We didn't have time to advertise, interview, and do all the other things we normally do when we go out. And Bob is associated with the Association of General Contractors, and they represent, their membership is about 60% union, 40% non-union. And all three of the design-build teams are members of the Association of General Contractors. Bob also has significant experience in dealing with the Southern California Regional Council of Carpenters. First step in the process after that January 24th meeting was to ask everyone, all the stakeholders around the table, for their favorite examples of PLAs. We needed something to work with. We got several examples back. They varied in length from nine pages to 40 pages. The second step was choosing a baseline PLA to work from. The one we settled on was from the International Building Trades Council template, and it was based on an agreement between all the national building trades. It was simple and it was easily modified. We set up negotiation meetings right away, and unfortunately, in that four weeks, there were only two dates where we could get all the stakeholders together face-to-face. So that meant necessarily we were going to be operating by conference call, one-on-one meetings, individual calls, and all things in between. The first stakeholder meeting, all stakeholder meeting, occurred on February the 6th. The first thing I did was to ask everybody in the room what their desired outcome was as a result of your board's direction on the PLA. Those desired outcomes immediately coalesced around five issues. Everyone wanted to maximize local labor, everyone in the room. Everyone wanted to minimize cost increases. Everyone wanted to maintain labor peace for the duration of the job. Everyone wanted to maintain a competitive bid environment. And everybody wanted quick resolution. The project was already six months behind. County Council attended the first meeting and he opened the meeting. He reaffirmed his legal analysis. The definition of core worker, per his analysis, was someone who had been on the active payroll for 60 of the last 100 working days. And he also reaffirmed that there were no limits to be placed in the PLA on core workforce numbers, subject to certain conditions. So the options that we discussed with everybody that day were to provide additional or alternative legal analysis. We requested it that day as well as subsequent days. Or county council said that if we could all in the room come to some agreement on core workforce terms, and everybody in the room agreed to it, that his opinion could essentially be put aside for a moment. Because everybody would agree, his decision could be put aside. There would be no, there would be little risk involved.
For appealing.
In a challenge, appeal.
That's if everybody agreed.
That's if everybody agreed.
Is that on the core workforce?
And yeah, and that's particularly on the core workforce issue.
That's a main issue, right, decorum?
Oh, it is. And I'm going to get to that in a little more detail as I go through the meetings and calls in my presentation here. The next issue, another issue we discussed during the first meeting was double pay. I'm happy to inform you that we came to some resolution of that. The issue there, as your board knows, was that sometimes benefits provided by non-signatory contractors were also required to be paid to the unions. Both the Tri-County Building Trades, which I'll just call the trades from this point forward, and the Council of Carpenters, which I'll call the carpenters from this point forward, said that they would not require the additional payment. As long as we were a prevailing wage job, and if there were any questions about the benefits, the prevailing wage benefits, they could be resolved either by the Department of Industrial Relations or by the project labor coordinator, a person required in the agreement to make sure that the agreement's terms are lived up to. We walked through the, making sure that there wasn't going to be any sort of benefit equivalence analysis. In other words, we weren't going to be hashing it over who's got the better retirement plan or who's got the better health plan. And that was resolved completely. So on that, we struck that one from the work plan. The next thing, another thing we discussed is that there should be a single agreement. Your board heard during this last meeting from an expert from UCLA that the more agreements, PLAs you have, the more the costs are on the project, which is why I believe you directed us to single agreement. The issue there is really one of settling jurisdictional disputes. And it is an issue between the carpenters and the trades. The carpenters want binding arbitration at the local level. The trades want to follow the national plan. The national plan has appeals that go up through the national organization. In that organization, the carpenters are not represented, so the carpenters don't feel that the outcomes might be fair to them. Several alternative single-agreement language proposals were discussed. We got those from PLAs that had been signed in California by both the carpenters, different set of carpenters in some cases, and the trades. We also brought the national plan language, the building trades, to bear, and added some language to that to see if we could make that work for everyone. We even wrote new compromise language to try and make that, based on the feedback we were getting. We discussed the carpenters not signing at all, which would not have been the best of worlds because 30% of the work is estimated will be carpenters on this job, and you can't guarantee labor peace if 30% of the labor isn't signing the agreement. At the end of all the discussion, everyone agreed to review the options. We went over and get back to us via email so that we could start the phone call campaign working through issues with the individuals. Core workforce issues were discussed. The good news is that everybody agreed on the definition. That is the 60 of the last 100 days. Nobody argued that. Where the argument began was on whether or not there could be limitations and what those limitations might be. As we started the discussions, the Tri-County Building Trades, and I believe the carpenters also, wanted to limit it to five or less core workforce members. The two of the design-build teams agreed with the definition, but they wanted to limit it 50. Let me explain, you didn't hear this in your first meeting, and it came out in these meetings. We didn't know, we didn't realize it as well. But in the first meeting on January 24th, you'd heard that the electrical subcontractor for McCarthy was a non-union contractor, was the one that had the core workforce problems. Well, as it turns out, the carpenters for Hensel Phelps also have the problem. They're non-union and they are employed by Hensel Phelps. So it became a...
And was it, and the gentleman that spoke almost at the end of the meeting and pretty positively, that was Clark?
He was from Clark.
Clark.
So the options that we told them, here's your options. There won't be any limits in there, or you guys in this room all have to agree on what those limits will be. So the discussion at that point began with the discussion of apprenticeship programs. The good news was that everybody agreed generally to the principle of using Ventura County Hall apprentices exclusively on the job. Ratios were discussed at that time, a minimum ratio of 20% apprentice and 30%, up to a maximum of 30%. And that was interwoven with the discussion on core workforce limitations. Design-build teams came down from the 50 that they had wanted to 35. Overall, the carpenters and trades responded positively at that point, but they reserved the right to go back and discuss with their affiliates the terms that they were agreeing to in the room. Other issues we discussed that day included inspection and testing, the exemption of inspection and testing from the PLA, off-site fabrication facilities, drug testing, and a new one that came up at the end of the meeting that we had not known was going to be an issue, were dues and initiation fees. Now, we were at the end of the meeting when this came up, and it was the first time it had been raised. And it was clear that everybody was far apart on this particular issue. What was dispensed with immediately was initiation fee, but dues was put off for discussion until the second meeting because we ran out of time. So at the end of the first meeting, given the tone and the cooperation and the love in that room, we were cautiously optimistic, and we were waiting responses and feedback from those who were taking the positions back and discussing it with others. In between the first meeting and the second meeting, we had several phone calls, conference calls, one-on-one meetings, trying to clarify issues, work to negotiation points, et cetera. One thing we learned from the first meeting is that if we were going to do this in a short order, we needed to have the decision-makers at the second meeting. So we requested that everyone send decision-makers to the second meeting, and that request was agreed to. Unfortunately, between the first and second meeting, we were not able to work out the dues, the jurisdictional dispute issues, or core staff limitations. So those were the three issues we began the second meeting with. County Council attended the second meeting. County Council had not received any additional legal analysis at that time. So we were still in the same place as a county in our position on core staff limitations. We didn't start with core staffing, however. As my recollection is, we started with the dues because we wanted to learn that. The issue there was really about representation and the amount. The trades and the carpenters council argued that even non-signatory core staff workers, signatory to a PLA, were required to be provided representation by the unions. The design-build teams argued the counter. And they said even if that were true, the benefit was not commensurate with the cost. The cost, for example, with electrical workers and dues was about 5% of the gross pay, or about $1.64 an hour for a journeyman, as I recall. And the design-build teams also argued that it was a double payment. And they did that because they believed that their workers would not be able to absorb something that amounted to a $3,400 a year hit, and that they would still have to pay them the regular amount and then give them an additional amount to pay the dues with. And by the way, it's a fine point, but it's probably worth mentioning. It's legal for even the employees to pay dues, the non-core employees to pay dues to the union. It's actually, but the dues are the amount we base on. It would probably be called some sort of fee or something else, just, but I'm going to call it dues for the purposes of this discussion.
Jeff?
Sir?
An employee that's non-union is working for, in a union job, still has to be represented by a union?
On a PLA job, still has, and yes, as an aside, county council reviewed that position. It was the position of the carpenters and the trades that that was a requirement of the National Labor Relations Act. As I understand it, I let county council speak to this, but he talked to attorneys or at the National Labor Relations Board and his opinion and the final analysis, but it was subsequent to the second meeting, was that yes, they are required to provide representation. So...
But the fee, the fee that they would pay, if any, would be to, to actually take care of a grievance or any other...
That's correct.
Okay. Jeff? So you're saying that that fee would be $3,400?
Well, that's for a journeyman paying a buck 64 an hour, working 2,080 hours.
Or a regular full-time person paying.
Right. It varies across the trades and across the levels inside the trades.
Some could be higher, some could be a little lower.
But that's about a buck 60 an hour or so.
But, okay, so a person who's never used to paying that, somebody's got to pay that cost.
That's right.
So it's paid out of the employee. He gets, he's making 50, 60,000 a year, he's getting 5% pay cut just to pay for a due.
That's correct. And then the discussions with the contractors, I was able to discuss that issue with, they felt that they would have to make that up, and that's why it was a double pay. They can speak to that issue better than I can, and they're here today.
And if, if they, thank you, if they were, if that contractor was working on a non-pervailing wage job, would those workers be making that same wage or would they be making less?
In the, I asked one contractor that question, and the answer was they would be making the same. But I really defer to them to answer those questions.
Yeah, because I guess that would be the question, if they're making the higher salary because the union has negotiated that higher salary for this job, that you have a different view of that, rather than it's not just representation, it's the fact that there, that there's a higher salary. So I'll be curious, I'll be curious about that piece of information for, just so the public knows.
Yeah, both the carpenters and the trades raised that as an issue during those discussions on dues. We had to table that issue because we were at extremes. We didn't have enough information to solve it without county council's opinion or legal opinion on whether or not representation was required. So we put that one aside during the second meeting and solved it and subsequent phone calls, or at least got to some sort of proposed resolution. The next thing we talked about was jurisdictional dispute resolution. We had more PLA examples, more language that was presented. We could not get agreement. That issue is, it's just very simple. The carpenters don't feel like they're represented by the building trades process. They want binding arbitration at the local level, which in fact is the quickest sort of resolution. While the trades would agree to a form of arbitration in front of the national process, the national appeal process, they wouldn't agree to it being binding. And so we didn't get to, we didn't get to resolution of that issue. That was a no-deal. Core staffing limits...
Excuse me, just if you don't do it while you're at it, so I want to hear, you know, from, you're saying the trades said they wouldn't take binding arbitration at the local level?
That's correct. They agreed to arbitration, but they wanted the right to appeal it through their, the national plan, it's called, in case they, I guess, didn't agree with it or something.
But the local, the local binding arbitration would follow what guidelines, the national plan?
It would be arbitrators picked for their expertise by both sides, and then it would be...
Following what guidelines?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know whether there was agreement on that.
On the discussion around core staffing limits, there... On the discussion around core staffing limits, there was agree, there was against more, a glimmer of hope in the room. Two new proposals were brought forward at that meeting. The first one was forty core workers plus the balance in Ventura County Hall appraisal, apprenticeship program staff. The other proposal on the table was just that because the labor will fluctuate on a job, it was just a strict seventy, thirty percent ratio, seventy percent to thirty percent ratio of journeymen to apprentices on the job. The thirty percent apprentices all coming from the Ventura County Hall apprenticeship program.
And the seventy percent?
The seventy percent were core workers.
And what's the forty? What was the forty?
It was forty core workers, period, and then the balance, whatever the balance would be, of apprentices from Ventura County programs. In the subsequent phone call, everybody, the decision-makers apparently did not make it to the meeting, or, well, with one, all but one decision-maker came into the meeting, so we had to go out of the meeting without resolution for that problem. Subsequent phone calls, we got everybody to agree to it with the exception of the trades. They said in the final analysis, they couldn't agree to the seventy, thirty ratio. However, the carpenters said that they could live with that. So in summary, a new event, new development, on last Friday, we received the trades' legal analysis of core workforce, core workforce limitations. I've had a brief conversation with county council. It's my understanding that it hasn't changed his position on things. We did not get to agreement in the four weeks on those, on the three issues, dues, jurisdictional dispute resolution, or core worker limitations. At this point, the impacts of delay to the project, the costs are high. We have construction cost escalation that's running at about two percent per annum. We've got a motor running on consultants that's costing about sixty-five thousand dollars a month. Public works charges to the project are averaging just about ten thousand dollars a month. And we've got three pre-qualified design-build teams who are getting anxious as their project investments continue to mount without a, sort of an end in sight. And they collectively say they've all spent hundreds of thousands on this job, the pursuit of this job already. So I asked your board to consider that in their deliberations and their directions. So that concludes my presentation.
So you've talked about this cost delay. Do you have a number, a figure besides these?
Well, they're really back-of-the-napkin figures, but are, I mean, total, those three components, round numbers, four hundred grand a month.
Huh?
Four hundred thousand a month.
CEO's office number you're using? About four hundred thousand a month for delays?
Then that's back-of-the-napkin, but yes.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Pratt? I have, I have one, I just, I just want to look at the document real quick. Yeah, I mean, you know, it says, receive and file a report back regarding the options to implement. So this is receive and file, not, not agendized as a board action, yet.
That's right.
You just mentioned that you hope you'll keep, will keep that in mind as we do all our deliberations and give you direction. That's not what we're-
Oh, sorry, I, my mistake. So receive and file, but joint directions.
Hope we give directions costing four hundred thousand a month, considering delay. I mean, this is crazy. And we got big projects, we got builders, you said, are getting crazy. We're six months behind, is that what you said so far?
Yes, that's conservative estimate. We had hoped to be at the latest out with the RFP to the three design-build teams in October. So we're still not out with the RFP. That's what I'm basing that six months on.
Yeah, because, I mean, I would imagine some of these other builders had some other projects they'd be looking at too. So we got to make sure we get into this thing.
Yes, the economy seems to be heating up.
Any other questions?
Okay, what I, I just want to show that I have about forty-plus speakers here, and I'm going to limit it to three minutes per speaker. And so that's, you want, what is the pleasure of the board, a couple of minutes here?
Well, I would certainly say those who've spoke to us from our January meeting, unless something has changed, what I'd like to hear is these three critical points that Mr. Pratt just captured as to, you know, further information on them, change of position, further information on it. I'd also like to hear, because I know we all received some late information, even as recent as yesterday, but particularly there was a, from the trades, a legal memo sent, and like to have that addressed either, certainly through Mr. Pratt and legal counsel also, and hear from public comment.
Okay, so we're going to go two minutes, and two minutes per individual, and of course, if, if you can limit it to one minute, it'd be even better, but you got two minutes. So we have a lot of people here. So I'm going to start off with Mike Barber, and then following Mike Barber's going to be Julie Pena. Mike Barber.
Good afternoon. My name's Mike Barber, resident of Nylon Acres, also the founder and race director for Santa to the Sea right here in Ventura County, providing toys to underprivileged kids and scholarships to our students. I am here to support the project labor agreement. Before I retired, I was one of these guys. I was proud to say I'm a union ironworker, third-generation union ironworker out of Los Angeles, four thirty-three. And I don't, can't tell you how many cars I wore out running down to LA every day to go to work, getting up at four, four-thirty in the morning, driving down there, work eight to ten hours, and then drive home in LA traffic was a long day. And I always looked forward to when there was projects up here in Ventura County so I could spend more time with my family. But unfortunately, most of the time, it was out-of-state contractors or non-union contractors, and they brought all their own people in, and I was still driving down to LA, right past projects right here in my backyard, and had to drive to LA every day. So I'm here to support these young people, these men and women. They're highly trained, they go to OSHA classes, they're motivated, they're drug-tested, they live here in our community, they spend money with our local businesses, our kids go to school with their kids, and they deserve a break, and I'm asking you to please approve this and give them a chance to be at the front of the list to work up here instead of the back of the list. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, by the way, thank you for not clapping because, you know, we, it just takes more time, and so hold your claps to the, to the last speaker, and then we'll go from there. Julie Pena-
Good afternoon, Mr.-
And then Gloria Roman after you.
Supervisor Saragosa and supervisors on panel. I agree with what the gentleman just said, and I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. We voted for you because we believe that you're going to take us, the residents, the workers here in this county, that you're going to take us in our best interest into consideration, and we want to thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Gloria Roman is going to follow by Scott Cronland.
Yes, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gloria Roman, and as a member of this community, Ventura County, I urge you also to implement this project labor agreement. It is the only way to get the most local residents hired, and it is an economic and moral necessity for the survival of some of us and benefit of others in our county, Ventura County. This project labor agreement will have a ripple effect on everyone, reduction of unemployment, increased retail sales, more disposable income, which leads to improvement in the economy, economic health of our county. Not having this agreement could lead to more traffic and negative effect on our air quality. So please, even, even, even if there is an increase in cost, it would come back multiple times over. So I urge you, please, again, to vote for this project labor agreement, labor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, followed by Steve Weiner.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Scott Cronland. I'm a partner at Altrul Berzon in San Francisco, an attorney for the Tri-County Building Trades. I've been practicing law on behalf of unions for about twenty years and have represented many building trades councils and have been involved in many PLAs. I was asked to provide a legal opinion, which I think you have, on whether it would be legal for a project labor agreement to require contractors to draw their employees from the local union hiring hall, with the possible exception for a few core employees for each contractor. And my opinion is yes, not only is it completely legal, but it's actually typical. That's what dozens and dozens of project labor agreements on public projects provide. County council's memo raised the question whether that would prevent non-union contractors from bidding for the job. And the answer is no. We have experience with large project labor agreements that have core employee restrictions and have non-union contractors bidding for and obtaining the work. They get their workers from the local union hiring halls, which dispatch qualified journey-level contractors. You have the LAUSD School District project, you have core employees, up to five is the limitation on that job. You have plenty of non-union contractors bidding for and getting the work. San Diego Unified School District has a PLA that allows three core employees, otherwise get workers from the hiring hall. Plenty of non-union contractors. Los Angeles Community College District, similarly, you have a PLA there, up to a maximum of five employees, core, otherwise have to take the workers from the hiring hall. We have non-union contractors doing work under those PLAs. The recent Hetch-Echey project in Northern California, four-point-eight-billion-dollar project, you have a requirement that you use workers from the local hiring halls.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to have him finish.
Go ahead and finish.
So there are plenty of precedent for the use of core employees. My firm was involved in the San Francisco airport case that was discussed in county council's memo. In that case, the PLA happened to allow contractors to use any core employees. The California Supreme Court didn't say you couldn't do something different. They didn't suggest that at all. In fact, they referred to a Nevada Supreme Court decision approving a PLA as persuasive. That PLA had a restriction on core employees. You're allowed to use seven. So I think it's a legitimate concern for a place not familiar with PLAs about whether non-union contractors can bid for work if they're required to use the local union hiring halls. And the answer is yes, the experience in the construction industry is they can. And the California Supreme Court was very clear that the fact that a particular contractor might not like a PLA did not mean the PLA was anti-competitive. The contractor could make the choice about whether it wanted to do the work or not. It's up to the local awarding body in its discretion to decide what's in the best interests of the public, and it can decide that a PLA would be in the best interest to the public, including one that requires the use of the local hiring halls.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question or two for you, but I think I probably want to listen to all of the speakers and then, and ask you that question. Are you going to be staying here?
I will stay here, and I am happy to answer questions about any and all-
I'll tell you what, you know, I'm going to ask two questions real quick here, see if I can do this. I mean, identifying precedence, this being done other places, I don't think county council by itself says that makes it legal. It's the legal analysis. Your legal analysis is that the Supreme Court case didn't say you have to use this, this definition of core. It's, the way I'm reading what you wrote, it said that that definite, that, that, that definition of core that they use was not anti-competitive. So it was like, that was okay, what they use in the San Francisco, but it didn't mean you had to use that?
That's correct. The legal analysis is whether it would exclude people from bidding. And no, this wouldn't exclude people from bidding.
That's the standard, whether it excludes people from bidding.
That is the standard, and we have the evidence that it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Schoper. Thomas, and then followed by Robert Norling. You missed a-
You missed one.
Okay, I'm turning.
Sorry, John.
It's okay.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Steve Weiner, Executive Secretary/Treasurer of the Tri-County Building and Construction Trades Council. I just have a couple of comments about the negotiations and the way they've been going. First of all, at the last board meeting, you directed us to meet and get back within four weeks. We only had two meetings in that time period, and it took almost two weeks before we had our first meeting. And at these meetings, we never talked about local hire, which, if I remember, that was the number-one issue the board had. We were asked to send a project labor agreement to the county to work from. We did that within a couple of days of the last board meeting. Then, two days before the meeting, we received a document that did not resemble the agreement that we sent to Jeff Pratt. We were informed that Bob Norling of the AGC, and the AGC has publicly stated the opposition to public project labor agreements, was hired to facilitate the talks and to put together that document. There's a number of people who have successfully negotiated project labor agreements, and you know, and why was Bob picked, and how many public PLAs has Bob Norling brought, has been successful with? One person I talked to was Mark Johnson, who worked with Parsons and is now has his consulting firm dealing with project labor agreements. He represented a number of agencies down in Los Angeles and negotiated over sixty, sixty billion dollars' worth of project labor agreements, not only in LA but across the country. Why wasn't he asked? At the first meeting, we were told by county council that there would not be a PLA. My concern is that the only people who want local hire and a project labor agreement are the building, building trades and the board of supervisors. I would ask the board that at the end of this meeting to direct staff to go back to the table and get someone who has successfully negotiated public-sector project labor agreements in there so we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, now Thomas.
That's a very interesting comment.
And then followed by Robert Norling.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Tom Shodorf, a resident of Ventura for nearly thirty-two years, and a proud thirty-nine-year member of United Association of Plumbers and Pipefitters, Local Union four eighty-four. The question today is not how to hire locally, but why. In the past few months in the Ventura County Star, there has been several articles, editorials, and letters to the editor on what you will decide today. In the Star Staff editorial on January twenty-eighth of this year, and I quote, "The County of Ventura wants to encourage the hiring of local workers for a major project, the plant construction of a hospital wing at the Ventura County Medical Center in Ventura." They further say the Star agrees that it's an exceptional idea to promote the hiring of as many county residents as practical in a taxpayer-financed two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar project. Local families and local economy would benefit from the jobs. In the end, the Star editorial asks you to vote down the PLA. I suggest the benefit of hiring the county residents and the expected spending of their wages that would help our local economy. I guess the benefit of hiring a county residence and the expected spending of the wages that would help our local economy isn't worth it. I agree with Marcella Morales, who is an acting executive director, Central Coast Alliance United for a Sustainable Economy, when she said, "It is only fair and reasonable for the county to adopt a PLA policy to maximize the reinvestment of taxpayer dollars in the form of county residents being hired and having access to quality training programs." So the how is through a PLA agreement placed in the construction documents, and the why I questioned in the beginning is to keep the local taxpayer dollars in Ventura County, reinvesting in our economy, and stimulating our recovery.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Robert Norling, if it's spelled correctly here, and followed by Tom Beatty.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I will, I'm not going to add any additional, if you have additional questions for me-
Put your microphone together and up.
Just bring him up, there you go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Sorry. I am the person from the Construction Industry Advisory Group that assisted Mr. Pratt, and I just put in the comment in case the supervisors had any questions. If you do, I'm prepared to answer those. If you do not, I will keep to your time limit and-
Or maybe later on, maybe somebody might have.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Tom Beatty, followed by Rod Kobols.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a member of the Plumbers Pipefitters Union in Ventura. I've lived in Ventura County for roughly forty-three years, been a member for twenty years in the building trades. I myself have had to travel up and down the states and across the country looking for it to support my family, and I believe we need to get this local hire for local work. It'll bring money back. I have been, like I said, once again, all over the country doing this. It's a prevailing wage job. There is no per diem on these jobs, but if you look at- But if you look at the prevailing wage rates across the country, we are one of the highest. And I looked up last night online, different prevailing wages, like Alabama, their prevailing wage is $12 an hour. So I don't see those people having a problem coming here for a job with benefits included at $58 an hour. They could pay a lot of hotel costs, a lot of per diem rates for that, and still send money home. We need to keep the money here where it belongs with our own people. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Cobos, followed by Desiree Cabral.
Good afternoon, Chairman Saragosa. Board of Supervisors, Rod Cobos. I'm a 43-year county resident and representing the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union out of Ventura. Just wanted to make a comment on Mr. Christensen's mailer that was sent out to the county of approximately 40,000 county residents. And he references L.A. union bosses' politics and what they're doing in Ventura County. While I'm here, I am not necessarily a union boss. I have, I'm one worker with 350 bosses and family members that I represent. And the policies of the organized labor here in Ventura County, just to say, my father-in-law, 35-year member of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, unfortunately, he passed away two years after retiring. To this day, my mother-in-law still continues to collect a pension off my father-in-law's 35 years of laboring in the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. My in-laws had the opportunity to send my wife to college, earn a degree, go and work for the county, and has a decent paying job. And I would urge, again, the board to move forward in implementing a project labor agreement on the Ventura County Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Desiree Cabral, followed by Gary Kragel.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share our story. My name's Desiree Cabral. I live in Fillmore, and these are my daughters. There's only one person missing from our family today, and it's my husband, John. He's a loyal and proud pipe fitter from Local 484. For the past two years, he's been traveling for work and living in different states to help us keep our heads above water. Our local has done everything they can to keep our men and women working locally, but when opportunities present themselves elsewhere, my husband has an instinct and a need to provide for our family. He spent seven months in 2010, living and working in Illinois. And for the past four months, he's lived and worked in Oregon. He and his roommates are paying rent, utilities, expenses, and taxes in other states to support two separate households. It's my understanding that you here today on the board have the opportunity to support a project labor agreement that will open up the possibility to bringing my husband home. We're deeply rooted with family and support, but we're bound by a mortgage that you all know will not allow us an easy sell at this time. Our only option is to allow John to follow work elsewhere until there's work here at home. Please offer your help and support by voting to approve a project labor agreement on the upcoming county medical center expansion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary, and followed by Bill Luddy.
Good afternoon, board. First of all, it's just, I'm just here to support my local brothers and sisters. I know a lot of people are hurting. We probably have 60 members out of state working. Local hire is the issue. It's really not as easy as just packing up and going somewhere when you have a mortgage behind you. You'd have to rent your place, or then you come back, you don't really have a place to live. You just stay on the road. It's really not a pleasant lifestyle. I think we're very capable of doing a job of this size. We built this very facility that you work in. Just really just need your support, and it's just really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bill, followed by Rene Soto.
Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Bill Luddy. I represent the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. You have a lot of speakers. I think it's clear that the support for local hire is across the board. Everybody here is in favor of that. We certainly are. I'd also like to commend your staff on the representation of the negotiations. I think they accurately lay out the issues that were there for us as carpenters is correct. The issue on the agreement is over the use of the plan and the ability to appeal a decision back to Washington where we have no voice or vote or representation. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll be here.
Thank you. Rene Soto, followed by James Joyce.
Hi, everyone. Like I said, my name's Rene Soto, and I'm heavily involved with an organization called CAWS. And I'm here to give you the perspective of why this, why the PLA is important from the youth perspective. Right now, from being involved heavily in the community and meeting all these different leaders, they give me the perspective of there's opportunities in Oxnard, in just the city of Oxnard. And they've got me to wanting to have a future in the city and really grow and really see what opportunities are out there. And I see this PLA being a chance to show my generation, the ones that are going to be getting into the workforce pretty soon, that there's opportunities here in Ventura County as a whole. And many of our, many of my friends now are either barely just becoming 18, 19, 20, and we're talking about, we get to vote this year. So no pressure on you guys, but.
Do you live in Oxnard?
There's several thousand youth becoming that age, so there's several thousand new voters. And yeah, so please give in and provide these jobs that I know many of my uncles and many of my friends' dad, I mean, they need these opportunities to be able to stay local and really harness a good future here. So, thank you.
Thank you, man. James Joyce, followed by Gustavo Dejaro.
Hello, Chairman, members, Mr. CEO. My name is James Joyce, and I bring you greetings and a statement on behalf of Assembly Member Das Williams, who represents the 35th Assembly District. The Assembly Member is adamantly supportive of a local hire provision or PLA in the construction of the Ventura County Medical Center Hospital Replacement Project. It is of vital importance that jobs created by this project go to local residents. Given the 9.4% unemployment rate in the county, a result of the economic conditions, this board is now presented with the opportunity to keep jobs local or export the wealth of Ventura County residents to other communities. It's a no-brainer, keep the jobs local. Let's support our local workforce. A PLA on this project will put unemployed Ventura County residents back to work and creates apprenticeship and training programs. The residents of Ventura County need your leadership on this and continue to support a PLA for this important project. Thank you very much on behalf of Assembly Member Williams.
Thank you. Gustavo Dejaro, followed by Arianna Willman. I'm not sure if it's a W or an M. M. Arianna Millman.
Good afternoon. My name is Gustavo Dejaro, and I'm here on behalf of a community organization based out of Oxnard called Arts for Action. And I've asked the clerk of the board to please distribute a little bit of information about the org. I am the board treasurer of Arts for Action, and I'm also the director of a program called Jobs Not Jails. And this program is actually a program, a new program, that's been developed by our organization in the past six months. And I'd like to present to you what this program is about. As its title, Jobs Not Jails, recognizes the idea that right now our youth are being challenged in many ways. One of those ways is actually through, because of unemployment. The other major challenge is due to the budget cuts in education. At this moment, we work with several hundred youth based out of Ventura County who are facing these challenges every day and who recognize that through jobs is where we're going to be able to find a solution and a path towards a future for many of these youth. Jobs Not Jails is a job training program that allows youth from Ventura County to learn a trade. And the trade that we offer is through the arts, the creative economy and graphic design, as well as soot screening. The jobs that we provide through our program are local. They're offered to youth. And the first side, the first idea that, the lesson that we teach the participants in our program is the importance of keeping dollars local. When a person buys a shirt or an item from our organization, our participants understand that those dollars are going to stay local. And when those people who we employ, you know, get paid, they keep the dollars local. They purchase locally. So that's a really important idea, and I think that's what this PLA is all about.
Thank you, Gustavo.
Thank you. And I really urge you to move forward with this PLA. And I want to let you know that over the weekend, we actually registered over 200 first-time voters in Ventura County. And we're making an effort to really connect our program with our political civic engagement efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. We have, okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Arianna Millman, and I have lived in Ventura County for most of my life. I grew up in Thousand Oaks and have lived in Camarillo and Ventura and have worked in Santa Paula. And I'm here because I know that many working families in this county need good, well-paying jobs and want to contribute to the community. And I want to get Ventura County moving again, and I want all families to have access to the same opportunities that I had growing up as a youth in Thousand Oaks. I'm currently working with a new project called Proyecto Nativo, which will be helping to create new green jobs by developing a sustainable gardening training program for local landscapers. I'm taking action to grow green jobs for my community, and I'm here to ask our Board of Supervisors to do your part by keeping jobs local and supporting the project labor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teresa Glover, followed by Theodora David-Cornyn. So Teresa Glover, there she is. And followed by Theodora.
Good afternoon. My name's Teresa Glover. I'm a resident here in Ventura. I think this board's in a really unique position at this time to do really good things for the county of Ventura by voting in the PLA. In doing so, local unemployed, our unemployment rate here is really high. It's approximately 1 in 10. I'm one of those unemployed. I'm a paralegal with over 20 years' experience, and I'm having trouble finding a job over a year being unemployed. So I could see where people that are in, you know, not as skilled or whatever, would have problems. This would provide an opportunity to ensure that there's an apprentice program for the youth that are coming into the workforce where they can be trained and have a good life-sustaining career at hand as a result of it. The revitalization of Ventura in itself, you know, using the money and keeping the money here in this county is vital to this county. We've got to get, you know, things are very tough these days, and they're probably going to get worse before they get better. But you guys, I think, are in a position now by voting this in to make it get better even quicker. So please, I implore you to vote in this PLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Theodora, followed by Miguel Rodriguez.
Greetings to our Board of Supervisors. I'm Theodora David-Cornyn. Some of you know that I do community ministry here in this part of Ventura County. Some of you may not know that I used to live in Thousand Oaks. And if Linda Parks will excuse me, I used to refer to my part of Ventura County over there in the East County as a hotbed of social rest, which is, from my generation, kind of funny. But I think it's changing, and I know that it's changing around here. We have demographics that have changed enormously in this part of the county. I want to say that I'm very happy to stand with unions. As you may recall, Jesus's earthly father was a carpenter. And my 91-year-old father is a carpenter still, part-time, to be sure, in Western New York State. My brother is a carpenter in Western New York State. And I want to call your attention to the fact that on the front page of this morning's Star, at the very bottom, below the fold, is an interesting story about three cities here in Ventura County scoring low on racial equality. It says Latinos suffer big disadvantages that whites escape. And it's talking about everything from education to employment. And Dr. Ray Tejada, who is the head of our local League of Latin American Citizens, United Latin American Citizens, he's quoted frequently in this article. He's a professor, a doctor of education. And I'm a longtime member of LULAC, so I understand the problems from this perspective. I'm also a lifetime member of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the NAAC chapter here in Ventura County is a very active one.
Theodora, can you conclude?
Yes. So I just wanted to say that I invite the board to Google major improvements made by unions. We would like to encourage local hires, and I'm sure that you're all going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Miguel Rodriguez, followed by Diana Marin.
Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Rodriguez, and I'm a Ventura resident. I was actually raised in Oxnard. And right now, I'm doing work for the community in West Ventura and Santa Paula. And the reason why I'm here is because our communities need good-paying jobs that are local. I'm in full support of the PLA, as it will bring apprenticeship opportunities to the youth who can later use their skills to better our communities and help rebuild our public infrastructure. The PLA will benefit everything from janitors to cooks to construction workers, which is a win for all, if you ask everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Diana, followed by Joe Duran.
Hi, my name is Diana Marin, and I'm an organizer with CAWS. As a proud new resident of Oxnard and of this county, I stand along with almost everyone in this room and echo what they've been saying to vote on this, vote yes on the PLA. I ask you, I'm sorry, I demand you to not only, it's not just about the creation of 2,000 jobs, but it's about the creation of 2,000 opportunities in this county. So please, vote the correct way. Vote for this PLA.
Thank you. Joe Duran, followed by Michael Bennett.
Want to thank the Chairman and also board members for allowing us here. And again, it's, I'm not going to drag this out. We're here representing the carpenters and also local residents. My, again, my name is Joe Duran, and I'm a local resident of Santa Paula. So again, the impact of the unemployment, I think the key, the key is coming to an agreement. But again, representing estimated 30% of the workforce is a large piece of the pie. And one of the, one of the keys that, that we, again, I wanted to cover as far as the public works, staff actually did an excellent job with a short period of time. But I think initially, the key component is the jurisdictional language, which has been a roadblock. The other thing, too, is the local training. We, especially with our training facility, we represent locally 1,200 union members. But we also represent a large volume of the community that, because of employment, is impacted. So we're considered very active in the community. One of the things that we are doing is also supporting the training mechanism with local jobs. And so with the component that we've done, especially with the medical facilities, from concrete all the way to the finish aspect of the project, is going to be something very critical. So again, I want to just shorten up my time, and I also want to make available to the supervisors that do not have our. that do not have our training with the hospital, our medical facilities, because it is a key component for the survival of our workforce here in Ventura County.
Mr. Duran, Supervisor wants to ask you a question.
I'm certainly aware of the apprenticeship program. It sounded, if I recall, like that there was agreement on that.
On the apprenticeship?
On how a PLA may be structured for apprenticeship program. A question on the issue of arbitration and the differing portal or process between trades and carpenters. In other PLAs that the carpenters have been engaged in, how do you resolve that? How do you resolve that?
Again, it was a, we were willing to agree to a local remedy, which council actually brought up and identified. And the quicker we move on that component, and that was the thing, we were in agreement if they would, with the, with the language that we had proposed. But again, it, we're just, we're only 30% of the equation. The other entities have to agree also. So that's...
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so you were in agreement with the local remedy? It was the trades that wanted to have their process? Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to ask that question, but I, when Mr. Luddy spoke, I thought the same question. I don't know that I fully understand where this disagreement is, so.
Supervisor along, again, Jeff Prepper for the record. The carpenters have solved that problem in a variety of ways, one of which was discussed at length in the room, and that was a separate agreement. It didn't meet the constraints that your board had set forth, but they have signed separate agreements that have been the same, but for the jurisdictional language. Now, the way that gets resolved is contractor's responsibility is responsible for assigning the, in this situation, contractor is responsible for assigning the work. Contractor says carpenters do this. If the trades have a problem with that and want to appeal it, they have to use the appeal process in the carpenters jurisdictional language section of their PLA. Contractor says trades do this, and carpenters want to appeal, they have to use the trades' jurisdictional language. So but for the jurisdictional language, the PLA looks the same. Now, when I've discussed that with the design-build teams, they see, none of them have worked in that situation. I guess that situation's been unique to Ventura County. It was signed on the project out in Piru. But, and they see some potential problems because it sort of puts the burden on them. And we didn't discuss it at length because it just didn't meet the constraints. The other way that was discussed is that the carpenters just don't sign. And that's happened on a number of occasions, but you lose 30% of the ability to have job peace throughout the project.
Can I add to that? Don't they have an agreement in Northern California?
They do. It's called the Northern California Plan. And I discussed that at length with the attorney who drafted it. It's in the most recent San Francisco International Airport Project Labor Agreement, which was signed in January of this year. In it, they have arbitration prior to the initiation of the plan, the national plan, the appeal to Washington. When I talked to the fellow who also sits on, I forget what it's called, the Project Labor Committee, it's a group that oversees the agreement and makes sure the terms, he sits on it, he works for the city and county of San Francisco, he's an attorney. He said it was everybody's understanding around the room that the arbitration in there was binding, although it doesn't say that. He believes that the Project Labor Committee is going to interpret it that way. We presented that language in the negotiations, and the, and the carpenters wanted to add the binding arbitration explicitly and just to that part of the Northern California Plan, and the trades were not willing to live with that.
The one word, binding.
Pardon me?
Binding was the...
Let's just make it explicit that it's binding arbitration. That's correct.
I'm sorry. The question.
How much of the workforce for this project will be the carpenters?
The rough estimate is 30%. And I should point out that there's only one of the design-build teams that has not signed with the carpenters. Two of them are, one of them is not.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker is Michael Bennett, followed by Eric Christian.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board, Council, and Mr. Powers. Over the past month, at what I believe is around $400,000 in expense to taxpayers of this county, I was involved in negotiations with Project Labor Agreement. The portion of the board that voted to proceed down this path made it clear that no cost should be added to the project by virtue of our mandating a labor agreement. Well, there's $400,000 right there. Being a part of the group in attendance, I respectfully request that you directly inquire of all three bidders whether or not, with the proposed language of this PLA, costs will or will not be added to the project. Please. I believe you will find out they are, and they will be. No matter how you redefine it, restructure it, rediscover it, reevaluate it, government imposition of labor, as does government imposition of a lot of things, adds costs to doing business. And this idea is no exception. You've already seen just or heard one example in the case of a journeyman, union, or an apprentice paying 5% of their wage if they're not union. You've already heard this earlier today. I'm not going to go over it again. Some may, some may work on a project at 5% less wages, some may not. Somebody's got to make up the difference. Collective bargaining has a very important role in our society and our country's past. The concept was founded at the ground level, and our government made sure that the rights of a group of individuals intending to bargain collectively were and are protected. Today, the suggestion that our government needs to impose on the public that they shall be forced into a bargaining agreement, whether they wish to or not, is a new concept, relatively speaking. It's tossed around like a political football. Where the pressure to impose this comes from does not really matter, as long as one keeps a key concept in mind...
Michael, can you conclude, please?
Yes. We don't need nor should we have the government overstepping their bounds. I believe if you do impose a PLA, you shall be. Thank you.
Eric Christensen, and followed by Kevin Korenthal.
Just for the record, it's Eric Christen, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. This process has become extremely painful to watch, and I'm sorry that you've allowed it to go on as long as you've allowed it to go on, but it can end today. The farce can end, the project can be built, can go out to bid. You have three qualified, highly respected, world-class contractors that are ready to move forward, yet a special interest that doesn't even represent all the unions on the job is being allowed to hold up a project at the cost of $400,000 a month. I'm glad that's on the record, because now the media has something to focus on, the taxpayers have something to wrap their minds around, and you have something to wrap your minds around with regards to exactly what a delay gets you. This really, again, isn't about local hire. We hardly even heard that term brought up now. Now, we can at least have the clarity of being honest about what this is about. We prefer clarity, always prefer clarity over agreement. It's about the "let's keep Berg Electric off a job because they're not part of our union group" agreement. Let's just be clear about what this is. If Berg Electric wasn't one of the qualified subcontractors on this project, the acronym PLA, the term Project Labor Agreement, isn't even something you would be considering, and you have already bid this project. So now that we know what this is about, you've been presented by staff with four intangibles as determined by the board that cannot be agreed to. They won't ever be agreed to, because AFL-CIO National won't allow them to be agreed to. You've heard it yourself. Staff has been quite explicit. Dual benefits. Unions believe that all non-union workers should pay two benefits, one to the union plan, one to their plan. Not only is it immoral, it makes it cost uncompetitive for Berg Electric. You've heard of the ability of the carpenters to be able to have jurisdiction in the way that they want it. Binding arbitration is not something they can agree to. So you have these provisions that you all agreed should be agreed to that can't be agreed to. End the farce, bid the project today, and put people to work locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian, what you said...
Let me ask a question real quick.
You said because of the electrocontractors, non-union, is that why with the hospital down the street from the other hospital, there's no PLA? Because they don't have a non-union contractor working on it?
I do not know who the workers on that project were, so I couldn't answer that question.
But I mean, we have a bigger project than this project, and we don't see a PLA on that issue.
Right. If there wasn't a threat of a PLA, then odds are probably good that there wasn't that non-union electric contractor.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious why they're...
Sure. Certainly isn't about local hire. Let's just be honest about that.
Exactly. I was just curious why that all of a sudden, this one, you've got a bigger project where there's more, and they're all hiring and doing, we never saw this come up, but an interesting comment you made. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, followed by Edward Bilt.
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors, Staff, and those in attendance today. My name is Kevin Korenthal. In addition to being a resident of nearby Santa Clarita, I'm an expert on the policies and practices of the building trades. My expertise comes from five years and two dozen battles to prevent the building trades from gaining a monopoly over public works through the use of union-only project labor agreements. PLAs are often presented as a means to increase local hiring, yet just the opposite ends up being true. Complicated and onerous regulations like PLAs discourage small craft contractors from bidding. These small contractors cannot afford attorneys that specialize in navigating the complicated processes of PLAs. They would rather not bid than fall victim to one of the numerous traps that big labor is known for placing in project labor agreements. So by enacting a PLA, the county is dismissing its very best hope for robust local involvement. I have documented numerous cases over the years where well-meaning municipalities have attempted to negotiate non-exclusionary PLAs, only to find out that some of the people at the bargaining table have no power to negotiate. It is important to understand that each and every regional and state building trades association answers to the AFL-CIO in Washington, D.C. So while the stakeholders, including the bidders, the associated general contractors, and even the carpenters' union, had folks at the table who could agree to compromises, the building trades had to run anything discovered in those meetings by the big labor bosses in Washington, D.C. From this, I think we can extrapolate that everyone except the building trades approached these negotiations in good faith. It's time for the County Board of Supervisors to do the job that they were elected to do by voting today to proceed with this project according to California's Public Works Law that will pay prevailing wages to the workers. Thank you, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, Edward, followed by Scott Dater.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers. My name is Edward Billig. I represent Berg Electric. I am one of the pre-qualified subcontractors proposing on this project. I'm a 33-year resident of Ventura County. We, too, want to use local hire primarily because of the economics associated with using local hiring, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Question real quick. Go ahead. Comment was made from up here is if there's prevailing wage, certain wages paid and not prevailing wage, do you change your wages based on prevailing wage or not?
Our wages are based on the type of project that we're building. Hospital projects such as St. John's Hospital...
Let's give the speaker some... Go ahead.
St. John's Hospital in Santa Monica was a private project. The wages that we paid out there were higher than prevailing wage on the base wage. Depends on the level of expertise and the service, the years of service that people have worked and provided for us on our jobs. So it varies.
Right, okay. So it's not based on the job, it's based on the extent of the person that you're on that job?
Skill sets.
Skill sets, anything else, wagon, else. You were just awarded a, as we saw earlier today, you were awarded a job at the airport.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you knew that or not, but I just saw that on something we were talking about. So it's interesting that nothing's coming up on that, on our county airport. So, and it goes back to the lowest bidder, that whole thing, and I would imagine, though, that kind of work, you must be paying whatever requires that we require.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage to do that work.
And that job will be 100% local.
And yeah, and yeah, okay. So you're, I was going to ask you a next thing. Where do those people come from?
Camarillo job. I'm sorry, sir?
The Camarillo jobs are 100%...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so you're saying those people come local to do that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't want people traveling. Fuel costs are ridiculous. I traveled when I was an electrician in the field.
Right, okay.
It's the normal economics.
So the idea that we have a, quote, "we want our local people working," you're saying you took on this job, you may not know, because I know you're a big company, you don't know all the stuff going on, but you're saying that will be all the local people will be working here to do that work?
100% local.
100%, okay. Great, thank you.
Question, so, I heard you say you're a 33-year resident.
33-year resident, yes.
And so your company based here?
We have a company that...
I'm asking him the question?
Yeah.
Pardon me, go ahead.
Our company performs work in Ventura. We have an office in Agora Hills.
In Agora Hills. And most of your...
I'm sorry.
So your employees come from all over?
Yes.
How many employees do you have that live here in this county?
We actually have 22 field employees, and we have seven office employees.
Okay. If we were to go to a PLA, that would say, and this is just a, just a if, and it said, because I was concerned at our last conversation, that Berg employees, we have Berg employees who live here, who, you know, could be excluded from working on this project. If there were agreement to do a PLA structure of some sort, that said, that Berg Electric would be able to have X number of core employees?
Well, Berg or any contractor.
Well, it would have to be obviously across the board.
Okay, yes.
Would you participate?
We have already said that we would.
Okay.
Forty core workers is what I believe was discussed, and then there was a 20% to 30% apprenticeship ratio.
Did you just say that you have 22 workers in Ventura County?
22 field employees and eight, or I'm sorry, seven office employees.
So 22 skilled employees?
Yes.
So 22 electricians?
22 electricians, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott Dater, followed by Robert Moreno.
Chairman Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Scott Dater. I, too, am also with Berg Electric. After the last meeting and the discussions on local hire, I put some of my staff to work in contacting some of the smaller local contractors that we work with in Ventura County, in Ventura, the city of Ventura, and reached out to them to find out their opinion on signing a PLA. Now, since the terms of the PLA haven't been decided upon, all I had to do, all I had to reference was some existing PLAs from different areas in LA County. By those terms, with the restrictions on core workforce, things of dual benefits, union dues, the small local businesses were not interested in working with us on this project, bidding on this project. And they would, they felt like they were being excluded from the project because they could not meet the terms of the PLA. Now, once again, this is a local hire issue. We want to put our current Berg Electric employees to work. We want to be able to hire local, open shop employees. We want to partner with local, non-union contractors, whether it be excavators, low-voltage suppliers, what have you. And to date, I haven't heard anything in the PLA that does address the local hire. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, ask a question real quick. I forgot your name. When you say like local suppliers, a local guy using a backhoe or excavators, so what are you saying? Because of that, you feel like you're going to be excluded to get some of the people that you've worked with before?
Correct. These contractors, whether they be small businesses or even larger businesses that may be located outside of Ventura County and have Ventura County employees, or contractors that are located in Ventura County, the things with the core work staff, the one-to-one ratios or the, you know, two-to-one ratios of two of their employees to one employee from a local hiring hall, somebody that they don't know, somebody that they don't have experience with, that's their concerns, and they're valid concerns, you know, especially on the smaller businesses where, you know, their margins are extremely tight. They know their employees, their employees have been with them for many years, and that's how they make their bread and butter. So those are the people that they want to use.
Okay, yeah, I understand. I think what you're trying to say is that I'm, if I'm that contractor, I'm concerned about maybe another qualified person coming from Union Hall or something else, but I just don't know them.
Exactly.
And I don't know, I'm under the pressure to perform because of penalty and everything else, and what you're saying is there may be another local person that I do know that I'd like to hire. Not that we're not doing it local, it's one I do know that will perform the work that I've used to, I've seen how they've worked.
Or a past employee that, because of the economic times, they've had to lay off, or that employee, just like the unions, the open shop contractors have employees that have had to travel out of state to find work or out of the area to find work.
I may be able to call them back here to do this work.
Exactly.
But the key to me at the end of this is that we have a responsibility to ensure that we get a project built, it's built with a quality group of people, that gets done on time because delays anything else. Because I imagine that if you're a subcontractor, that we as a county under our contract, I don't know, Jeff probably said this, we're probably putting penalties if you're delayed, if you're behind, if you're doing everything else, right? We're putting penalties on people for not being done on time.
Correct.
And so the idea of having the people that they know that they've worked with, I know, you know, Mr. Powers, with all the manager he knows, he wants people he knows to work with when trying to accomplish what he wants to do in this county. Okay, so that's my, what I was really trying to figure, is the idea that I could lose the people that I'm used to working with. I'm not talking about... I'm not talking about union, non-union, I'm just talking about if it's a union guy that's working that I've worked with, I want him. If it's a non-union, I don't, I want him. That's my, I'm trying to understand, that's the key that you're talking about, right?
That's correct.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the people that he's used to working that he knows, that Sam Smith and this group together have performed work for me, I'm comfortable that I can go forward. What you're saying is some of those guys were uncomfortable, I would not know those, so I have to go bid, and I maybe have to increase my margins because I'm not sure what I get?
We were brought on with one of the pre-approved general contractors for the project because of our past experience with our employees and that contractor building these exact type of facilities.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're trying to do. We team with second-tier subcontractors for the same exact reason. Those are the contractors that we know that use their, the employees that they have, or that they've worked with in the past, that we know they bring a certain experience to the table that we're familiar with.
Right, and I guess that's the key, it's that familiarity. It's not that somebody else is good, it's just I'm familiar with what I know. I appreciate that, thank you.
Can I ask a quick one, too? Quicker. As I understand from the last time, there were some employees that were discussed that have been off work for more than that 60-day window and would be excluded. Is that still the case that you're seeing?
Well, I'm not familiar with the terms, the exact terms of the PLA that are being discussed, but if we go by County Council's recommendations on what core workforce is, 60 in the last 100 days from the signature of contract, yes, we are in jeopardy of not being able to bring those people back on.
Do you have a rough idea how many may be in that category?
I'm sorry?
Seven?
Nine?
Nine? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Robert Moreno, followed by Sean, and Robert Moreno? Stain? Okay, and Sean, S-M-U-R-R. Okay. Your writing is like mine.
My name is Sean Stoffer. I'm General Superintendent with Berg Electric. Moved to Ventura County almost 30 years ago, and I've lived within five miles of that house ever since. Like we said before, Berg Electric has a core group of electricians that live in Ventura County, 22. General foreman, foreman, journeyman, and apprentices. But right now, they're going to LA to work, they're going to Santa Barbara to work, they're going to San Luis Obispo to work. We would love to be able to let them work close to home. This whole idea of a PLA being about local hire doesn't make any sense. This is about having local electricians, whether they're union or non-union, working on your project. They don't have to be union to be Ventura County electricians. 85% of the construction workers in Ventura County are non-union because they choose to be non-union. I just don't understand why signing a PLA is gonna assure anybody of local hire.
Let me ask, give me another question, if I could.
About a question?
Have you, as Berg's superintendent on some of these projects, have you worked under PLA before?
No.
No, so you don't, okay, there was a question was asked, and I was just wanting to ask a question, but if you haven't, I'd...
No, we've never been part of a project labor agreement that we're willing to work under.
Oh, you've never been part of one?
Not while I've been with Berg.
And Berg is a very large contractor doing business all over the state and all over the five different states? In the nation. And you've been able to do that without PLA? Oh, okay, wow, okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Mike Ritters. Mike, followed by Johnny O'Kane.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Ritters with McCarthy Building Companies, Vice President of Operations. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of me, but I have no further statements. I think Jeff did a marvelous job of summarizing where we're at.
You have any questions?
With McCarthy Building Companies? We're actually the design-build partner of Berg.
I got a question that I can ask you, because have you, as McCarthy, worked under a PLA before?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And then, one of the things was, when you look at this and these kind of things going back, if there's two agreements and all this stuff, what do you see the increase in cost and the delay, or is there any delay, or, I mean, I know it's difficult because you guys deal with unions, so I'm just trying to ask an honest, straightforward question. I mean, how do you see the cost?
I would definitely see there will be a cost increase. We build a lot of hospitals in Southern California. I think we're actually the largest builder of hospitals in Southern California. This would have been, I think, the second project under which we would have done a PLA, but based on what I can see within the bidding environment, it will increase your cost by, I'm guessing, 2% to 10%, depending on the lack of participation or not.
Right, okay, and then you said you're the largest builder of hospitals in Southern California?
In Southern California, yes.
You have some recent ones you've done here locally?
We just finished Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital.
Oh, you did, you were the cottage hospital builder?
Yes.
Now, on that hospital, was there a PLA agreement on that?
No, sir.
And how much union was done on that hospital?
I think it was probably almost 100% union. I think we had a non-union painter.
Really? And so even though you didn't have to be union PLA or not, it was still pretty much a union job?
Yeah, it was based on best value. We looked at all the bidders out there and ended up with Sasko and Smith Electric on that particular project.
Okay, and so the idea that unions don't need government to give them an upper hand, they seem like they had the upper hand, it just did good quoting and good job, and you picked them, and they built, I heard that hospital was a tremendous success.
A lot of our hospitals are built with union electricians, others are built with non-union. We've done, I believe, we've done two successful hospitals with Berg Electric. We got two others underway, and they're all, actually three underway, and they're going smoothly as well.
That's great, great to hear that, well, thank you.
Mike, let me ask a question. Under the PLA project that you did, did you have any labor problems?
I wasn't directly involved in it, but as I understand, there were.
There were?
Yes.
And they were taken care of within the PLA, not with the...
Again, because I wasn't directly involved, I didn't know any of the specifics, Chairman, so I don't really feel comfortable speaking to it, other than I had heard that there were some union issues.
Because my understanding is under PLA that they have a, the user or the builder does not have to be concerned with those problems?
Well, we haven't had, to my recollection, any union problems on non-PLA jobs either.
Okay, thank you. No, 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 but...
Okay, we have Johnny, followed by Michael Lopez.
How do you do? I'm Johnny O'Kane. I represent ironworkers in Ventura County. And for 100 years, the building trades, there's a group of kids on the streets, there's a group of kids in the back of the class that ain't going to college. We are their college. And we're not looking to get a kid a job in Ventura for six months. We're looking to get a kid a career that's gonna last him his lifetime. I was here a month ago, and I heard the cat over here on the far right talking about, you know, that everybody has to be involved in negotiations. That makes about as much sense as when you guys have to make a decision to bring every constituent in here and make them work on it with you. And then I heard your mouthpiece, who we've had PLAs since the Hoover Dam. There's thousands to pick from. He chose one to hang his hat on. I think Ventura deserves a mouthpiece with an open mind. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Lopez, followed by Shane Weiner. Michael?
Short guy, sorry about that. It is frightening up here. Good afternoon, let, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you folks. We've been talking about cost on the front side. I've been involved with local UA plumbers and pipe fitters as an instructor and a training coordinator of my local. One of the things, I've also had some experience doing some labor compliance work, and a cost that you may not see on the front side, but you're definitely gonna see on the backside, as my friend, Mr. Christiansen, over here has stated, one of the groups that he represents, the ABC, is actually, in reality, speaking for maybe 10% of the contractors that are non-union, and unfortunately, they're also responsible for over 40% of the labor compliance violations in the state. So if you want to start adding up what's your, what's your cost of operation, please don't forget the backside, because you're gonna have one. They have a history, many, many years. Speaking of history, you also have a group that has a history in your community. Local 484 has a vested interest in this community. We've been here for 87 years. We are the local people, by definition. You don't gotta look anywhere, make a phone call, we're there. We have been 87 years. There's only one other group of people in the United States who spend more money on training the youth and training the next group of people, the next group of technicians that are gonna do your work for you. Build your courthouses and build your hospitals. Only one that spends more money than the United Association and their plumbers and pipe fitters, and that's the US military. So if you talk about a group that's already invested in your community, already showing up, already have a history, look at the building we're standing in, look at the buildings around here, we're already here working for you. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Shane, and the last speaker is gonna be Tony Skinner.
Tony won't be speaking today. I'll take some of his time, but I'll make this quick.
Tony, go.
Chairman Zaragoza and fellow members of the Board, first, I appreciate you giving me a few moments to speak with you. My name is Shane Warner, and I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary for the Electrical Workers Union that represents Ventura County. And many electricians here I represent are here in this audience today. First, I'd like to talk about Berg Electric. I've heard more than once this PLA is just another battle between union and non-union. Although I represent the organized industry of our trade, I wish no ill will towards Berg Electric or its employees. In fact, if you go to our past, our locals always had a good rapport with Berg Electric while, during the time they were signatory and had very positive comments to talk about. My main concern has always been to deliver a quality project on time, within budget, and maximize the number of Ventura County residents employed on such project. The only such way to deliver the maximum county residents employed on this project is through the use of a project labor agreement. With the use of a limited core employee provision, which I understand is up for debate between the interested parties, and ultimately, it's gonna be your decision. Through past four meetings, it was mentioned a large workforce, Berg Electric employees within the, within the county, and you heard some members of 22. First, I'd like to submit several items to you for your consideration and thought. I did a public record request to the State of California with a Division of Apprenticeship Standards. I requested the number of apprentices there in both the Western Electrical Contractors Association Apprenticeship Program and the Los Angeles Ventura Chapter ABC Electrical Unilateral Apprenticeship Program, along with where each apprentice lives that has enrolled in those programs. The reason I requested this information is due to the fact these are the programs Berg Electric uses and would be pulling from for their apprentices for this project. And I'll submit this to you later, and I'll give you all the backup for it. What you will see might surprise you. Both the week apprenticeship program and the ABC apprenticeship program only have a total of 11 apprentices that reside in Ventura County, and this is as of a month ago. Also keep in mind that these 11 probably don't all work for Berg Electric, because not only does Berg Electric belong to these programs, other non-signatory contractors do as well. And there is a good chance that all their employees are local on this particular project. I haven't seen the man-hours on that particular project, but I'm sure they're not employing 50 guys out there.
Shane, you know, the time's up, let me ask you a question. Go ahead.
Real quick.
Just go ahead and finish.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, I appreciate that. Secondly, I'm submitting to you a Berg Electric employee list as made up of their junior-level employees. Although this is, list probably is not their entire list, it probably represents a percentage of their workers living in the county. This list was compiled from certified parent requests, job site visits, state certification records, and past employees who now work for signatory employers with the electrical industry. Out of 90 identified junior-level workers, eight of them reside in Ventura County that we found, and I'll submit that to you, and please share it with Berg, and I understand blowing holes in it, but this is the information we're getting. In closing, I have several thoughts put on the table. As to competitiveness, our members are hardworking, trained, and motivated. Our members do not get paid sick time, vacation time, time off, nor do we have any kind of seniority system with our collective bargaining agreement. If our members do not work or perform the job, they get let go. If our health and welfare program or pension program needs money, we don't go to the taxpayer. We either take money from all our checks to fund the programs, or we cut benefits. As to the recent flyer that was sent out, one of the quotes was, "The LA union bosses' politics, what are LA union bosses' politics doing for Ventura County? Some things I'd like to make aware to the Board of Supervisors and to the community at large. When La Cuchina suffered a major mudslide devastated the seaside community, it was IBW members from our local bringing loads of blankets and clothes to the devastated area for the residents. It was our members who volunteered in opening their homes up and providing shelter..."
Request that you hear that.
"...it was IBW members from our local bringing loads of blankets and clothes to the devastated area for the residents. It was our members who volunteered in opening up their homes and also providing shelter or union hall for the displaced residents. When students at Larson School in Oxnard did not have the money to send their classes to a science fair in Thousand Oaks, IBW members had donated money to make it happen for them. When a youth baseball team from Naval Base Ventura County made it to the playoffs but not have the money to go to the final tournament, IBW members had donated their money to make this happen. When Naval Base Ventura County approached the IBW in need to have their future facility and maintenance employees trained in electrical, it was IBW members in our contractor base that opened up our apprenticeship program to train them, and they're not even our members. When the city of Ventura round of money displayed American flags for the Memorial Day through Labor Day, it was IBW members who volunteered and our contractors who donated equipment to make it happen, and we've been doing it every year since. When Jim Monahan asked to help to donate a new flagpole to honor our veterans right here in front of the Government Center, it was IBW and labor members who donated time, money, installation, and no charge to make it happen. When the building trades felt there was a need to give students from the county other pathways to meaningful careers, it was the building trades driving for us along with our money."
Supervisors.
My point to all this, it's not the LA union bosses behind all this talk of a possible PLA, it's your community, and we're the ones that are asking for this PLA, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. And what we're gonna do now, before we continue, Tony's decided not to, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. And we'll be right back in five minutes.
Yes, we're gonna call the meeting back to order for item 42, and two of the board members, you have a...
Supervisor, I'm not trying to jump out in front of everybody here, but there was one speaker who spoke last time, who didn't speak today, and I have some questions for him, and if he's willing, I'd like to call him up. That's a speaker from Clark that was here last time. If you're willing, right, thank you.
Jim McLam with Clark Construction.
Right, thank you. Last time you were here, it was late in the day, late in the meeting, and you, your comments indicated you didn't think PLAs really increased cost, that once you, if you got rid of the dual benefit side of it, that PLAs did not really increase cost. Your understanding from the conversation, my understanding is that that has been an agreement that's been reached, that the union's compromised on that particular issue. Tony, I'm trying to look, did you nod your head, that you guys compromised on the dual benefits issue? Is that your understanding also, sir?
That was my understanding, yes.
Your name, by the way?
Jim McLam.
Jim McLam, right. So your understanding, so with that understanding, in other words, with the elimination of the dual benefits, is it your opinion that the PLA would not increase cost for this?
There is a, there's a component for the representation cost that would have, you know, I did some calculations as I, I didn't take notes this time, I made them before I came. There is a component for the representation dues, I think Jeff was calling, Mr. Pratt was calling them, that would have a small amount of increase, under my calculations, that is probably surpassed by what Mr. Pratt says we're spending a month in delay of the RFP right now.
I guess the word you actually didn't use was that it didn't have any cost. You said you thought it would be so, the difference would be so minimal it wouldn't be significant.
That's correct.
Right, those were the words that you used.
And I still believe that.
Right, okay, and you still believe that?
Yes.
With the PLA, at least with the agreements that have been reached, right?
With the agreements of the no dual payment.
No dual, no dual benefits. All right, so we have differing opinions in terms of how much, whether this is, we had one figure today, 2% to 10%, we have yours, it'll be insignificant in terms of any, of the cost difference and dual opinions, sir. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
And could you give us your background?
Pardon me?
Your background?
I am 23 years with Clark Construction. I have a degree in construction management and a law degree.
And you're one of the three qualified bidders, you're the spokesperson for one of the three qualified bidders?
I am.
Jim, if I could ask you a question? So I'm trying to understand, if your other counterparts are going to do exactly the same thing, why would you say there's no cost, or there's a minimal cost, and they'd say their minimal cost is even higher? What would be the difference?
Well...
Are you not...
Well, on some things, we just disagree on.
Right.
On other things, I think I have about, right now, 90% of the subcontractors we would anticipate being on this job are union.
Okay.
There's a bit of a difference if you step back and use Berg, if Berg's one of these people, that percentage would obviously goes down, as would the carpenters would obviously goes down if Council Phelps would have the job. For us, I'm signatory with carpenters, we have an ironworker that is signatory, our pipe fitters are signatory, about 90% of the people we've outlined right now are signatory with the unions.
Okay, so you could say our cost, because we are doing some of these with signatory type people.
Yes.
How are that, but if you're not as competitive as somebody else, then there's, we don't know if the costs are there, right?
If I'm not as competitive as somebody else, that would show you the PLA didn't have cost, because somebody with a non-union electrician could beat me. I mean, I'm not, we're not paying more to be in part of a PLA.
Because you're already doing what...
Because I'm already doing it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I guess that would, that would show the idea of, if some other competitors, or two, there's three of you, I think is what I hear, if there's a big difference, then that, there is some of that cost that you're talking about, right?
No, I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't say it because of the PLA. We beat them a third of the time, they beat us a third of the time.
Maybe your margins, whatever else you're looking at, how you bid the job.
It's market competitiveness.
Market competitiveness, okay. The other thing to me is, help me understand, if you were to, do you have people local in this community?
We have probably two people. Now, we don't use a bunch of labor, we're not a self-perform contractor, we wouldn't use a lot of self-perform labor right now.
So where would you...
We have some administration people.
Where would you bring your, your management group from?
All over Los Angeles.
All over, okay, so you would be bringing people the same way?
And we have some people that would be in Ventura.
Right, but like anybody else, you want to make sure you have the senior management you can trust that you've worked with managing your jobs, right?
That is correct.
Right, okay, so like everybody else, you do the same thing, there's always going to be some group, you just don't have as many local people here as maybe somebody else has?
I would bet I have just as many as...
Two, everybody has about that.
The other two guys.
Yeah, because most of you guys are bigger, are out of most of the other, they're probably, we don't have these size contractors in Ventura County, right?
That is correct.
Right, okay, great.
But Jim, you'll bring your management from Los Angeles, but your labor would be from here?
We, I think we, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, I think we are at about 70%, I think 70-plus percent local hire.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just continue if you don't mind. Thank you very much, sir, for coming up. I wanted to ask County Council, it, number one, it seems like the dual benefits thing has been a compromise that was reached at the table.
Except I don't think we had the dues, the fees, or whatever you call it.
Dual benefits are separate from, from using, so agreement on, agreement on the, on the dual benefits, which, which I think is unusual, and so is, has been something that labor has agreed to. But it seems like it's this core staff issue that is really the issue. And I have the greatest respect for our County Council, and I know we all do, and so we have questions with County Council. At the same time, it's been an issue that we've been receiving a lot of communication about, and so I want to ask County Council this question based on the information that we got, and I tried to advise County Council I'd be asking him this question so that, so that he knew I was going to do this. The Supreme Court decision was 20 years ago, is that right? Approximately 20 years ago, but that's, that's the case. And, okay, what's that?
1999.
99? Oh, so just 13 years ago, somebody, somebody said it was, but, and there hasn't been another case since then that anybody's presented, is that correct from what you've heard? Then the, the, yet since then, there have been lots of PLA agreements, and many of them with counties that have the same restrictions that we have here, you know, PLA agreements, Contra Costa County and others that have it. There haven't been any cases, at least cases that have gone to the appellate court level that have offered any, any new insight on this, as far as anybody knows. So there've been a lot of PLA agreements, they don't seem to be challenged, and the statement, it says, "In this respect as well, the assertive anti-competitive effect of the PLA is difficult to discern." That's a statement from the California Supreme Court's decision with reference to the core language. In other words, California Supreme Court was saying that the core language in that San Francisco PLA was not an anti-competitive definition. So just because it says it wasn't an anti-competitive definition doesn't mean it is the only definition that's acceptable. Would that, is that an accurate interpretation?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not necessarily means it's the only definition that's acceptable. And then the fact that there have been all of these PLA since then, in these last 13 years, that have not been challenged on the issue of core staff, it at least introduces to me the question as to whether that Supreme Court ruling is the, is the language that, you know, should be the controlling language here, or whether we could use a language that is different, that is more restrictive in terms of core staff. So if I, if I, my, my sense is, your interpretation is, this is something that you know has been ruled legal by the Supreme Court. The others, you just don't know, and you don't have any other evidence that is out there. Is that, is that a fair, that's sort of, that's my interpretation?
Partially fair.
Right, okay, all right, right.
The case is 1999. I don't think it's fair to say there are a lot of PLA's in counties similar to the county of Ventura. I'm aware of two, Contra Costa County and Solano County. I think Solano County's only had one or two PLA's at the most under this, so it's basically Contra Costa County we're talking about. I spoke to Contra Costa County Council, Solano County Council, the Assistant County Council's dealing with this issue. You know, I pledged some confidentiality about my deliberations with other attorneys and councils, so I've looked into it. I don't know how many exactly in Contra Costa County. I will say the County Council there is relatively new to the position. The policy, let me point out a little history, Contra Costa County, following the 1999 Supreme Court decision, adopted a policy on PLA's, and their policy is exactly the one that I'm, it was then. In 2002, they adopted a policy on PLA's, and it required, as every PLA shall contain the following provisions, "The contractor and subcontractors agree to use the union hiring hall for any new hires beyond their own core workforce defined as persons on the contractor's or subcontractor's payroll for 60 of the preceding 100 days." They borrowed exactly the standard in the Supreme Court decision. Now, they changed, and today they have a PLA policy that basically has a zero core workforce provision. As I read it, the subcontractors and contractors aren't allowed to hire any of their core workforce without permission of the union. And even with permission of the union, they can hire up to four on alternating picks. So is that enough to say there's lots and lots of PLA's since 1999? They can do it, why can't we? Now, my analysis of this Supreme Court decision is pretty straightforward. There is not a lot of case law. And I think I talked before, my memo described the principles of low bidding and competitive bidding. So whatever you do has to be consistent with that. The idea is to balance needs like labor peace with still remaining competitive and still being true to the low-bid principles. So that's the idea that you're trying to achieve. And let me take one other segue here, because, you know, the earlier conversation about, that Mr. Pratt repeated, County Council was willing to set aside his opinion. I don't exactly think I was willing to, but what I was talking about was that the principle in the Supreme Court case is that if, at least in that definition, if you could use your regular workforce, call it your core workforce, whatever you want, if you were allowed to do that, then you wouldn't be at a disadvantage. And so my advice was, if the parties all agree that that concept translates to this number, 40, for this contractor, you know, I would accept that. If everybody says that is the core workforce, that's the regular workforce, that keeps them at a competitive, even playing field, because that's the principle that underlines it. It's not written in stone, it has to be 60 of 100 days. The principle is your core workforce. But in my view, that's still the principle. Now, I back up, and I, I don't have a PowerPoint, which I know might be helpful, but the way, the way I look at it, and I'll quote some of the Supreme Court decision, and let me just say too, they refer to it as PSAs, Project Stabilization Agreements, but it's the same thing. Supreme Court says, "Our analysis must focus on whether the PSA is consistent with the general principles underlying the competitive bidding law, as will appear because," and this, I capitalize a boldish word, "because the PSA requirement does not bar or substantially discriminate against a class of contractors, we conclude in the affirmative." So this is where I disagree with Mr. Cronlin. He spoke earlier that the test is, does it bar a contractor? And I don't think that's the test, because if that, if that was a simple test, you could do almost anything. You could load up any condition you want in there and say, well, everybody could bid on it. But, because what we're suggesting here, and what we're talking about with this PLA that we worked with the parties on, is not, wouldn't bar anyone. But so that, now, that, the second part of that is what is substantially discriminating against the class, and let's call the class a non-union contractor, that's the class. So the Supreme Court in that case, they went on for a few pages, and they discussed the fact that this PLA, PSA in that case, did not bar any union, a non-union contractor. They were free to bid on it. They didn't have to bid, but they could bid. So it didn't bar anybody. And then to me, the key thing is, now it's getting into that second part, does it substantially discriminate? And this is the language. "As for the PSA's requirement that contractors engage new employees through the union hiring hall, it must be recalled that the PSA permits a contractor to use every member of its core workforce defined as persons on the active payroll for 60 of the preceding 100 days and performing work under the project." In this, skip the line, "In this respect as well, I take as well to mean, as well as it doesn't bar people. In this respect, the asserted anti-competitive effect is difficult to discern." So when I read that, it says, "If you allow them to use their core workforce, that doesn't put them at an anti-competitive position." And that was key to the decision. Because, because they were allowed to use their core workforce, they weren't put, they weren't discriminated against, they put at a competitive disadvantage. And then at the end of the case, it says, "Having concluded, ABC, the Contractors Association, has failed to demonstrate the PSA conflicts with competitive bidding laws, we observe future challenges to the imposition of project labor agreements as bid requirements will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for consistency with the competitive bidding laws and under the principles articulated in this opinion." So that's the only case out there. There are no cases since reported at the Court of Appeal level or Supreme Court. So we're, and they cite, there's case law, so you can't have a straight-out requirement that only union contractors bid. So you can't have a provision that only union contractors can bid, and now we've got case law that says, "We're going to review any PLA for its anti-competitive effect, and we're telling you one where you're allowed to use your core workforce is not unlawful." Anything that is less than that, that allows less than that, could be unlawful if it makes them anti-competitive. Now, the problem, so we met many times, and my advice has been, if you deviate from that, I refer to it as a safe harbor. We know if we let them use their core workforce, we're okay because of the Supreme Court case. The further you get away from that, the riskier it is. And it, again, it's, we don't have to say we've excluded people to be sued. If we substantially discriminate, we also get sued potentially. And the problem is, in the proposals I've seen for the project labor agreement, it becomes very difficult factual question about what will be the effect on contractors. If you get down into zero core workforce, or some of the proposals, like you can have four core workforce employees and then no more, you've got to hire the rest of the hiring hall? To determine whether that's an even, if a non-union contractor has to do that, would he be at a competitive disadvantage with union contractors? In order to answer that question, you've got to really know the master labor agreements, because you have to know what are the union contractors going to have to do? And I heard enough and sat through these meetings and heard enough to say, they wouldn't necessarily be subject to all those restrictions. And so I get more worried about liability when, to really understand fully the liability we might be under, I have to learn the insides and outs of the master labor agreements with the building trades in Ventura County, in LA County, and the surrounding counties. So it becomes a very important factual question as well about if we impose this kind of standard on everybody, are we going, will that substantially discriminate, because it will put non-union contractors at a disadvantage? So I'm not saying that you have to have this standard that I described, and that's a safe standard, and if we go away from that, it's riskier and riskier. And then the second part, I'll say, in Mr. Cronlin's letter, which I appreciated very much, and it was very well-written, and I appreciate his analysis, you know, I think it only talks about one side of the problem though, because one side is the discrimination problem and will factually, you know, deter non-union contractors from bidding, but I didn't think it analyzed the other part of it, which is, whatever condition we put still has to be consistent with the low-bid principles. Because even if we have a PLA agreement, where that, the reason I bring that up is, I'm very skeptical that it's proper for us to have a PLA agreement where we require as a condition that the hiring hall have a geographical aspect. Because if we say that, I don't think the union, I think they would agree, I think it'd be illegal for the union to modify their hiring hall procedures and policies to discriminate based on geography. I think they have to go through the current hiring hall structure. So if the ultimate goal is local residents, I think there's a big stumbling block with having a PLA that where we try to dictate, like only certain zip codes can be used, for example. But that's the second aspect of that, that Mr. Cronlin's letter hasn't addressed. He's only addressing whether there's an even playing field for the contractors. Anyway...
Thank you.
That's basically how I look at it.
Okay, thank, thank you. The...
That was really helpful, thank you.
So I wanted to bring that issue up about core. The, the third point that I wanted to bring up, is there's a statement made that we're doing this PLA because it's all about Berg. And certainly, I want to emphasize, I didn't know even Berg existed when we came forward here and said, "We want, we want to try to do a local hire ordinance and try to make sure that we get as many people in Ventura County hired as we legally can." And so I just, I just, I certainly reject that contention. We've heard from County Council that the only way we can do it is with a PLA. That's the, that's the only way we can do this thing, and that's been what has taken us to looking at this PLA process. And I think there's been good hard work done at the table and some, some good compromises made at the table. Obviously, from this report here today, we're not there at this, at this point in time. But if PLA is, is the way that we, we can maximize local hire, because we can't legally just say, hey, like County Council said, we can't legally say that we have to do that with PLA, then that is, that's why, and I think that's, that's the, that's the attraction of the PLA. So anyway, those are my comments.
One, I appreciate, again, all the discussion, and County Council, I appreciate your clear I think Mr. Pratt opened up the meeting today to say what was accomplished, and I think from our last meeting here, some folks walked out of the room thinking the board had done X, Y, Z when we did ABC. X, Y, Z when we did A, B, C. Maybe I should say X, Y, Z, doesn't matter. So I think the work that's been done since then has been in good faith, and there has been compromise, but I still hear that we're apart. And I think that the issues that I think I'd like to certainly see some more work on, the single agreement issue, I think that the Board gave said that, and now that we understand that there is clearly a large path that's taken between carpenters and trades as to any arbitration or any issues raised during a construction project. And from what I've read, too, the numerous models of PLAs and otherwise, that a friendly amendment, some kind of, you know, that could be resolved. I don't think that it could be, to say if this board says to head down that path to see, then could there be a carpenter amendment to the attachment to the PLA, whatever language would be required that would address that issue? Because I certainly don't think anyone wants to go to a path of trying to either change some national practice or rule, or the disagreement between. I think the core workforce issues, I said last time, I was looking for some compromise, some negotiations that would say, the intent is, we honestly headed down this path, and, you know, everyone wants to put their own take on, oh, this is really just some secret way to go to a PLA, on local hire was to do that. When I still look out here and I looked at the cards that were submitted, and we still have 30, 40% of local people unemployed in the trades, it is a local hire focus. So to look at saying that, get to the table, we need some compromise on that piece, and if there, you know, if the compromise is to be as inclusive as possible with all three of the design-build teams who have pre-qualified and their team selected to say, at minimum, we're going to have some core work agreement there, so no one's excluded if they wish to continue to play in this bid process, would be my goal, and I just have to believe that you can get there. If the other things that seem to have been resolved was excellent work and communications, and we have to have the principles at the table. You cannot have a discussion and people walk out of the room and feel that they have agreement, and then they hear back that, oops, no, there isn't really agreement. We can't do that any longer, we've got to come to a wrap-up on this. There has to be a vote on this. And I'd like to throw out right away for the board, because I know you want to put your calendars out, we have a meeting on the 13th that we are scheduled in Camarillo in the evening. If we would look to meet here in the morning at 8:30 with this sole subject on the 13th of March to get this done, to make a vote up or down. Because trying to tie it on to some other meeting, we've got to, but of course, I'm looking for further discussion here to help staff and the stakeholders get a clear understanding of how we're going to, what needs to be framed yet, what needs to be done. Yeah, 8:30? It's on a Tuesday. So normal, it would have been our regular Tuesday, we just moved a meeting to Camarillo in the evening, and that we could get back on the 13th, because no one wants to drag this out any longer. We have to get to a wrap-up.
We look good for that day in the morning?
We're fine. We'll just put out two special meeting agendas for that day.
First one will be a short one. Maybe not in the meeting, but, yeah. That's my thoughts for now. I too appreciate all of the information that's been sent to us, and I've done my very best to read it all and sort through it, and I've learned certainly immense information about trades and practices and conditions.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank staff, you know, for a really detailed report, you know, I think is a great report, and I would thank also the public for their testimony. And my understanding was that the instructions I was given to staff was to develop a PLA that included some type of local hire. The Board of Supervisors also requested at that time to look at the use of an outreach program that could help local businesses or reach the local businesses that might provide those goods and services. Staff also identified two options in the report that might indirectly increase the use of local hire. And that was, number one, a requirement that all contractors sign a union hall hiring agreement, and number two, that a requirement that the lead contractor engage in an outreach program designed to publicize the need for local goods and services. And also, staff said, it's reasonable to believe that both of these options would help our residents get to work. And as I said before, I've read this report that our staff gave us over and over again. I learned quite a bit, too, about Contra Costa and Solano County, and the use of PLAs and other agencies and factors. A list that was provided by Jeff Corral, whenever our assembly persons were, a list of numerous agencies that are using PLAs. So consequently, with all that information in mind, I have some recommendations for staff. And my recommendation to staff is that we develop a PLA for this project, and that all the stakeholders make every effort possible to come up with reasonable solutions on local hiring, jurisdiction disputes, and any other items that are holding up this project. I think it's extremely important that we understand that. We were also told by one local contractor that a PLA could be put together in a matter of days, and that was the last meeting that we had. So with that in mind, let's work together with all the bidders, and putting that PLA together. And a PLA might be new to us here in Ventura County, but it's clear to me that PLAs can be developed, and most of the departments have solutions if the stakeholders compromise. And I want to underline, compromise, that's extremely important. This project is very important to us. This VCMC project wing is important to all of us, because we need it, number one. Number two, it'll put our people to work. And number three, we're losing money as we continue to not to compromise. So I think that one of the issues that we have is the core issues of one-to-one. I think that we ought to work with the one-to-one issues to come out with local hires, and I think it's extremely important that we do that. So I am for local hire, and I believe that our staff, if we can work with the three contractors, that we can come out with a good PLA or a good compromise project that'll hire our people, that will do what is needed for Ventura County. And that's my recommendations to staff.
If I may? My three criteria on this is, I want local hire, I don't want the project to be more expensive, and I don't want it to be exclusive of people who want to, you know, who could work on the project. So just, as I see it, we have achieved something in terms of some compromise, in terms of losing the dual benefit issue which raised the costs. And I understand Berg Electric has also compromised in terms of the number of people who may not be qualified because of that 60-day issue, so I think that's good. So what's left seems to be that 60 number of core people, or I guess 40 core people that Berg Electric is looking at bringing on. And I look at a project, a $250 million project with one, maybe 2,000 employees, and we're going to stick this all because of 40 core people? I mean, to me, that is, it serves us best if we can all agree, if we can all come together on a contract, then it won't be challenged, so we don't have to worry about the court's decision. And I would just hope that we can come back on next Tuesday or two Tuesdays from now with an agreement on that. Let's get this project built, you know? We shouldn't be delaying this. We need to get this project built. Let's cut to the chase, allow for those 40 core people, and we'll have 2,000 people in Ventura County potentially hired and working on this project, and let's do it.
Supervisor?
Jeff, I appreciate you and your staff going through this. I know it's tough when somebody tells you we'll do something, then come back later and tell you something different. Because the integrity of, I know your integrity in wanting to get something done. One of the things that's interesting to me, when we hear the cost of $400,000 a month, and we're six months behind on this, we just heard a report earlier today, if any of you are here, that we had some different agencies working their tail off to save us $1.9 million, and we've now just spent it on these delays. You know, and I don't know, how many of you are Ventura County residents? Okay, so some, a lot of you are. And you know that if you have the opportunity for us to, this hospital, this board has spent so much time and energy to save every penny they can, so that hospital can provide services to the public. And our, you know, this whole thing about us delaying, and Dr. Bob here who runs the hospital, the idea that this could cost millions of dollars more, and we could have hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in debt service additional every year on the hospital because of these kind of issues, this is crazy. Now, the idea that we want people who live in this county to do the work, there's no question about we want that. We want the dollars spent here, we want the people here, this is going to be your hospital that maybe you'll be in. Hopefully not, but you'll use, somebody you know will use. We want that, we want the best hospital. The idea, though, that we're going to compromise and drag something out, we're talking about Berg Electric. Well, how do we even know Berg Electric's going to get the job? We're going to, we don't know, there's three other contractors, or two other contractors that are working here. We don't know this, but all I'm saying is, the idea that we would do that, when 90% or one contractor said on Cottage Hospital, 100% was almost union, that we would take that? We want open opportunity for everybody. I mean, that's it. I understand the union, I understand what you guys do, that's fine. But the idea that we would compromise for all the rest of us, let's just get this thing done. I don't, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't believe it's going to happen personally, because I don't believe that you are going to compromise your values from all the way from Washington here, and this is going to be ground zero for the United States. I just don't believe it's going to happen. I didn't believe it last time it was going to happen, Jeff, I just didn't believe it. And I don't blame you. I don't blame you. You guys got certain things you want to do, you want to do it. I'm just here as a supervisor of Ventura County who says, I want to see the people of Ventura County work. We have a requirement to serve the public with a hospital that we have to do, and this board, for years and before I came here, have done everything they can to save every penny for the people of this county. And I don't want to see that delayed. So, I don't know if you can make compromise, but I agree with Supervisor Long that the 13th is the day it's done. If you don't compromise, we don't vote for it, we move forward, because a hospital must be built. But I'm just telling you, if you guys can make Ventura County ground zero, geez, more power to you. I mean, I think one of these people said that last time. I don't think it'll happen, but if it does, that's wonderful, because you know what? Hopefully, every one of you guys will get to work, and there'll be 1,000, or like Supervisor Parks said, 2,000 people working here, generating, protecting their families, providing for their families, and doing the right thing. But I would find every way to make it happen, because I'm telling you, the public's going to look at this and say, there can't be a small group of people that they're trying to get everything for themselves, when we, as the rest, almost a million people in this county, look at this hospital, and it has become one of the premier hospitals in Southern California. We cannot take a chance that this doesn't get built and we waste money just on delays. I mean, this, to me, is crazy. But, you know what, Jeff, I hope you can pull it all together, and whatever you're going to do, but, you know, my thing is, I don't believe we need a PLA. I believe that the people here will work no matter what, and the contractor should not have any delay that hurts them, but the core staff issue to me is critical, because you know what? If it's my contractor, just like Mike Powers runs this community, he wants the key people he's used to working with to perform. And that's key. You guys have got to let the key people in every one of these contractors, who they know that they work with day in and day out. And if we're talking one that says, I need 40 people out of 2,000, I just give them what they need so we can get this work done. I just, you know, I want to see it happen, but I don't want to see us delay. This board has worked too hard, and we have done so much to build this hospital, be a premier hospital, that we are expecting. That's why we've gone after some of these contractors, who are the premier hospital builders in the country. We wanted the best, and that's what we're here for. So don't delay and don't cost us any more money. I appreciate you all coming to here, and any of the ones out of county, too, I appreciate you willing to come all the way up here, but we've got to get this thing done.
I want to thank you for that, and I think, one important thing, I think the core worker issue is an important issue, and I think that one-to-one core issue is a key. If we, if the contractors can work with a one-to-one basis, I think that'll solve the problem, too. And one of the things I want to share, too, is that the unemployment here and for our construction workers is so high, that that ultimately is going to cost us more money in social benefits for our community, because we're going to, it's unemployment, it's using our VCMC hospital, using our health, using our CalWorks programs. So if we're trying to save a couple of bucks in the front, we're going to lose it in the back. So I think the core worker issue is extremely important, and hopefully, Jeff, that you can work with and get a compromise with the builders and also the other stakeholders.
Supervisor, I just want to be really clear on a couple of things. And one key thing, as I'm looking at this, I think that when it's been stated that it's been six months and $400,000 a month, this project is not six months behind because of this local hire. There were lots of things going on last fall about design that had to be worked out, and those things weren't worked out, I think, until December, if I'm correct. Am I about right there, CEO?
A little later.
Yeah, even a little bit later. So I just, I just don't want...
Yeah, but these people, they all knew about this back in October, that we were going to be doing, they wanted this, so we could have...
Well, sure. I mean, we all wish, we all wish that, we all wish the agreement could have come together faster, but I don't, I think it's misleading for the public to think that it's been six months on this particular issue in terms of, that's why this has been held up. Second thing, that I think that, to me, I think it's pretty clear that there are alternative definitions of core that would likely be acceptable, both legally acceptable and hopefully acceptable, too. And I want to point out, the California Legislature in 2011 specifically authorized all cities, all counties to use project labor agreements. Now, this is in the backdrop that, although we were talking about Contra Costa County, this is the backdrop of a couple thousand project labor agreements in the state. Almost all of them have more restrictive core language than this. It's hard for me to believe that the legislature was sort of saying, everybody go do this, with a backdrop of all of these having more restrictive language and the implication that that was not acceptable. But they amended the Public Contract Code specifically for everybody to be able to do it, with a backdrop of knowing there were thousands of those out there like that. And, you know, when we hear about this number, I hear Berg talk about, you know, 40, and I hear Berg saying that they have 22 people that live in Ventura County, I hear Berg saying that they're going to hire everybody local, that, you know, that, it makes me question, at least makes me question that. So I just, I think that the issue of flexibility on core, I think there is more flexibility out there, is my own sense, after reading this, listening to a variety of legal people and other professionals talk about this, and then looking at the backdrop of what's been happening in terms of the lack of cases in the last 13 months. So I know this is challenging for staff to get direction from five people without a motion. I think our only motion is to have a special meeting on the 13th.
And receive a file.
Well, Supervisor, in due respect, I don't want staff to feel to walk out of here that I'm in support of a one-to-one core. I'm not. I think there needs to be a compromise and agreement so we can be as inclusive as possible, and I guess the most important thing is to get that agreement, so.
I guess this is my opinion, you know, the one-to-one core, I think is extremely important to understand that. to understand that.
Just a last comment. Appreciate the efforts of labor and the contractors, and Mr. Smith, and certainly our board, and Mr. Pratt, for his work, just round the clock, it seems, in really leading this negotiation process. As you can all tell, it's very complicated, so appreciate your great work, and we'll get to work, we've got your direction.
And also, I want to thank Jeff for the outstanding work, and Leroy, and you, Michael, and we do need a PLA. So let me see.
I'm sorry? I'm going, the motion is that we'll be back to this at 8:30 on March 13th. Huh?
March 13th.
13th, here in the boardroom, for a decision.
Go ahead, Jeff.
As long as everybody's here who's going to that room. We need meeting times, and I'd encourage you, we'll be sending out emails, making phone calls, but you guys really need to clear off your calendars. That's only like seven working days, I believe.
Jeff, would you keep track of who comes, who doesn't, so we see who really cares about doing this?
I sure will, thank you.
And Jeff, you know, I think that's an important issue, because we want everybody to participate, not just come in and then come back two weeks later and so forth. We need to solve this problem.
That's my understanding from your discussion at the desk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And we're going into, we're going to go into closed session again, and do we have any announcements? No announcements. We'll go into closed session, and we're going to adjourn from closed session. Thank you.